I'm seeing someone showing just up as a Zoom user. If you could tell me your name. So if I know if you're part of the applicant team or are you part of the public to speak? Okay.
Well, I'm here.
Are you part of the public or part of the applicant team?
I'm part of the public.
Okay, and I'm just seeing Zoom user. Can I, do you want to change your name on the screen? I can do that for you if you'd like.
Yeah, if you would, please.
Okay, and your name?
Penny, P E N N Y.
Uh huh.
Nelson, N E L S O N.
Okay, I'm gonna change it so when it's time for a public comment, I will come back to you. Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, and then I'm seeing someone that just shows up as D M. Could you tell me your name so I can change it for the screen? Okay.
Hey Nancy.
Hey there.
How are you doing?
I'm doing well. So everybody who's on your list should be in the meeting at some point.
Correct.
Okay.
Let me make sure that list is 100%.
Just wanna make sure I'm getting all the right people.
Let me make sure nobody that I missed anybody.
Okay, great. I moved you as a panelist, promote panelists, there we go. I'm seeing the Michelle, is this the Chair of Planning Commission, Michelle Austin? Hello?
Hi Nancy, sorry.
Oh, okay, that is you. Okay, let me bring you into the meeting.
Sorry, I went to go get some ice to put in my
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna change your name so we know on the screen.
Okay.
Why don't you come in?
Yeah, the screen looked a little different. I didn't see where I could mute myself, so.
Yeah, cuz you were just as an attendee, so I need to get you into the meeting.
I will join as a panelist.
Yes, please do.
Hey Nancy, it's Judy. For some reason, it won't let me turn on my video.
Okay, give me a second, please. I don't know why.
Um, it says when I click start video, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay, uh, give me a second.
Okay.
It says that I was promoted and I wanted to, I wanna know if do I get a raise with my promotion?
Yeah, exactly. All right, let me see here, allow panelists to unmute, rename. Oh, right here. All right, try now.
There we go.
Okay, Tanner.
Learn my background.
Hold on a second.
My cat decides to come.
Hold on, Tanner?
Yes, Nancy.
Yes.
Are we supposed to raise our hands if we're speaking?
No, are you part of the public or part of the applicant team?
Um, I'm the, I'm the broker that represents the sellers. I just wanted to make a statement.
Okay, so once we start the meeting under public comment, we can bring you in and do that at that time.
Got it, thanks.
Uh huh.
Hi, this is Dave Hardison. Um, did I wander backstage by accident?
Okay. Let me, are you part of the public wanting to address the commission?
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Okay, let me put you back, hold on.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
No problem.
Change role to his handy. Okay. There's Brenda, let me bring in Brenda.
Okay, testing, testing, can everybody hear me?
You can hear you. We just got a lot, I got a lot of people to juggle tonight, Brenda, so thank you for your patience. So Lawrence Garcia. Hold on, they keep moving on me. Bonnie. Whoops. Come on. Is Kevin Kennedy with you, Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see, oh, there he is, okay. I'm trying. Jenny, you have your hand up?
Oh, I'm just ready for a public comment. I'm just on for public comment.
Okay, so once we get started, I will call every, on everyone for public comments, so you, you won't need to raise your hand, but I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'll be asking you to unmute again, so but for now, I'm gonna mute you. Lawrence Garcia, if you can hear me, you, you need to click on promote, accept being promoted through panelists to come into the meeting. There it goes. David Lee.
Sorry Nancy, I have another question.
Okay.
So if you are just gonna tell everybody to unmute and we don't have to raise our hands, how will you know what order we go in?
Cuz I'm gonna go from top to bottom on my screen and I'll have a list.
Got it. All right, lovely, thank you.
You.
Nancy, no rush, you're juggling a bunch of things, just let me know when we've got enough commissioners on and everything, you've got everything squared away, so.
Okay, I still gotta get some of the applicant team in.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanna.
I'm gonna sort through everybody to see how many commissioners we have. I see one, two, three so far.
Yeah, Brenda, me and Judy, yeah.
Yeah.
No worries, just wanna, just take your time.
Appreciate everyone's patience.
No, I appreciate you doing all this. This is, I couldn't do it, so you're good.
All right, David Lane is in. I have a Mike, Mike C. who has their hand raised. Can I help you? You have to unmute. All right. Do that. I have a Jasper moved out.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Hi there.
How can I help you?
Well, I'd like to speak this evening, I don't.
Okay, so when we get to the public comment section for the public hearing, I will call on you. Uh, Mike C. is how I'll call on you and.
So do I lower my hand?
Yeah, I lowered your hand cuz we don't need to raise hands, okay?
Okay.
I'll see everybody.
Thank you.
But thank you for checking. Uh, there's Colin.
Good evening.
Hey Colin.
Oh, there's my Kibbe, whoops, wrong person. Okay, Jeremy, I'm not seeing a Jacob Shally. Do you know if he's under a different name or?
I thought I saw him on earlier.
Oops, you're echoing.
On my screen, he's right below me.
Oh, okay. Then I must have brought him in, which one, Phil or Jacob?
Jacob.
Okay, thanks. All right, my Noel, you're gonna promote yourself to panelist here, there we go, nope, he didn't. There we go. Okay, so does anybody see Jacob Shally? Cuz I'm not seeing him yet.
On my screen, he's below me.
Oh, okay, I thought that was Phil Workman. Okay, Jeremy, can you tell are all your folks in?
Um, we just have one more Jimmy McCloskey.
Jimmy, I thought I brought Jimmy in. Oh, oh, let me do it again. Okay, you have to click promote panelists. And for Kate and Kate, I'm promoting you to panelist, so if you can accept that, we've got about 35 people on. Actually, we have over 50 people on tonight. Okay, so let me just make sure. If you're with the applicant team of Norris Design or with city staff and I haven't brought you into the meeting where you can see yourself, please raise your hand so I can see you, cuz I have quite a few people here. Oh, there's Bill Jennings, hold on, I just saw him. Okay Martha, just so you know, you don't need to raise your hand when we get to public comment, I will call on you. Okay.
Nancy, Chris Alvarado and Jacob Shally have their hands raised.
Okay, give me a second, guys. Okay. Okay, Jacob. What can we do for you?
Sorry, I just raised my hand because you asked us to.
Oh, okay, great, yeah, but you're in the meeting, so I appreciate that.
Uh huh.
I think you're good.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
I appreciate that. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Chair, I think we have our quorum. And if you can give me two shakes, I forgot something, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Sorry, I needed my little cheat sheet, so I believe we're quorumming, we should be good to go.
Great. My name's Michelle Austin, I'm the Chair of Planning and Zoning, I welcome everybody to the meeting, this is the biggest turnout we've ever had for a meeting, so thank you Nancy for juggling this many people on a Zoom call. And it is Tuesday, November 15th, and I am calling the planning and zoning meeting to order. Nancy, can you call the roll, please?
Sure, Kate Townley.
Here.
Colin Hagerty.
Here.
Uh, Judy Brown.
Here.
Kate Fuller.
Here.
Noel Atkins.
Here.
Carl Adams.
Here.
Brenda Hubka.
Here.
And Aaron Martinez. Let me check, I didn't see Aaron. Okay, we do have a quorum, Aaron is absent.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda. Somebody needs to mute.
Yeah, if I can have everybody but the person speaking mute, that would be wonderful.
Brenda, can you mute, please?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, with this many people, we might get feedback very easily, so if everybody could stay muted until you're talking, that'd be great. Um, the next item on the agenda is the public forum. I want to say that this public forum is an opportunity for the public to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda, so and it will, uh, yeah, so if anybody wants to speak to the items that are not on the agenda, raise your hand, please.
So I know I told the public not to raise their hand, but in this case, if you're
Oh, you're right.
If you're not here to speak about the public hearing, this would be your chance, so if you wanna speak on something other than the planned unit development or the Bridge House, which would be later, now's your time, if you just raise your hand. I think we're good.
Okay, great. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for case Z O N 2022-001, planned unit development at 1314 West Oxford Avenue. Public testimony is limited to three minutes and the commissioners and staff will not engage in dialogue or answer questions. Uh, the speaker may be directed to staff or other sources for responses at a later date or questions that are raised and so Nancy, do you want, I think you're the best person to make, call on people for this.
Oh, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm sorry, you're right, sorry, I need a motion to open the public hearing, commissioners?
Oh, moved open the public hearing.
One second.
Thank you Judy. Any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
It was Colin and Judy, yeah. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Nancy, can you vote, call for the vote on opening the public hearing?
Sure, Kate Townley.
Yes.
Colin Hagerty.
Yes.
Uh, Judy Brown.
Yes.
Kate Fuller.
Yes.
Noel Atkins.
Yes.
Carl Adams.
Yes.
Brenda Hubka.
Yes.
And Chair Austin.
Yes.
And usually the order is staff will do a presentation, then the applicant and then public uh, testimony after the presentation has been made. Does that work for you, Chair Austin?
Absolutely, that's perfect, thank you.
Okay. So Brian, I believe it's on you, if you'll raise your right hand. Actually, if I could have all of city staff come off mute and camera, I'll swear all of city staff in it this time. In case you are answering questions. Okay, so you just raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Do.
I do.
So if you're gonna speak, if you just state your name when you're gonna speak and then you can stay on mute until that time, so Brian, take it away.
Good evening, Commission, Brian Isom, Planning Manager, are you guys able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, the first case tonight is the planned unit development for 1314 West Oxford Avenue, Embry, Oxford and Navajo PUD, this is case Z O N 2022-001. The current, the site is currently zoned I1 light industrial. It's approximately 8.61 acres in size and its current use is an automotive service facility. The project overview is a 395 unit multi-family development, uh, which calculates out to approximately 46.9 dwelling units per acre. Um, the site is comprised, or the project is comprised of a four-story multi-family building containing 361 units and um, 340, 30, sorry, 34 rental town home units and seven three-story buildings. Um, the proposed use in the PUD again is for residential, they propose the height limitation of 65 feet uh, with their building coming in at approximately 60 foot eight inches currently um, and 38 feet for the townhomes. The project is proposing to increase landscape requirements from 8% to 37% and proposing a total of 638 off-street parking spaces, uh, which calculates out to 1.6 spaces per unit, and our current code requirement is 1.7. Here's the site plan, um, you can see West Oxford Street to your left, that would be the northern portion of the site, um, and then South Navajo would be the western edge. The applicant has provided these elevations of the multi-family building as well as all the elevations of the townhome product. And what I believe we've heard in the past is to provide some context or some comparisons with other multi-family zoning in the city. So they have provided a comparison table with the I1 existing zoning, the M U R 3P, 3B zoning, as well as their proposed PUD standards. They have provided additional enhancements for multimodal and traffic improvements, including new curb ramps and crosswalk striping at the intersection of Oxford and Navajo. Um, protective left turn signal head for those heading north on Navajo um, and making a left turn onto Oxford, widening Oxford east of Navajo to provide two through lanes adjacent to proposed developments. Um, additionally, new streetlights and upgrading the bus stop at the southeast corner of Oxford and Navajo. Uh, they are additionally providing detached five-foot sidewalks and six-foot tree lawn buffer areas to increase pedestrian safety. Um, staff finds the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and in conformance with our adopted and generally accepted development standards. And the application furthers the goals, objectives and policies of Inglewood Library Corridor Station area, area master plan and Oxford Station Industrial TOD study. City staff recommends conditional approval of the case based upon the approved criteria found within the staff report and the condition that applicant meet all requirements and improvements requested by Public Works Traffic and Utilities, which are listed in our staff reports. Um, as well as proposed multimodal improvements will be reviewed and approved by Public Works Department. If a public improvement is approved, construction of the improvement will be required by the applicant prior to final occupancy issuance for the first residential unit. And a major subdivision will be required and fire filed at the Rabahoe County prior to building permit approval for any necessary public easements and property combinations. And with that, staff is available for any questions.
Colin?
Thank you for the presentation, Brian. Always good information to have. One of the things you noted was the comparison between industrial and multi-family for a few of the items, what was the landscaping though requirement for multi-family?
Pull up the staff report. Their setback standards were 15 feet along the north, south and west boundaries, and they're proposing 25 feet for a multi-family, oh, are you just?
I'm good with everything, I just wanna know what the landscaping requirement would be for multi-family, I know they're proposing 37% and industrials 8%, but what would the multi-family requirement be?
If I could interject, Cindy Granger, I see your hand. Uh, when we get to public comment, uh, for testimony, I will definitely make sure to call on you, I have a list of everyone, so back to the commission that might have questions.
I don't, I don't have that information right in front of me, can I, can I dig for it and then then get back to you?
Yeah, absolutely, that's the only, other than that staff report, I thought had everything that we asked for previously, so appreciate all that information.
Kate Townley.
Hi, um, I have a few questions, um. Do we, when was this PUD submitted or filed? And I have a few others, if you want me to go forward with those and then circle back.
Brian, so you know, I, there's a chart in the Unified Development Code 16-6-7 with landscaping requirements, if that helps you. And for residential multi-unit dwellings, I show 20% landscape requirement. If that helps everybody.
For this, the middle date, it was submitted, I believe, on April 7th or 8th, 2022. We did our completeness check on April 8th. 2022.
Okay, thank you. Um, and uh, I actually see for landscape requirements, the 25% for multi-unit dwelling over four units. And I guess in addition to Colin's question, um, and I wasn't sure with the applicant, if they included the new, the additional sidewalks, um, in that um, in their 37%. And it looks as though that's something, something that would normally be excluded in terms of the percentage, so that would be something just between staff or the applicant to get a clarification on.
I, I will leave that one to the applicant to clarify.
Okay, and then um with uh, this particular site being uh, an industrial, existing industrial use. With this particular site being an industrial, existing industrial use, if another industrial use came in and improved the site. But they still have to put in five-foot sidewalks and a six-foot buffer lane. Per our development code.
In just a moment.
Sixteen six five.
Brooke, I see that you're on. Are you able to assist me with some of these questions, sir?
And Kate, I just, I was looking at the wrong page. You're correct. It's twenty-five percent.
Yes, Brian, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So in terms of the landscape requirements. Depending on the zone district, there are some of the zone districts like the M U B one and B two and the. And the M one and M two districts that, that the landscape requirement would be twenty percent. The twenty-five that Kate is referring to, I'd have to look at that. I'm thinking that might be the M U R three B. But it is in, it is somewhere in between that twenty to twenty-five percent. And I believe that that. The project is proposing a thirty-seven percent landscape requirement. Additionally, we typically do count any landscaping between. We do count landscaping towards the total requirement that is in the right of way, meaning in this case between the detached five-foot sidewalk, sidewalk and the six-foot tree lawn. So hopefully that answers those two questions. I do believe the, the project is providing more landscaping than is required for multi-unit development. Of, of this scale certainly, certainly anywhere else in the city.
Do the other commissioners have questions right now?
Colin? Colin, you're muted.
You did. Thank you. I did have a couple more based on some of the information that was provided and, and some of the requirements that the staff has noted, one of which was a contribution to the Oxford Bridge. Replacement, I think that was placed on hold. So that's four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar contribution. To that, I believe that bridge is placed on hold due to prices coming in, as we all know, higher. Is there any update on? Would that four hundred and eighty-five thousand put us to a place where we would need to be for that bridge? Is there still some more funding that's needed for, for getting that going?
Colin, this is Bill Jennings in engineering. That's just the developer's contribution towards the bridge.
Right.
I do believe that we would need funds above that. So any of the new multifamily or any of the developments down there would participate in that bridge cost. So this, this would not get us to the amount of money that we need.
Because I, I know that there was funding set aside for that bridge. I wasn't sure if this additional funding would get us to that point, but it doesn't sound like that's the case.
That is correct.
Okay. How do we, how far of a gap do we have for that?
You got me on that one. I, I, I don't remember what the numbers, how much we're, we're under on that, but. I'm sure it's probably over three or four hundred thousand that we're still under. So.
Okay. And then I'll ask one more question before it looks like some other people had some, actually, I'll wait. I asked my question. I'll let others jump in. Thank you.
Kate Townley?
Do we have a definition or a vision of what a gateway typically is for Inglewood?
Kate, could you maybe expand on that? I might have missed that. Is there a requirement for them to establish a gateway or something like that?
It's within some of the planning documents that this area would be a gateway into the city and there's. It's referred to in a few different areas, and I didn't know if we had something that was kind of like, is that just up to interpretation or do we have any sort of. Agreed upon vision or anything like that?
I'm not aware of any set definition, but I can continue to look.
Um. Kate, I know at one point there was a plan for gateways at sort of four entry points to the city. And it was Broadway at Yale. It was. Bellevue at Broadway, even though the city starts a little bit south of there. And I believe it was both. Hamden and, or two eighty-five and Santa Fe, as well as university and two eighty-five. There were gateway art pieces placed at Yale and Broadway, as well as at university and two eighty-five. So those, there were originally four. My guess is that perhaps some of that gateway language was coming into city of Inglewood. From the city of Sheridan, crossing Santa Fe. And on Oxford. That's, that's my guess.
Carl Adams?
Colin, I missed the, the amount that that was from the developer for the bridge. What was the amount on that?
Yeah, part of the staff requirements for public improvements is a contribution of four hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Before COO would be provided for construction and pet bridge over Oxford.
Okay.
And that's, I know we, that's been in other locations also have contributed funds to that. And I know we've set aside, and I know prices have gone up. It's just a matter, I'm trying to figure out how. Close we're getting to hopefully getting that because I do think that is a, a part of this discussion with some of the traffic concerns and things like that also.
Yeah, the, the price is going up is why we're short. So that's, that's good to know, though. Thank you.
Judy?
So I have a question on the. So this is my ignorance of the, where the city requirements for maintenance are and where the property owners would be. So with these. With the sidewalks in that particular area. Especially on that corner and on the west side that is never going to see sun. Who's responsible for the maintenance of those sidewalks? In terms of snow removal and pedestrian safety kind of stuff there. And then also, in addition to that. When I looked at in this, I think this is more of a question for staff and city. The cross, there's a crosswalk that's going to go, they show that the pedestrians are going to cross Navajo over to. From their property over to the west side across Navajo and then. Take the sidewalk across this currently there across over to the light rail station. And I was wondering if there were, and I might have missed something, if there was going to be. Any additional crosswalks placed from that entry exit point. On that. So trying to understand where the city is going to be, is the city responsible for maintenance of those sidewalks or the property owners? And then also, are there additional. Crosswalks that are going to be added? Because I can speak from personal experience that people go from both corners, and I think the tendency is going to be from. Both corners as opposed to just the one at the light. I don't know who on staff can answer that for me, but.
Maybe Judy, you can reserve your question for when the applicant has their presentation. Maybe that's the best way to have that answered.
Okay. They can answer it if it's not them.
Brian, do you know the answer?
Sorry, I was on mute. I was going to ask Bill or, or Jay if they had any insight to either one of those questions.
Right. I understand it was that sidewalks were responsibility of the property owner, and maybe, I don't know that, why that would be different in this, in this case.
This is Bill Jennings again. Jay, you can correct me if you want, but I'm pretty certain we have crosswalks on all four legs of that intersection. But the ultimate goal is to take them right across Navajo, go up the pathway to where the pedestrian bridge would be, which parallels the railroad right away. And but for right now, they're going to be walking on the crosswalks. Like people are doing now.
In terms of maintenance, Bill, though, would the sidewalks, whose responsibility are maintaining those sidewalks?
I don't know that for a fact. I know in most other areas of the city, the residents are required to plow their sidewalks, shovel their sidewalks off. So I wouldn't believe it'd be any different here.
Okay, Colin?
Thank you. The comprehensive plan did note this could, this area should be either. Multifamily or multifamily with some commercial features to it. Was there any requirement or thoughts or requirement of any commercial space within this development?
I'll have to defer that to the applicant. Our staff planner that worked on this case is out of the office currently. So I don't know some of the intimate details of that conversation, but I'll defer to the applicant.
So it's not a requirement that we would have for them to do that, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Kate Townley?
I'm sorry, I going between my documents and lost my place there for a minute. I was just curious with, I had. Couple of questions. Do we have other documents besides just the code or other plans that refer to sidewalk width in terms of proximity to. Transit and what that minimum should be or other guidelines like either through Institute of Transportation Engineers? I don't know if that's something like a public works question. And then I also have another question. I think I was looking back through the report. Twelve hundred pages is a lot to scroll through and figure out where you're at. So there was also, I, I saw the reports on, on storm sewer and capacity for that. And I just wondered, was there a report on water supply and what that may be for the, that area? And if someone from the city can speak.
Yeah, this is Stephanie Ellis from the Inglewood Utilities Department. So in terms of the domestic water supply, we, the city has a hydraulic model that we run for most new developments. And so. We received the demands for this development and the utility, the preliminary utility plan from the developer and ran it in our hydraulic model. To verify that there is capacity in our system. They'll also be installing private mains throughout their property. And so we used our hydraulic model to help us size what those mains are going to look, you know, figure out what size they needed to be to supply their demands.
And that's for both water coming to the site as well as the wastewater leaving the site.
So on the, on the sewer side, we have a similar process, but a little bit different. We, we don't have a, a, a working model right now on the sewer side. So we had the developer. Complete a sanitary sewer study for the site. So we had them go out and do flow monitoring and, and then measure the, you know. The inverts and the elevations of the sewer lines to determine the slope, and then using that information, they were able to come up with a design that. Shows that they are going to meet the capacity of the sewer lines or we have capacity for it.
Bill or Jay, sorry, this is Brian again. Are there any other documents that we use regarding sidewalk width other than what's in the development code?
This is Jay with Public Works Engineering. No, I believe it, we just have the, what's in that code. I know there's Oxford Station. Transit. Document, a planning document. I can get the Oxford Station Industrial Transit Oriented Development Study. But that does not specify a different set of requirements for their sidewalk width.
Can I ask a follow-up with that? I guess is similar to level of service for, for roads. Would you consider level of service different for sidewalks depending on whether it's a trans, like a pedestrian oriented area and transit oriented area versus more of a. Lower density residential.
Level of service.
I get essentially, does the same five-foot sidewalk work in an area that you're planning to have a lot of pedestrians or an area where you may have less pedestrians because you have less people living within the block?
Understood. Five feet, so five feet, so the minimum accessibility requirement is four feet and five feet really allows. To, to wheelchair-enabled pedestrians to pass comfortably. And so I think that providing that. Is one foot above the minimum, in other words, and will sufficiently provide that level of service to those pedestrians. You start looking at wider. Facilities when, you know, you start thinking of really concentrated crossings of pedestrians or, or multiple uses, like a shared use path. And like Bill mentioned earlier, the, the future goal with this area will be to direct pedestrians to the pedestrian bridge and have them cross using that facility. Which, you know, an appropriate width will be decided for that at that time. But specifically for, you know, the sidewalks adjacent to. To this development, I, I think five feet detached definitely serves the goal. And then further connections perhaps north of Oxford can maybe be reevaluated, reevaluated as. Kind of development continues to come to this area, the light rail station area.
Judy?
So I have a question about the, and this might be a public works question, but about the, so they're going to. Public Works is requiring that Oxford east of Navajo be widened. And I realize we can't do anything under that stupid bridge, but. And then I recall, I believe that there's going to be some work done on the traffic signals there to provide. A left turn signal for people driving north on Navajo and turning left on to Oxford to get onto Santa Fe. But my question is for those people coming either from Santa Fe or the west side of Oxford across Santa Fe. Into that area where one lane goes straight and the right-hand lane is the turn right lane. The problem, what my, one of my concerns is the problem is going to be traffic backing up across Santa Fe. With additional people there. It's already a terrible, terrible situation because people don't know which lane to be in. And so they get in the wrong lane and then they cut across and they block people who are trying to come into that area. And, and I just don't know. I know that the, I don't believe the traffic signals on Santa Fe are under our control. If they are. Is there going to be some study done to get the timing of those? lights modified so that people don't get backed up into um the Santa Fe, especially turning left. If you're traveling southbound on Santa Fe, turn left onto Navajo. It's really easy to get caught in that intersection when people are blocking people from either turning right or going straight. So I live over here. I go through that intersection every single day at least once. So I'm pretty familiar with some of the challenges and I just don't know if we even have the authority to do anything with traffic light timing on Santa Fe.
So thank you for the questions, a little bit to unpack there. Um, so yes, we um we definitely are aware of uh the the, you know, the two intersections, the close proximity and and the congestion that's being experienced there currently. Um, I'll let the developer um maybe speak to some of the specifics of the analysis, but um the first item I'll speak to is um that uh as folks come from Santa Fe towards Navajo, um that kind of competing for different lanes trying to merge over. Um, so that was one of the goals of the widening um to the east of Navajo is um you don't have that drop lane for the right turns um to go south on Navajo. And so that provides, you know, the length of the uh north property line of the development for folks to make it through the intersection before merging over and hopefully allow the, you know, those two lanes to kind of coexist in a less congested way. Um, uh, as you um kind of spoke to, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place here. So I'm working within those constraints. We um I tried to work with the developer on finding, you know, what solutions can we can we make now? Um, what improvements can we make now? Um, uh, with the understanding that um Santa Fe is um, you know, a beast of its own and it has very high traffic volumes. Um, and so uh I know uh one thing that the developer uh speaks to in the study is the a future P L study along um uh Santa Fe that C dot will um complete. So uh we'll obviously, we're trying to keep tabs on that and make sure the city's well involved and ensure that um some solutions come out of that hopefully or short and long term projects uh for this intersection. Um, but uh I we are requiring as part of uh the signal improvements at Navajo and Oxford to take a look at the coordination between the two signals, have a conversation with C dot and say, okay, with existing conditions, how you know, how can we optimize this before those um kind of long term uh improvements come?
And then I have one more traffic signal question. Is there gonna be, is there the thought of putting a traffic signal um for people who are potentially crossing over to the um rec center?
Um, that was uh not uh discussed. Um, I do not know. I don't, I'm not aware of any um implants to uh make such an improvement. Um, typically though, we like to concentrate um the pedestrians to a singular crossing and um, you know, an additional head uh demand in such close proximity to an already congested a couple of intersections might um be complicated, but um I will definitely take note of that and uh and keep that in mind as as further reviews uh proceed.
And just one thing, I'm sorry, Colin, but just in in response to that, it's more of a traffic slowing item as opposed maybe to, it's just um uh the other weird thing about that intersection and you guys are probably full fully aware of that is if you're coming west on um Oxford, the if in certain situations, that traffic light, you cannot see it because it lines up exactly with the train tracks. And there are people who run that light because they don't see it in time if they're not familiar with the area. So stopping them ahead of that, it's just a really weird light and I hate to have to cross in my vehicle, go across Oxford, staying on Navajo without like I crawl across there hoping somebody's not gonna broadside me because they come flying over that hill. But anyways, that's just a comment. Sorry.
I do know I I appreciate it.
Colin.
Yeah, and just kind of build uh on Jay, what you're saying and Judy, what you're asking, they the traffic study did note that there needs to be some coordination um uh in the recommendations between the Oxford intersection, Navajo, uh Windermere intersection and the Santa Fe. So I I think they speak to that and and that requirements um a little bit, which which should be helpful. And I guess just building on what Judy also said, maybe some sort of mid-block pedestrian traffic calming far enough away to pull people away from that intersection if they're gonna try to cross over for the rec center might be something to to take a look at. And I don't know if that's separate from from this, but I I think that would make sense also for having so many people south of Oxford and crossing over to the rec center on the north side of Oxford. I think that would make sense.
Okay, any other questions from the commissioners to staff? Seeing none. Uh, it appears that we have need an applicant presentation and I don't know who to call upon, so. So if I can have all of the applicant team come on a camera, I'll swear you all in as I did with the staff, city staff, and then if you're not speaking, if you go on mute and uh off camera until you're ready to speak. So here we go. Is everybody on? Do you swear affirmative penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
I do.
Okay, great. So whoever's gonna do the presentation can share their screen. Just state your name, please.
Yeah, this is Jimmy McCluskey with Embry. Uh, we're the applicant. I'll start the presentation. I think Jasper with uh the Pockner Group will be running the presentation. So if there's any questions, you can direct those to him as far as the screen changing from slide to slide. But uh, good evening. Thank you for your time. Um, we're excited to be able to present uh to you all. We've been working on this project for quite a bit of time with the staff and with the neighbors. And so um we feel grateful to be able to show you what we've been working on collectively over the past uh year, year plus. Um, this is just a a front slide, just kind of showing some images of the townhomes looking uh north on the site uh with the activity area in the middle. And I'll we'll get to some other images later on uh that'll have some more detail, but um go to the next slide, Jasper. So today's agenda, the site's agenda will be some introductions, which I'll take care of. Uh, the context, existing city planning, initial concept, uh the community outreach that we did, community overview uh from that outreach. Um, the public improvements that um we're uh providing and uh we'll show that as well as well as the compliance with the approval criteria. So that'll be the agenda that we're gonna present this evening and will uh of course be ready for uh questions after that or during if if you all have some. Go to the next slide. So the the team that consists of on this phone call of five different groups. So again, my name is Jimmy McCluskey. I'm with Embry Partners. I've been with Embry for over ten years now. Um, the Executive Vice President of Development for kind of the Western Region for our company. We're a San Antonio based company. We've been in business for nearly fifty years. Um, we've been uh, you know, building apartments uh and residential housing over those fifty years across the country, primarily in the Sun Belt, including Colorado and some of the areas uh in the Northeast, like uh um the Carolinas and Tennessee. Uh, we've been active in the in the Denver market of Colorado for over twenty-five years now. It's been our most active uh city of of any of the cities that we operate, even in our Texas city. So we love it up here. Um, we've had a lot of success working with communities. Um, the process um is is great uh in compared to some comparison to some of the markets that we they would work in uh where we get a chance to really engage with the neighbors, uh hear their concerns, uh work with the city and try and address what we can to help make sure that the the project is cohesive and it really reaches the goals for everyone involved. Um, Norris Design, which is a a Denver based um landscape firm, uh landscape and planning firm that you may be familiar with. Bonnie is on from from their team, along with a few other members that you may see, David Lane, Jeremy Lot. Um, Humphries and Partners is the architect of record. Um, they've been with us for um probably the last ten or twelve years, working on projects here in Colorado. They're they're very active in the market across the front range. Um, and then Marcus Pockner with the Pockner Company uh who is on here along with Phil Workman. Uh, and and Marcus will take the lion's share probably of the presentation this evening. We'll turn that over to him a little bit later uh as well as Harris Coker Smith. There are several folks from Harris Coker Smith that are on here that can answer questions, more of the technical questions when it comes to the civil engineering and um things that are connected with uh those types of items on the site plan. Jasper, can we go to the next page? Thank you. So again, quickly, just some images of projects that we've done uh here in the area and elsewhere. The bottom right is a project that we're very proud of. Um, it's called Boulevard Boulevard One at Lowry. Uh, it was a mixed use project that we completed a few years back. Um, you know, uh was a great project for the city of Denver and for us. Um, and so the one in the top right is a project that we completed in Urbata. Um, Gateway at Urbata, we did another project across the street from that Urbata Station. Again, very similar where they're on light rail uh and similar um conditions that we we have here at Inglewood. Um, kind of older sites um that are changing uses as they um uh meet the comp plan that the city outlined. Uh, and then as well as some other projects here to the left that are just kind of showing just the massing, the type of things that we look for. Um, just from a from a high level, Embry um really prides itself in architecture. So hopefully you'll see that as we show the uh the presentation with the elevations, but we really try and um meet uh and exceed what's in the neighborhood as far as design. And that comes with a mixture of different materials, stucco, metal, panel, uh brick, stone, just different things that we feel like kind of um meet the again, the 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 look and feel of the community that we're entering. So uh, we're excited to show you what we've come up with uh for for this community. Jasper, who the next slide. So the 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 request or the ask of things we'd like to discuss this evening is the rezone from Light Industrial to this um this pod or the planned unit development. Um, the site development plan, which we'll have in some more detail that will answer hopefully a lot of the questions that I heard uh so far, great questions. Um, and we can kind of go over those as well as uh major subdivision. The next slide. So I I think at that point I can turn it over to the rest of the team for the presentation.
Great. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners. Thank you very much. My name is Marcus Pockner. I am a land use and community outreach consultant on this project. Um, I'm anxious to go through the uh bulk of the presentation tonight. Bonnie and I will go back and forth. Um, thanks to Jimmy for that. I also want to say compliments to staff on their staff report and certainly to Nancy for hosting this large group of people tonight. Next slide, please. So folks, you understand this very well. This is the overall context, right, of what we're looking at. I know you all see the site. Uh, this uh kind of orange rectangular, but it's very interesting to note, of course, this is a historically an industrial area that developed along Santa Fe. Now, of course, it's a light rail, light rail corridor. It's a multimodal transportation node. Um, and it's so important how this site remains attached or anchored to that transportation hub. Uh, it's also important to note as you transition to the east, to the more established neighborhoods that are there and to Jason Park. So anyway, this shows a really good overall context of the site. Next slide brings it in a little closer and actually talks a little bit about a neighborhood context. So you all certainly know this, heard from one of the commissioners. They live very close by. But just looking at this, as you look, we anchor to Oxford Station, the station apartments and to Santa Fe there. Uh, of course, to the south of us is Quincy, Oxford. It is a longer block pattern here. And then we transition to a single family neighborhood in Jason Park as we move to the east. But just important to understand that transition of this historically very industrial area, this site itself, of course, has three industrial users on the site, including Sam's that has operated there for over forty years. Next slide, please. Uh, folks, this gives us a really good kind of immediate site context. So if we go to the bottom where you see number one and we almost go counterclockwise, a few of you have noted these intersections and some of the great challenges. Number one is looking west along Nav- or excuse me, on Oxford. And you see just the challenges. There is not infrastructure built on the site. There are not sidewalks. It is not knitted into the fabric or the community. Number two, I think is probably one of the most challenging pedestrian intersections in the city at Navajo, that's looking southbound there on Navajo and shows just the grade separation that people have today. There's really not a connection at all, a safe connection down to the street. Number three, that's as you look north on that same Navajo street, again, not existing sidewalks. It's more of an industrial storage yard. There's really no way for that pedestrian connections. And then four and five, again, showing the southern side really from Quincy. These are industrial lots today, more storage capacity. And again, no neighborhood fabric that's established. Next slide. Folks, we wanted to be sure anytime we come into a site, we look at two things that guide our planning. The first is the comprehensive plan or the guiding documents that are in place. And the second is the neighborhood feedback. Jimmy is correct. We have been working on this site for over a year. We had our first neighborhood meeting in December of twenty twenty-one. Um, I want to say here are the four documents. It is very rare that you have such clarity of planning documents and actually such detailed documents. These are the four, starting in twenty thirteen with the light rail corridor corridor plan all the way to the Oxford Station Industrial TOD study, which was done in twenty-one. So nine years of planning continuum on this site. Next slide, please. I'll go through a little detail, just more in map form. These are what your plans tell us to do. This is what is on the books would tell anybody, but certainly how we have followed them very closely. On the left, you see there at the bottom that green rectangle, we're in the city neighborhood south, which is a medium to high density housing area. As you see on the right hand side here, it really shows what's in this light rail corridor plan. It's this area was all the station plans. It was approximately for thirty-four hundred units to be developed within that. It called for a parking ratio of only one space per unit. We're certainly going to exceed that. And it called for the housing typology of townhomes and apartments, condos, et cetera. So again, we are following this guidance that started in the twenty thirteen plan. Next slide. Uh, then we transition. Go ahead. Thank you. This is the walk and wheel. We have to balance the pedestrian uh and bicyclist culture with this site. This shows where we fit into that. Again, there's some overall guidance there on the right that shows kind of the things we want. But then this the plan actually had very specific plan recommendations for this site. It talked about Navajo as a priority pedestrian corridor. We have to fix that great challenge that's there today to deal with Quincy and also to look at that overpass that many people have talked about, that pedestrian bridge, how important that is. Why we're contributing the four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to that uh bridge being constructed. Next slide, please. Folks, we then go to the comprehensive plan. You all understand that very well, really our general guiding document. Um, I do want to just say, as you see our red triangle there, I guess it's red, it's outlined in yellow. It is actually specifically enumerated in red as a redevelopment is posed to occur. So this full site as all three parcels is a redevelopment that's poised to occur. It is telling people it will happen. It again says to integrate a variety of land uses and look to enhance the pedestrian linkages, which I think is a very important word. Next slide. Folks, again, that nine year continuum, here's the twenty twenty-one plan. So you all wanted to study specifically the Oxford Station. You integrate this study of this area. Again, yellow box, pink area said this is a redevelopment opportunity because of the size and the block pattern. We want to have this be a redevelopment area. It is not identified as a preserving the character of the industrial node, so it should be redeveloped again with the medium to high density on this site. Next slide, please. So as you all understand, we take those plans, we incorporate all those planning elements, and then of course we look at the existing zoning. This is more of a placeholder, uh just to really uh provide scope and detail on what it is today. It's L one, light industrial. Um, but importantly, that could have some very intense uses. There is no height limit on the site. It could be a two to one F A R. And these are some of the uses that could be allowed without height limitations. A hotel, mini storage, auto sales, those are allowed, but of course they're really not compliant with the planning and all four of those documents. And that's what we look to. Next slide. So I want to talk here a little bit as we transition to that second item, the community overview. So again, this is actually what we're proposing. This is the plan that is before you tonight. And this is wholly and entirely based on those four guiding documents. So as you have seen, you saw this in form earlier, we are proposing three hundred and sixty-five, sixty-one multifamily homes in a four-story format. And then we are doing thirty-four townhomes. Generally, the third of the southern site is in townhomes that are three stories with different setbacks, and we really develop that in coordination with the neighborhood. Totally, there are six hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces that are primarily enclosed in that garage or in the two car garages that go to every one of the townhomes. We'll certainly go into more detail. But I just wanted you to see the plan that we're actually presenting to you tonight. Next slide. I think we just want to be sure and how did we arrive at this final concept to tell this story of the last year is actually to show you all four of those guiding documents, but then the balance and the refinement that we heard from the neighborhood. The plans actually call for a much more dense site, and we have changed that considerably based on what we heard from the neighborhood. So this is where we started. This is what we took to the neighbors in November or December of twenty-one. We had five hundred and fifty plus multifamily homes. It was one hundred percent multifamily and it was two separate buildings. And it was two separate buildings with open garages that opened to the east, right to the neighborhood. And that was unconcealed. They weren't wrapped. They weren't enclosed. So that's where we started. We obviously have reduced at least a hundred and fifty units and really have changed the housing typology for this site as well. Next slide. So folks, this is what we really focus on is our community outreach. Jasper, you can go. This is our philosophy. We believe in a concentric outreach philosophy where we work with the most affected neighbors. The neighbors that are immediately adjacent, we meet with them, we hear from them. And then we really put together our outreach plan. We then work with other community stakeholders, near your businesses, hospitals, Inglewood City Center. And then finally, the Chamber of Commerce and just broader community stakeholders. This site is so unique as we transition to the next one. We really spent a lot of time with the adjacent neighbors because we actually thought we had to tailor our process. Because of the plans all happen at an alley, they don't happen at a street. So we thought it was very important to really plan the site from the outside in. So we met with the neighbors and did two community walks to go around the site. We also had three large scale meetings and then twelve or fourteen individual meetings with neighbors surrounding the site. Overall, we've had almost fifteen hundred community touch points. They have absolutely shaped every element of this plan. And we're actually going to endeavor in the next number of slides to show you specifically how the neighborhood has changed this plan. Next slide. I'm going to go away for a little bit. Bonnie's going to walk through the next fifteen or so slides here that really do show specifically, here's where we ended up and how that happened from feedback from the neighborhood. And then we'll talk about the public infrastructure that is being constructed. So go right ahead, Bonnie.
Thank you, Marcus, and thank you, commissioners. Bonnie Nishalik with Norris Design at eleven oh one Bannick Street. Thank you all for your time this evening. As Marcus said, we spent a lot of time working through the site plan as we met early on with both city staff and our neighbors. Here you can see our current proposed site plan, which is before you tonight as part of the PUD SDP plan set, which includes the three hundred sixty one multifamily homes, the thirty four townhomes and the six hundred and thirty eight parking spaces. Approximately forty two percent of the site is open area, which includes that thirty percent landscape area. And that informal landscape areas as well as amenities and buffers. And so before we walk through the details of the site plan, we wanted to walk through the variety of changes we've made since the initial concept in fall of twenty twenty one. If you could go to the next slide. As you saw earlier, the initial plan presented to staff and in our first neighborhood meeting included two four story wrap apartment buildings. With the current plan, we reduced the proposed density from approximately five hundred and fifty homes down to three hundred ninety five homes. A reduction of one hundred and fifty five homes. Next slide. This reduction was achieved by providing additional housing variety within the community. The northern two thirds of the site includes a four story wrap building, which puts a higher density component of the proposed community closer to Oxford Station and across from the higher density apartment communities located to the west. Next slide. On the southern third of the site, we replaced the four story wrap building with three story townhomes to help transition to the single family homes to the south and to the east. Next slide. Another key item we heard from our early meetings was related to setbacks. The initial concept had a much more urban character that was kind of directed from some of the planning documents. So that we had buildings pushed right up to the perimeter streets, creating more of an urban character. The current plan provides larger and staggered setbacks to the surrounding streets to further enhance the public realm with additional landscape areas, while also maintaining landscape screening along the eastern property line, which in this view again, east is on the top of your screen. Next slide. Staying on that eastern property line through our neighborhood outreach efforts, we also added a seven foot screen fence with masonry columns to provide further screening for the single family homes to the east. Next slide. This next change, this is something that Marcus was mentioning, was we wrapped the internal parking structure with homes on all sides of it. So these homes help provide screening from the parking structure to the adjacent uses. So that parking structure is invisible from the single family homes to our east or along the perimeter drives. Next slide. And finally, all three perimeter streets have been improved to include five foot detached sidewalks along with six foot treelons to promote and greatly improve the pedestrian connectivity and safety for both the existing and future residents of the area. Next slide. Those proposed five foot sidewalks are shown here in yellow and are located along the northwest and southern property lines. This creates a much improved condition compared to what exists today. In the bottom right corner of the screen, you can see the current Navajo streetscape. This photo is taken near Oxford, looking south down Navajo. So on the left side of that image, which is along our western property line, you can see a curb and a retaining walls. It's like there's like a little bounce beam of a sidewalk. So really no safe pedestrian space for people to walk along. With this new community, this condition will be replaced with that six foot treelawn and walks. The orange lines on this plan show the existing pedestrian connectivity surrounding our site, which together will get people to that future pedestrian bridge, which is shown here in blue once that funding is complete. Next slide. Vehicular access is provided along all three of our street frontages on the south, so the right side of your screen. We have a full movement access off of Quincy Street. Along south Navajo, we have two full movement access points. One providing access to both the multifamily and townhome portions of the community. And then one further north, which provides strict access into the parking structure. The final access point is located along Oxford at the north property line on the left side of your screen, which is limited to right in and right out turn movements to help minimize some of the conflicts that exist there today. Next slide. The proposed multifamily building, which is seen here looking north along Navajo. The architectural character provides a transition between the more modern apartments to the west and the single family homes to the east. A combination of pitched and flat roof styles help facilitate the transition. And the building facades are articulated to break down the scale and massing of the building. Included within the design standards in the PewDie is a requirement for the buildings to have a minimum of thirty percent masonry. Next slide. Here's another rendering of the proposed multifamily building. So this is taken from the corner of Oxford and Navajo, looking southwest, southeast. And you can see the addition of that treelawn and detached sidewalks looking along Navajo Street. Next slide. And here's that view that we began with, looking from Quincy through the townhome portion of the community back to the multifamily building at the back of the image. The townhomes help provide additional home options in the community. Each townhome unit includes two and three bedrooms with attached two car garages. Here you can also see some of the provided amenity spaces, which include informal outdoor gathering spaces, a pool courtyard within the multifamily building and outdoor kitchens. Next slide. We've also included sustainability features within the community. The multifamily building is targeting an NGBS silver designation for sustainability. The community includes an all electric design with high energy heat pumps and energy star appliances. The pomegranate includes low flow water sense fixtures. We've also elected to include electric vehicle charging. Five percent of the spaces within the parking structure will have EV charging stations. While each townhome garage will have one charging station. We have provided bike parking for approximately fifty percent of the units. Again, encourage different modes of transportation. And finally, the landscaping located throughout the community is water efficient and has been designed to minimize the use of sod. Next slide. As a part of the proposed community, we have included a number of public improvements. Next slide. First, we have improvements to, sorry, we have improvements to modify and replace the traffic signal and pole located at Oxford and Navajo. So that's where that one symbol is shown here. Next slide. Next, a second through lane. I know we talked about that, some of the early questions, so we're happy to go through this one in more detail. But a second through lane has been added on Oxford, continuing west from Navajo within right away that is dedicated as part of this property. Next slide. A protected left turn lane has been added along Navajo. That's at the location of the three. Next slide. That turn lane has also been lengthened from its existing condition. Next slide. A new curb and gutters provided along all three perimeter streets shown here with the five. Next slide. Along with accessible ramps. Next slide. And here, number seven, looking at the left of your screen, we're working with RTD to improve the bus stop along Navajo as well. And with that, I'll turn it back to Marcus to wrap it up and walk through our overall compliance.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Just a few other things. I'll go through the compliance as Bonnie just mentioned with the approved city documents. Next slide, please. I will be quick. These generally show a lot of the same content that I covered. What we showed you earlier was the guidance from the plans. And what we're showing you here is actually the implementation, how we have implemented that and how we have balanced the proposal and the guidance with what we heard from the neighborhoods. So again, the densities in this area are suggested to be up to seventy five units per acre. We are down at thirty six point nine. Instead of just one per unit for parking, we have balanced that with neighborhood feedback at one point six and providing additional multifamily. So really staying in complete compliance with the light rail corridor plan. Same with the walk and wheel, following the pedestrian guidance, really changing that image that shows the new intersection at Navajo and Oxford really speaks to the changes that we're bringing. Next slide, please. A few other things, of course, in your comp plan, the overall guidance of how important this site is to support the Oxford Station. There is a lot of dialogue about why this site is so beneficial to Oxford from ridership, from the support of it, from bringing in the connections, the pedestrian linkages. Then finally, as we transition to that twenty twenty one study to really talk about this site as a redevelopment opportunity and how to do it correctly. We have identified and implemented all of those suggested planes, changes that are in the TOD study. Next slide. We also actually want to step further and looked at the strategic plan goals. You can go through this. I think we have implemented a number of additional things. We think particularly the construction, that avenue, the pedestrian bridge that's been brought up. I think it's very importantly to do that, to do more sustainable landscape and actually to bring tree canopy. It was mentioned that eight percent of a site on industrial, we think it's actually much less than that on this site. And we're really going to bring additional green and tree canopy to the site. Next slide. Last few slides here, really look at the Inglewood UDC section for you all that you look at in approving the approval criteria for a presentation. I just want to look at, you know, you understand your code. This lays out that shall we exceed? We do believe we exceed the development quality standards and levels of public amenities. Next slide. The staff report was very detailed on this. It also talks about will not have significant negative impact. We certainly labored to show how we have mitigated all of those impacts, but we'd like to go into one last detail. Next slide, please. This shows again what we have done that really shows how we exceeded the existing standards. Very thoughtful design, really expanding the requirements. People were talking earlier. We are at forty two percent open space, thirty five percent or thirty seven percent of landscape space. One twenty five is required. So we believe we're really incorporating more open space into this site, more sustainability. And also very focused on a density transition, also from street typology, from Oxford as you move south to Quincy and from the existing neighbors, really paying attention to that, bringing in the townhome to really help us that transition and the setbacks as we move to the neighborhood to the east. Next slide. Folks, this is how we believe that we are protecting the health, safety and welfare of the community. I think this could be a very exhaustive list, but we wanted to provide some details, just the additional housing that's coming in. More permeability on the site. It is completely fenced today. It is industrial. There is no city infrastructure that surrounds the site, so really knitting this back into the neighborhood and providing those amenities. Providing park and loo and open space on site and also the funding that we mentioned for the bridge. Next slide, please. Finally, commissioners, I just want to note, I know this, there's a separate item on the major subdivision. Just to mention why we are going through that process, we are combining three industrial lots into one. And we've gone through all the code requirements with the city to meet all the right of way dedications that are being requested. So that's why we're also asking for a major subdivision with this application. Finally, our last slide, thank you very much for your patience and interest in this. This is really shows the clear planning guidance for different plans that we have on this site. But how we tried to balance and refine that by neighborhood engagement. The neighbors have been remarkable. They have engaged with us for over a year. And they have effectuated a much better housing plan with a variety of housing products, better heights that transition into the neighborhood. We have a better parking plan that also supports light rail, but allows us to not have overflow parking that spills into the neighborhood. I think public safety, we've heard it in different ways. All the public amenities and infrastructure that we're bringing, frankly, just the safety that's not there today on those pedestrian connections. And then the others, the additional things that we're doing there to really enhance the neighborhood overall. So with that, as we transition to our thank you slide, this is again a look at that intersection at Navajo and Oxford. What a change that is from the existing conditions to really try to bring this into the neighborhood. Provide vehicular infrastructure as well. We know this is an important gateway as mentioned earlier, but that gateway needs to facilitate the TOD with as well. So with all of that, we would respectfully request your support for this application. And we very much look forward to any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, that presentation. Nancy, do you want to call on the commissioners who have questions of the applicant?
I do, Colin.
Do appreciate that information. Well thought out. I know you have worked with the neighborhood a lot. I don't think there can be any thing that makes everybody happy in every part of, of every project. But I know you guys worked really hard to, to get there and, and also follow the, the requirements with proposed improvements from the master plans, which is really important for what we're looking at as well. One of the questions that I did have that I was hoping to just get your input on was that potential for any commercial space within, within this development, was that considered? How was that looked at and what were the reasons for?
Sure. And Commissioner, I will just note that I'll probably play a little bit of moderator for our team and then probably go to the right person, if that's okay. So Bonnie, I know you had a comment on that. Maybe if you could address that.
Yeah, one thing we did do within the PewDie is instead of allowing just multifamily and townhome uses, we did allow commercial uses within the PewDie. It was food and beverage services and retail sales and service. We wanted to make sure that that wasn't allowed use. Should the, maybe some of the amenity space or something in the building change at some point? If we saw a need for some commercial uses, that would be allowed within the PewDie. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't precluding that as a use.
Brenda?
Thank you. Yes, I believe citizens are very interested in mitigating any impact to the nearby Jason Park. I saw that your plans include, of course, the open space. Can you speak about how much space you've dedicated to what looks like a dog park within the facility? And I also thought I saw a dog run on the north side.
Yeah, we have three kind of key dog amenity areas. One is on the north side. One is, I believe, on the east side. And I think the other one is near the townhome area. So just having a couple of different areas for dogs to be and then kind of sprinkle throughout the community. We also have pet pickup stations. We know there's a lot of people walking their dogs and want to make sure that that is easily accessible as well.
And Commissioner, I would just add and note, you are correct. We're also paying park and loo fees additionally on top of that. And I think it's been so important as we talked with the neighbors and walked the site about even providing some more the sidewalks and the fabric there, that pedestrian fabric to actually make connections for neighbors that happen to be actually on the west side of the site as they transition to Jason Park.
Carl?
As far as the cost of the units, what are, what are the costs of the units and what is? You have a parking fee?
So Jimmy, I'm going to let you answer that on proposed or potential costs of the unit.
Sure. These are market rate apartments, Carl. So the price ranges and will obviously depend when we open up the doors here in a few years. But it would range from about fourteen hundred dollars for the smaller units. The larger units, the townhomes are a pretty good size. You know, they're fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet. Three bedrooms with their own two car garage. So those townhomes would be probably in that three thousand to thirty five hundred dollar range. That's typically what we see for the townhomes. They're usually comparable what you'd find for a single family home in the area if you were to rent one. As far as the parking is concerned, parking spaces are included with the units. We'll have maybe a few parking spaces where there'll be an upgrade because of its location or proximity to an elevator. But for the most part, it's just something that comes and is built into the rent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Judy?
I have several questions, but I'm just going to focus on one and then let other people ask theirs and maybe. Now, so I want to talk about the they'll, so I want to talk about the parking garage. So I have two questions. One, the, the, it's both an entry and an exit on Navajo. Um, again, that's a, a traffic could be at high um, use times of a big traffic issue with people trying to turn left into the parking garage. So my question regarding that, uh, cause I'm sure the traffic study can explain maybe what the expectations are there. And I, I'm not familiar with reading. I was not going through the traffic study to see if I could figure that out. So I'll let somebody answer the volume of people who may be turning left into that Navajo parking garage entrance. And then the other, this might seem like a weird concern, but is that parking garage going to be sort of like a secure entrance where people have to have a, a card? And I just have visions of people getting stuck there, not being able to get in. Um, and I know there's an entry and an exit within the, the development itself. Um, and I, I was just curious about specifically that entrance off of Navajo and mitigating the number of issues with the entrance and exit in and out of there. And it's going to be, it looks to me like it's going to be a fairly blind coming out of that, if that's an exit. Trying, if, if somebody wants to make a left turn on Navajo, I just think it's, it could be a concern. So I'll, if somebody could speak to that specifically, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, Commissioner, we're happy to address that. I'm going to just, uh, set the table. As you mentioned, I believe both of the entrances on Navajo, one into the parking garage and then one into more the third, the southern third of our section are proposed as full movement intersections, right, Commissioner? So we are showing that one does go directly into the parking garage. So Jimmy, if we can first answer maybe the last question about is that card control, there is there additional stoppage there as you enter that garage off of Navajo?
Sure, yeah. Um, the garage doors will be controlled through a card reader, but it's, it's a, it's a toll tag like you'd have when you're going on a, on a tollway. So as you pull up, it senses that you're, you're coming and it, and it rolls up fairly quickly. And then, you know, we actually have um, asylum on a parking cut that kind of surrounds the property within the property boundary where people can park parallel if they need to run up into their apartment. Uh, and then also at the main entrance of our kind of clubhouse, which is on the southern end of the, of the larger building. There's some parking spaces there again for, uh, we try and plan for like Uber drop off and other things, uh, Uber pickup when people are coming in later. And so there's some designated areas within the property to kind of drive that traffic to those locations. Uh, and then when it comes to the actual driveway entrances, I think I'd probably turn it over to the, to my Kibbie and the Harris Coker team. If that's okay, Marcus, to talk about the technical side.
Perfect. So Mike or Harris Coker, whoever's going to answer specifically kind of the traffic analysis on really the one entrance that goes into the site into the traffic garage.
Yeah, this is my Tivi with Harris Coker Smith. I'm the traffic engineer for the project. Based on our analysis, uh, for the, for the site, that main parking garage access is directly across from the Navajo Apartments driveway. Did the left turning traffic in there for the AM peak hour would be fifty one left turns and forty three during the PM or afternoon peak hour over the course of an hour. So that's, you know, averages less than one car per minute, um, for each of those two peak hours going in.
Great. And Commissioner, we can provide any more detail or follow up you have on that. Of course, the AM tree, uh, peak traffic, I think is kind of against traffic flow, right? Um, as most of the traffic is probably headed to Oxford or maybe the Santa Fe corridor.
Colin?
Yeah, I, I think I might actually build on that. That seems a little counterintuitive that the AM peak would be, uh, higher. That being said, I, I know you all are, it's not my area of expertise, so I will question that, but I just maybe make sure I heard that right, that you're saying the AM peak left turn into the apartment complex would be higher than PM peak?
This is my to begin. Yeah, yes, for that particular access point, that's correct.
What I did have a question about then was the additional lane going north or eastbound on Oxford Avenue. Can you discuss that a little bit more and how that will operate? Will there be then two through lanes going eastbound within, or would that be a dedicated right turn lane only for your development or how would that transition happen and what will that look like?
Great. One of the engineers can answer that for Bonnie.
This is, this is my Tivi, the traffic engineer again. And right now, the eastbound lane that you have to turn right to go southbound onto Navajo from Oxford, that will get extended on straight through beyond, you know, to go eastbound on Oxford. Then it will merge back in by the end of our property, um, so as to miss the residential housing there, um, on our east side. So there'll be actually two through lanes going eastbound. What, what that will do is help alleviate that potential queue that can get back up into Santa Fe. We're also doing some traffic signal optimization, um, of the timing there, which will also help that. Where, um, that's, as Jay mentioned, we're coordinating with C dot to see what their traffic timing is so that we can coordinate our signal there at Oxford Navajo to work as, as, as best as we can get it to work.
So that won't be a dedicated right turn lane into the site on the east part of your site. That will be a merged lane with potential. So there'd be a, like a third lane for the turn lane or will the?
It'll just be like a right turn lane into a driveway like, like, like to see all along the, um, Oxford or, or any other roadway. No, no deceleration lane.
So you will be able to turn. Right, Mike, you will be able to turn right southbound or continue straight, uh, eastbound.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I, I think Colin, if, I live off of Dartmouth, so I think what they're talking about is something similar when you're going southbound on Santa Fe and turning to go east on Dartmouth, there's that additional lane that you can use or turn there. I think that's what they're talking about.
Kate Fuller?
Um, I just have one question. I was wondering, are there any plans being considered for workforce housing or affordable housing at this property?
This time, um, sorry, being sure I wasn't muted. We were looking at this site as a market rate development, uh, Commissioner. So we're right now, this is proposed at market rate. We did talk with the city about any opportunities there. I think right now without an ordinance in place, we're pursuing it right now as a multi-rate. I think Jimmy mentioned as we look at the size, uh, Commissioner of the units and some of those and really try to look at this as attainable housing and the housing variety on the site. Some of those again, probably starting approximately a fifteen hundred dollars. So we've looked at the overall AMI scale and we believe we're in that eighty to one twenty uh, attainable housing for the site.
Thank you.
You bet.
Noel?
Um, more on parking. Um, how will the, so, um, with the number of spaces, one point six, how will the second parking spaces be allocated amongst the units? Uh, and my concern is that, uh, you know, residents of, of the development with second vehicles will spill out onto the residential streets like we've seen in, um, some other developments, uh, that have occurred recently.
Great. I think Jimmy, go right ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Yeah. So, uh, like we've mentioned earlier, each resident will have their own parking space associated with the, with their unit. There are a few spaces that are ideal that will have a rate associated with it. Uh, if they want, uh, another car or they have a roommate or a partner, then they can, um, obtain another, um, parking space if they're in a one bedroom unit. And we monitor that really quick, uh, carefully. Uh, for us, I mean, again, we, we typically, and this is across all of our projects, over design the parking to make sure we're capturing enough space uh, within the garage to compensate for the number of units that we have. Um, and that's been something we've done, you know, for years. For us, if we have a property that doesn't have enough parking, that's a big issue. So we, we hire a third party parking consultant internally. That'll help us look at the parking and make sure we're delivering above what's expected and, and what we see in the market.
And Commissioner, I'd also just add that importantly, as you transition to the more of the single family neighborhood and the street typology as you go south, the townhomes all have two car garages for each unit. And then there's also guest parking on the townhomes as well. So really that's where that overflow, if you think of that into the neighborhood. So there's really, uh, I think there's ample parking throughout way above code. It was supposed to be at one per unit. But we think it was much more prudent and actually that was designed specifically to absorb, if you will, a lot of that parking. So again, we think we specifically did the land use plan to also try to alleviate any of that spillover traffic or parking that you mentioned as well.
Noel, you're muted.
The additional spot will be charged for. So if I live in a unit, I get one spot and then the additional one will be charged for.
Correct. That's right. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Kate Townley?
I'll stick to the traffic and parking subject. Um, I was just wondering for your trip generation report, did you use the one point six, um, parking in that model or did you use a different model based on, um, access to transit?
Mike, I'll probably defer to you on that or to Jimmy.
Um, this is my Tivi. I, I wasn't involved with that parking study portion of the, of the, of the project.
I guess it's more the trip generation is that? Um, and if the trip generation used the one point six from the parking, um, ratio in the trip generation model?
My Kibbie again. No, we use the, um, Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That's the industry standard to how we generate trips for, um, all different types of land uses. So it's, it's, it's a, it's not a, a steady one, like a one point six or anything like that. It's a, it's a, a fitted curve um, of, of, of the data. So, um, it's, you know, it's based on that.
Doesn't the Institute for Transportation Engineers have like a typical ratio that they would include for that particular location in terms of it being in close proximity to transit as well as, um, just kind of giving it a general parking because the parking is going to have to have an impact on the trip generation. Um, and I think it's typically less than what you have in the, um, as your ratio in the garage.
The, the trip generation is not related at all to parking. It's, it's, it's based on the number of dwelling units and the number of, of trips that are generated based on observation of each particular land use. And I can tell you, um, based on, uh, three hundred and ninety five units. We're, we're estimating that's about four point seven eight, um, trips per day per dwelling unit.
And if I could go back to the, um, the right in, right out on Oxford. Um, can you describe a guess? Um, cause I wasn't able to see it very well in the plans, how that, um, is going to, um, be designed to avoid minimal conflicts between the bicyclists and the bike lane and the people staying in the right and then turning right and, and how that alignment will work. Cause I wasn't able to decipher that in the, the plan.
Great. And I will allow, of course, have somebody on our team and Commissioner, we're just fielding them to try to be sure we get the, all the questions. Of course, that's eastbound, right on Oxford, the two lanes, the additional lanes continuing. As you all know, there's an existing bike lane there today. So we do on Oxford, that's proposed as only at the, I guess, the east side of our, uh, site there as a right into our site to turn south into the building or a right out to then go eastbound on Oxford. So minimizing conflict points there. Uh, somebody from our engineer or Bonnie, just on a planning perspective, how we're working through those challenges.
Sorry, was somebody from your team going to answer that?
Yeah, a pause does not mean we're not working on it. I'll apologize. We're just.
The meeting moving.
Right. Yeah. So this is Kevin Kennedy with Harris, Harris Coker Smith. Uh, I'm one of the engineers working on this project. I think basically what we're trying to say is that a right in, right out is the, the best way to minimize those potential conflicts. If you allow left turns in and left turns out, there are more conflict points with existing bike lanes and existing traffic.
Okay, Judy?
Um, I have one quick question since we're, I wasn't, I was going to save this for later, but are you going to eliminate parking on Navajo for the length of your, um, on street? Are you gonna, are we going to be able to eliminate on-street parking on Navajo? Um, for the length of your property in that development or is that, now, this might be a staff question. I don't know. But, um, so there's that on parking and then I want, if somebody could answer that on Navajo. Then I just have one other question that I wanted to ask.
Bonnie, go right ahead. Or?
Um, I, I, I think we may, may need a civil engineer to confirm that, but I don't think we are eliminating any parking. But Kevin, you could confirm that. No, I want to know if you're going to stop the on-street. I want you to stop the on-street parking along your property on Navajo, but I don't know if that's your, in your purview. Because the people from across the street are gonna park there. I'm just telling you that right now. Cause they charge for parking.
We, we are not proposing to eliminate the parking at this time.
Okay. So my other question, I, I wanted to talk about the buffer between the adjacent properties. So, um, I know you're putting up a fence and you've put in some landscaping, but I also noticed that along that fence and I, I'm not, I don't know if there's a home back there, but that's also where I think the dog park was supposed to go, if I remember correctly, in that southeast corner. And then the trash was also going to be picked up along there. Am I correct? Um, I was just concerned about that being a gathering place, it being a trash place in, and that's next to the adjacent properties. And I also wanted maybe a more detailed description of, uh, that whole buffering section, because it's a traffic lane and then some landscaping. And you have a much better chance of your trees living over there than you do on Navajo, but that's just a.
So great. Thanks, Michelle. I'll go back and forth here with Bonnie and we'll kind of talk about that. Uh, a couple of things, just to deal with kind of the setbacks, if that's fair to call that the buffer, the transitions there. On the multifamily building, the, uh, setback is fifty feet. So that's a fifty foot setback from the existing property lines or the backyard fence, right, of those homes. As it transitions to that, uh, southern third, the setback is thirty five feet, obviously lower scale buildings, much smaller footprint and massing. So on those buildings, the townhomes, there is a trash receptacle that's there. But on the larger building, the trash is all inside of the structure and would be rolled out. So we've been very cognizant of that buffer. You see a pretty heavy landscaping there. There is some parking that is provided along that, but I'll have somebody else, Bonnie, or an engineer talk to that. But I just wanted to show again, fifty feet is the buffer that we're proposing. Again, as you saw on the first table where we started tonight, the traditional buffer in a multifamily is twenty five feet, and we thought it was much more appropriate to have additional buffer there to setback from the neighborhoods.
Yeah, and just to, um, add a little bit more on the landscaping. So majority of that, um, landscape up around the eastern property line is a mix of both, shade canopy trees, deciduous shrubs and deciduous, or sorry, evergreen shrubs and evergreen trees to, um, kind of provide some variety in that space and create that transition in addition to the seven foot, um, cedar fence. Um, we do have one of the dog run areas. I'm just trying to kind of, I guess, spread out the dog density throughout the community. Um, everyone has pups now, and so we want to make sure that those spaces are kind of split out or separated within the community, but also, um, we do have additional landscape screening along that dog run on the eastern boundary too. So making sure that we have that fence, that there is landscape screening within the dog park, um, to help create some, um, spacing. So really trying to have three of those areas so that there aren't heavy gathering spaces, um, in just one area for the dogs.
And Bonnie, last thing, we do have some parking along that roadway. Just to be sure, there's some parallel parking on the eastern side of our building, attached to our building or attached to the landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely correct. So yes, on the multifamily side of the drive.
Chair Austin?
Uh, I have three different questions. Um, the traffic study that was part of our packet was three different questions. Um, the traffic study that was part of our packet was done in August of 21, and I was curious as to why it wasn't updated. I think there's been, uh, my personal opinion is that traffic has changed quite significantly from the beginning of COVID uh all the way through for the next two years. So um, is there a reason why that traffic study wasn't updated to 2022?
Sure. This is my T V. Um, again, it was updated on June 24th of 2022.
Okay. I don't know. Somehow I I I saw on the, I I somehow I picked up eight, 17 of 21 where the traffic counts were done, but um
That that's probably correct. It's when the traffic counts were done.
Right. So why weren't, I mean, just my, just asking the question, were there, why weren't there additional counts done in 2022?
We we had adjusted those traffic counts um based on city criteria um to adjust for COVID. So we were able to use it, able to use those counts with an adjustment.
Okay. Well, that whole traffic part was, I think, 800 pages, so um I can't complain about a lack of thoroughness on that. So not sure, but it went a long, long way. Um, a quick question, you're gonna have to educate me on EV parking spaces because I don't know a lot about them. But since we're apart, we're, you know, going to say, hey, we're great, we're doing great, we're doing 1.6 per unit. Um if if you live there and every, all the other spots are filled, can you park in the EV space even if you don't have an EV car?
Jimmy, go right ahead.
Yeah, you can. Um, those EV spaces would be reserved and so you'll start to, as the property leases and becomes occupied, you'll know when those EV spaces are available or not. Um, you know, it's interesting because about 1% of the cars on the road are are electrical vehicles. That's going to change dramatically over the next couple of years. And so although we provide, I think it's 5% on this project of actually charging stations, we wire the entire project so that it can be converted to 100% electrical vehicles. That's uh, there's some change to have that happen to the electrical grid system to kind of support that globally. Um, but yeah, so I mean, right now, um, you're gonna have parking spaces that are gonna be used that are electrical vehicles, parking spaces that are not electrical vehicles. And as that, as you know, the electrical vehicles become more prevalent, that'll that'll adjust with uh with the number of spaces available.
Okay. Well, and who knows, we may have hydrogen powered cars down there. We really, we really don't know what, you know, what's what's gonna happen here. And then the last, I'd like to, uh, I don't, haven't heard anything about the shadow. Um, and particularly along uh the streak there between the, you know, this building and the buildings across the street. It's gonna be in the wintertime, it could be a real icy um situation there. Um, how do you, is there anything you're planning on to for ongoing, you know, snow removal and that sort of, this is not part of a P U D kind of thing, but just a question on how you're gonna manage that.
Great. Go ahead, Bonnie. Or someone, I see you looking at the middle.
Oh, I was, yeah. We're in Colorado, not Texas, so that's
Bonnie from Wisconsin, she knows all about snow.
I know you have to go shovel it a lot. That's what my dad told me. Um, so Jimmy, I know you guys own tons of properties um in Colorado and kind of what are I I know the apartment building I live in, I hear them, you know, shoveling sidewalks, uh, while I'm still laying in my cozy bed. Um, so I'm guessing that's um kind of your approach, but making sure that stuff is taken care of um bright and early in the morning.
That's right. Yeah, we have, we have a, you know, we have maintenance staff. We've, I mean, these, it's a big project, so there's gonna be a lot of folks that um either work there and or work and live there. And so um we'll have maintenance staff, you know, maintaining the sidewalks and the roads to make sure that folks can get around. Um, you know, without getting injured. Uh, but you're, I mean, uh, Michelle, you're right. I mean, that that area is gonna be area we have to pay close attention to because of the shadow effect. But I mean, it's not uncommon. We've got projects in more urban areas than this um with higher buildings next to it. I mean, we're sitting on right now, you know, downtown Denver and um, you know, you just have to get out there and get get it quickly, but you know, in Denver, it does melt a lot faster than other places. So we'll have to just make sure we're on top of it and that's part of our maintenance plan with the property.
Yeah, it's a liability that that sounds like you got it under control. Thanks.
Right. Yep.
Earl.
Uh, just a quick note on the uh the Oxford right in, right out. Unless there's a median in the in the middle of Oxford, there, people are not gonna they're gonna be doing left out of there. Yeah, I don't think, I don't believe there is a median right there. It's, there was one close to the rec center, but no, I don't think it goes that far down. But that that would need to be done because you you're not gonna have a a right out only there if there's not a curb. Uh, one other thing, the trash, you have a trash area. Uh, Denver is going to apartments, requiring apartments to have a recycling uh area also. And some of them are going to a composting area too. Composting is with apartments, you're not gonna have that much um compost or recycling, there should be uh something to accommodate the uh the recycling.
Yeah, um, we we will have recycling. There's no compost, Carl, but we will have recycling and trash. And we have um what we call valet trash, which is essentially um a couple of times a week, folks are able to place their trash outside of their unit on like a little pad that's outside. It's it's in a conditioned corridor. And then our staff will come by and pick it up and take it to the um you know, the trash receptacle uh onsite. So that's an amenity that a lot of people enjoy when they're living in a in an urban location like that.
Is there a fee for that or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, like three bucks a month or five bucks a month or something like that. That's uh, it's kind of, it's all part of the the rents that we talked about earlier that are kind of built into the pricing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I I saw the parking space sizes, but I didn't really look at them for a close. Uh, what's the availability for parking of a full-size pickup in there? Are they gonna have to park on the street?
No, I mean, it it should be designed, I guess, you should put it over to H K S. Um, I guess depends on the lift. If you got big tires on there, you may not be getting, but uh, an average pickup truck, uh, there's compact spaces, a combination of compact spaces and and uh regular spaces, but I don't know if anyone, Kevin or someone wants to chime in on, you know, the dimensions of the spaces.
Right. Our our typical, this is Kevin Kennedy with H K S. Our typical uh parking space on here is nine feet wide and 19 feet long. Um, I don't know exactly what the the length of a full-size pickup. I know they're very pretty widely. Um, but yeah, I I think that's a pretty standard parking stall. They can go down as as small as eight by 18. So we're a little bit bigger than than what you'd find in a tighter parking spot.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Followed.
I'd like to have that trash valet come to my house. That sounds very nice. Um, I I wanted to follow up on two things. The one about not allowing parking on Navajo. I think there's currently the south half of the site. Um, there's parking on Navajo and I I think I would support as much you know, street parking as we possibly can, just to make sure if there is some sort of overflow or a party or something like that, they're not going off into the street. So if we can keep the street parking, I guess. Sorry, Judy, I would, I would lean towards uh actually keeping that uh in that regard. Um, and then I wanted to add a question for city staff and because H K S had noted, there's some city traffic adjustments for COVID that I I wasn't aware of. I'm not sure what that is. I was curious if what or if H K S can explain what that actually meant and what that is.
My T V with H K S. Um, when we um were doing traffic studies during that COVID area, your traffic counts, we look at historical counts and see how those um counts um compared to the counts during COVID and then formulated an adjustment factor based off Dr. Cog growth rates net so that we could project or forecast future counts like for um for build-out year and in the future 20-year design horizon. So that's how we, that's how we do that. Um, and since that question was asked, I've I uh did a little looking in in our study too, and and we found that um um ba- basically by August of of 2021, um, traffic was getting back to, pretty much back to normal at that time.
So maybe to follow which I go ahead, Mike.
So the COVID adjustment factor is basically 1.0 or or, you know, there's, there were, there needed to be no, no ju- adjustment.
Okay, so you didn't make any adjustments to the counts that were made in August 21?
That's correct. We tested it, we tested it based off of historical data and found that that there didn't need to be any adjustments.
And when you say off historical data, are you talking about other sites around the city or Dr. Cog region?
Dr. Cog in the city of Inglewood in Littleton and that they they have from uh historical traffic count records that we obtain and we look at that and then when we do our traffic, we try to do our traffic counts at some of those same locations so that we can see what the pattern of traffic is, is it increasing, decreasing, staying the same and things like that. And we found at this, that that, you know, at our study area intersections that we were doing, we found that by August of 2021, that um vehicular traffic on the road, said area roadways was basically back to normal.
Thank you.
Judy.
Um, so I was trying to find if the number was in there. I'm gonna ask you guys, so how many human beings do you expect to be in these units? So how many people are we adding to the neighborhood?
Sure. So, yeah, Jimmy, maybe you can just give kind of the current, what you see on apartments. Uh, again, I will just say this area in the plan from all planning concepts for roadway capacity was for medium to high density, which is up to 75 dwelling units per acre. We are coming in at around 39 dwelling units per acre, so much less dense than is in the plan. Jimmy, based on our units, 361 and 34, do you have an idea generally what you see in a multifamily unit?
Yeah, the average is about 1.5. So one and a half people per unit is what we typically see.
Okay. So about a grand, that thousand people added to the
No. We've got, no, we've got four, we call it 395 units, so it's just under 600 unit, 600 people.
Okay.
Yeah. And you know, we will, most projects run Judy at about 92% occupancy. Like it's rare to get up to 100%. So I mean, take that into account, you're knocking down you know, uh, for another 32 units that aren't accounted for and 1.5 times, call it three, I'm doing math to my head, which is never good in
Yeah, that's fine. I was just looking for a general number and that pressure. Um, and then what about pets? Um, is everybody allowed to have a dog?
There are uh breed restrictions and size restrictions uh that that goes without saying with our properties. Um, but yes, uh, a lot of folks have pets. In fact, I saw a pet earlier and someone screamed behind them walking around. So I've got a dog with another one on the way that we're gonna get here soon for Christmas, I think. So yeah, we all have pets. And that's one of the reasons why we really try and build these projects. We mentioned the outdoor spaces, Judy, that are available for folks. We also, it's Colorado, it's cold. We have some indoor facilities for folks to be able to wash their pet and and do that type of thing within the within the property. So it's a big part of our amenity package. And I think it's what attracts people um to these types of projects that feel like, hey, I can have a pet, I can still have kind of an urban living. I don't have to have a yard, but I have the access to all the amenities that, you know, our projects offer. So it's a big part of um how we market our projects.
Um, and then sort of generally the size of the dog parks, here's my concern, right? So Jason Park is a huge attraction for people, for dogs and and I won't go into my opinions on off-leash dog parks because somebody will probably put me on a list to kill me, but um I think that there, and I'm sure we'll hear from some of the neighbors, but I think that there's the concern for potential additional burden on Jason Park. Um, so uh, I don't know how big your dog parks are. And so I'm just trying to get an idea if what you took into consideration related to, I'm sure the neighbors had something to say about the burden on Jason Park. If they didn't, I'd be shocked.
Yeah, they did. And we met several folks that were actually involved. Uh, there was some type of uh, community-based outreach specifically for the dogs in Inglewood that we met with. And so, you know, we definitely heard them. I think um, you know, that's a big reason why we have the amount of dog space outside for this property. You have to remember, I mean, people do like convenience, right? So to be able to walk outside and let their dog run and the dog run for four or five minutes and then, you know, take them in, that's kind of what we see a lot of times or 10 or 15 minutes. It's more of a social thing amongst neighbors. So um, we do see our dog parks get a lot of use uh and they're designed to be able to take on that type of use uh with artificial turf and drainage systems and all that stuff that come along with it. Um, and so, you know, again, people like convenience to say that they would never walk down to Jason Park ever with their dog. I mean, that would, we know that's gonna happen. But I again, um, we see a lot of use with our dog parks. Dogs tend to be smaller uh if these, you know, apartments, there's all different breeds, don't get me wrong, but you tend to see smaller dogs, lighter dogs, uh, and so those types of facilities do well for the types of um pets that people have at our projects.
Kate Townley.
Thanks. I have two questions. Um, I guess one kind of on the the Parker open space piece and there was a recommendation in the um South Oxford plan, um station plan um for having kind of a public uh public space, park, open space, kind of enhanced intersection at Navajo and uh Quincy. Um, and that didn't look like something that was um taken into consideration with this plan, but I didn't know if that was something that was discussed um in terms of alignment with that. And that's on, I think, page 30 of that plan. And this has to do with setbacks and improvements to, I think, the intersection, but just creating it um kind of a, I guess, a gathering place within that intersection. Um, so if you want to answer that one, and then I'll do my
Um, we could dig into that one a little bit more. I know we were trying to be really thoughtful with making sure that the uh, kind of the entire landscape edge along Navajo and Quincy both had um you know, some enhancement compared to a lot of the existing conditions today, not just the existing industrial conditions, but the existing multifamily conditions too. So we want, really wanted to make that whole corridor a lot more friendly to walk along. Um, both with the addition of the tree lawn, but also making sure that there is landscape areas um on the east side of those sidewalks as well. Um, but we'll take another look at that plan and make sure we're meeting all those items.
Yeah, we did in the neighborhood process. We did hear a lot of those comments, Kate, for folks that said, hey, we'd like to see some kind of combined park area at the southern end of your property. We also heard folks that said we don't want you guys, we we want you guys to kind of be your own, you know, your own village. And so I think we kind of, I felt like we kind of came to a happy medium there with the enhanced landscaping and pathway to the higher density where it comes to the rail stop. So that there's a lot of folks that, as we walked, did the neighborhood walk, we kind of um uh gave them a presentation visually of what that could look like. And so they really started to dive into what that can connection was as a resident back in the neighborhood, walking over to the rail stop. And then we, you know, we obviously provided a park internally for the residents, for our residents.
Okay. Um, my other question has to do with sort of scale and massing. Um it's sort of hard to see on some of the site plans, but in in walking the site and trying to kind of get a sense of this. It seems as though the larger building is going to be at least a block long, maybe a little bit longer than that. Um, and one kind of solid building. There could be some architectural changes or things like that, but was there a thought of having some break breaks in that frontage in order to have um some additional, be able to, you know, see um views of the mountains and things like that, or just if you can kind of talk me through that scale or the massing of that for that whole block?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, um, so again, I kind of mentioned earlier, you know, the architectural part is a big part of um our process internally to make sure we're we're meeting our own expectations of what the project to look like. Um, it's a great question. So on the north side, obviously, along Oxford, there is a lot of openness uh to the street with with um room for some courtyards off of that road um to add to the kind of articulation of the building. On the west side, with the way the garage landed and the way the streetscape was, um, we do have articulations in the building. I don't think the renderings do a very good job, but not to the extent where you have large carve-outs opening up into the other courtyards. Um, so we try to have one courtyard that's open on the north side that feels open air looking to the north. The one on the uh south side of the property is um is more of a closed courtyard and that was by design. But I think when you start to really turn the building three dimensionally, you'll start to see like there are ins and outs and pockets to create some articulation on the building on all four sides.
Kate Fuller.
I have two questions. Um, one would be concerning the single-family um homes near the property. Uh, what do you Uh, what do you expect? I know you can't really promise how long construction will take, but the burden of construction on the neighborhood sort of from finish to start, we know construction delays happen. How long would you expect for like noisiness to disrupt the neighborhood? Um, so that's the first question. I'll just ask that first.
Yeah, go ahead, Marcus.
No, go right ahead. That's great.
Yeah, it was a question that came up. This is like all all the great neighborhood questions that we had a chance to meet with the neighbors on. So we said, and we'll, you know, say it tonight, like the first part of the construction for the first three or four months could be kind of noisy of big equipment out there. That's just kind of part of the construction efforts. Once the framing starts and people start working indoors, the project gets a lot quieter. The total timeline is probably twenty four to thirty months, depending on the amount of snow we get, depending on the labor force, all the things that you guys are probably dealing with. Personal projects or see around the city. Um, so you know, again, the first couple of months can be a little noisy. We 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 did, you know, we we told the neighbors that we were, you know, we understand that. But once the project starts kind of forming up and you start going inside, it gets a lot quieter and it becomes um a quieter environment.
Yeah, Commissioner doesn't change the noise. What you asked about the other thing that we were requested is as we had walked with so many of those neighbors there in La Pan Street and around there, if there could be some just general communication from us, uh, just maybe that's a monthly basis that really outlines almost the schedule, right? And when to expect that, when that is unfortunate, a little noisier on the larger equipment, but just having that uh expectation, if you will. So we've also, we think that's a really important thing to continue to communicate with them and go through that construction process. So we will continue that.
Great, thank you. And then my last question would be, um, with the rise of remote work, is there any sort of amenity planned? Um, I saw there was a clubhouse, but I didn't know if you had co-working or I know like due to, I think you said the attainability factor, the units are a little bit smaller to keep that price point attainable, um, which might make it more difficult to work remotely from your unit or whatever. Um, so I was just wondering if kind of Embry has already dealt with that, with that being a trend already and kind of the future possibly of the office.
Yeah, no, we we have definitely. And I think we're probably all in some type of work environment where you're taking your work home, whether it's a hundred percent remote or, you know, you're going in full time, you tend to take your work home. So we do address that in the club space. Because of the number of units, it's it's a, it's an extensive amenity space. Um, we even have areas that are um, that are like small offices or micro offices within the amenity space that you can use and or at least depending on the um, you know, the amount of folks that want to use it, the demand for that space. Uh, but yes, uh, it's it's large. There's areas that folks can have conferences in, have a small uh conference room with the TV. You can hold a meeting like this there. Um, and then there's uh some other areas that are more outdoor related. This is the ones I mentioned, those were indoor. We do have outdoor spaces. It's Colorado, it's great weather most of the year. Uh, and so we have areas for folks to be able to kind of be out by the pool or the other courtyard I mentioned on the north side of the property that has, you know, some access to covered areas or um areas that have some heaters and stuff above it. So when it gets cool out, you can still work. Um, so yes, we do, we do see it as a trend um and one that we're, we've we've addressed on um all of our projects going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carl?
Uh, it's been talked about uh on the uh the solar access to the street on the on Navajo. When the apartment buildings, because there's, it's basically a gonna be a canyon going through there. Uh, on the other side, though, you you have a certain parts of the the year, the uh the shadow will basically cover all the houses on the east side and then even in the shadow going into the street. So those the those street, those houses over there will be um totally avoid of any solar heat. That's certain, that's just certain times of the year, but uh that's that's basically a big thing. If they have solar power, uh, they're they're getting um, they're not getting what they paid for on the solar power. But I don't know that there's anything you can do about that except for chop a floor off of the building and you're not gonna do that, so. It's it's just an issue that uh uh, we need to address an angle where as far as our our codes go. But um.
Yeah, and Commissioner, this probably doesn't change what you just said. I want to be clear about that. We do have that fifty foot buffer, as you know. And we've restricted our heights down below many multifamily buildings that are well-known in Inglewood. So we thought the height was more appropriate here to tuck that lower. As you know, and you don't see many industrial buildings, there's not a a height cap on it today in that. But we wanted to be cognizant of that and go lower. And then, as you know, sir, as it transitions to that third, the townhomes, I believe, Bonnie, it's thirty five or thirty eight feet. So we really are trying to be very cognizant of that shadowing right to the east. Um, you are right, sir, to the right or to, excuse me, to the west of us. The existing apartments or that are either built or being constructed are actually much taller than what we're building. Again, we're transitioning and stepping down, I think effectively. What we thought was so important, and again, I'm sorry, I'm not, I know we have to look at shadow studies, but that fifty foot buffer, we thought was actually really important. And then there are very significant um uh uh tree canopy in the backyards of most of those homes. Doesn't change sha- shading, right? But there is already significant canopy there in their backyard. So we were really trying to be thoughtful of that. But again, we'll certainly continue to take that into mind.
Thank you.
Colin?
I have a a couple more items, and I think Carl touched on one of them, maybe inadvertently, the sustainability efforts that you have. You're saying you were going for silver um on the, I'm not sure which scale you were using, but was there solar um considered for these units? What other kind of sustainability efforts? Um, who are you guys looking after? And then I have one more question after that.
Sure, from the, on the construction side, um, we did not look at solar, and we've looked at it in the past. It's just never been uh economically feasible for the projects, the way the the current system is set up. However, um, we do pay attention to the constructibility of the units. It was kind of mentioned in that list, but you know, when it comes to plumbing, there's low flow um uh fixtures. We've got um a hundred percent LED lights. So we we do a lot of things to try and um reduce the amount of energy that the building uses. Um, and 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 we try and set that mark with using NGBS silver to set that standard for us. And then we we design her to that standard.
So that's all the, on the construction efforts, you know, reusable um or recycled materials or things like that. More on that construction side, not necessarily on the lifecycle side.
That's right. I mean, on the lifecycle side, I guess would just be the energy efficiency that we use for like, you know, um, lights and stuff like that. But yeah, there's no solar or like wind turbines or anything like that on on the property.
And then the original question I was gonna ask was, are those park open space, are those accessible or will there be fences around these uh facilities? Or are those open to a neighbor that wanted to walk their dog over there?
David Lane, can you answer that one for us?
Yeah, the, you know, the dog runs will be fenced in, but that you just the common areas will not be fenced in. Jimmy, I would assume that it's would be viewed as private property for the most part, though. Um, so intended for resident, resident use, but not necessarily for neighborhood use.
Yeah, it it's an open property. There's no fencing, but historically, it's been, it's been really looked at as a private property.
Thank you.
Judy?
Um, is there gonna be onsite property management?
Absolutely.
Yeah, there is. Yep, and we self-manage, so we do our own property manager. I didn't mention that. So we also self-perform on the construction side. Have done so for forty nine years. So we have our own general contracting company. Um, we've got, you know, three and a half billion dollars under construction across the coun- country. So we've got a a really large construction operation. Uh, we manage oh about twelve thousand, almost thirteen thousand apartments in the markets that we operate in. So we've got a uh sizable presence, especially here in Denver, uh with uh with staff and folks that support the projects that we manage. And so uh we do uh, we do manage our own properties and we'll have professional staff on board.
And then one more question about that, and it's your intention that this is not build, develop and then lease up and sell, right? It's a long-term commitment on your guys' part?
That's correct. Yeah, um, some projects are, some projects aren't, uh, just the way that this one is structured. It'll be a long-term um, project for us. And that's really driven by the opportunity zone that it lays within. I mean, you'll see most folks that are in this area will probably be doing the same thing, just the way the capital structure works.
Chair, I don't see any other commissioners with questions, and we do have quite a bit of public, if you're ready to move to public testimony.
Yeah, and Nancy, we've never had quite this many people um in a, you know, public hearing. I do have one, one of the cheat sheets you gave me at one point in time that uh the chair calls upon people who want to speak in favor and then people who are against it. Is that appropriate or should we just mix it all up or I need some guidance from you?
I think unless the city attorney uh thinks otherwise, I think we can just go down the the list and um and call on people as I see them.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine. It's fine, it's fine with me. Are any commissioners um opposed to that? Okay, great. Thank you, Nancy. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, so uh I would just ask for everyone's patience. We do have a number of people online. We have one person here in the building in the community room. So if I could have my IT person down in the community room come off mute and come on camera, then we'll get that one gentleman.
And then also, I just want to remind everyone, um, you have um three minutes. Is that correct, Nancy, to speak?
That is correct.
Three minutes to speak. Um, and we'll try and we'll make sure we'll try, since there's so many people, I think we're gonna have to cut you off at three minutes. You're very close to that, so.
Okay, so I see our gentleman in the community room. I'm gonna swear you in. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can.
Okay, do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I know.
Okay, please state your name and address and then I'll start the clock.
Gary Kozak, twelve sixty West Oxford Avenue, right on Oxford and my pants. I'm a longtime native from that. I'm, we actually homesteaded that way.
Uh, go ahead, sir. This is your time.
Okay, I was thinking that you could, I don't know if you can see me.
We can.
Yeah, I'm trying to see it. Oh, I think. I'm gonna try to show you. I don't know if you all can see that. Okay, that's semis waiting to go into Metal Gold Dairy. They're over the road, bringing supplies in. Metal Gold Dairy is one of the largest employers in the city of Inglewood, and they've been there for a long time. And there's a real traffic problem there. Originally, I was on city council when that opened up and Oxford was gonna be the only street. The connection for everything was supposed to take the east portion of Sam's Automotive and put a street there. But because of queuing problems and the problems with the main gate going into the Metal Gold Dairy, they have three parking structures over there. But the one is the main gate that brings in all the eighteen-wheelers. And we had one the other day make a turn on a car drive right underneath it. Okay, so we have a problem there where they're talking right in and right out only. Uh, those trucks backed up all the way to that area. We've had several times where cars have tried to go around and we've got the little islands out there and they've gone into my fence. And they've knocked out the fire hydrant several times. Uh, you talk about a traffic study, okay? They're going off of an old study back when I originally had this developed. And we've had two apartment houses built there now, and a third apartment house is being built. As we speak right now, with an additional three hundred and some people, and that has not been considered. Right next to the other two apartment houses, houses down there on Windermere. All their talk was how they've notified everybody. I got one notification and that was it, okay? But here again, I know the way lay of the land down there. Metal Gold Dairy was never notified, and a whole lot of the people in those apartment houses down there were not notified. And they directly have an influence. Several of them are waiting for their lease to get up and move out because of the traffic problem. That they're such a high risk, that Navajo Oxford intersection has wrecks all the time. I have ten blind people that come down La Pan Street on a daily use to go down there and cross that street to get to the light rail. Great, you're gonna have a flyover bridge, but is that flyover bridge gonna have access for handicap people to be able to get up to that? Because you have to elevate it from the street level. And then you talk about the snow removal. Do they have, have they considered where they're gonna put the snow when we have a deep snow? I plow snow for a living as well. Now, the traffic's.
Sir, excuse me, sir, your time is up. Thank you so much for addressing the commission.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So now we're gonna go to our uh Mike C. If you will unmute. And then I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do. I will.
Okay, are you ready to go? I'll start your time.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Mike Chavez. I'm the owner and properties, Sam's Automotive, thirteen fourteen West Oxford. My family business, Sam's Automotive, has been in the Denver metro area for seventy six years. This property here that we've been at, at thirteen fourteen, we've been here for fifty six years. This has been my livelihood and our home. And we appreciate to be able to have had the opportunity to be a valued member of the Inglewood community. Post-COVID, uh, industry changed and I knew the value of this property. Things changed, technicians. We decided to sell. Once we did decide to sell uh through Fuller and Tanner Penello, my realtor, uh, we had the opportunity. I knew the value of this property. Uh, we found Embry. Embry, I can't tell you how wonderful it's been to work with this company. Um, the unique ability of of Embry is that these people, not only were they gonna go ahead and build, they're gonna stick around. They're gonna be here in Inglewood, be a good neighbor. Uh, in business, you gotta put up a good property to retain it, to keep your residents. These people will do that. I'm happy that we can be in business with them. I think everyone is aware of the traditional retail values that are changing because of the online retailers. That's why local Inglewood businesses need the residents to support and continue the growth of their business. I would much rather see the development from this body shop that we have now in Inglewood so that we can have an example by improving the already developed areas, not expanding outwards. Uh, it is the job of council and planning commissions to provide recommendations on zoning and development-related issues. I just ask that you please vote to approve this development on the Oxford Navajo project and uphold the intent of the zoning of this site so that Inglewood businesses can continue to grow in a substantial manner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next person up is Andre Vigil. If you will come off mute and um let me know when you're ready to start and I'll start your time. I'm gonna lower your hand. You don't, you don't need to raise your hand. Are you ready?
All right, yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, I need to swear you in, sorry.
Okay.
Let me start your time over. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
Okay, would you please state your name and address?
Yep. Hello, everybody. My name is Andre. I own a business here in Inglewood at two nine five zero S Broadway, Unit one A. Um, and I just want to start my testimony. As a Inglewood business, I'm hoping we can continue to continue to grow uh smartly uh in twenty uh twenty twenty-three moving forward. Uh, Inglewood, like uh all Denver metro, we continue to have a housing crisis and a workforce crisis, honestly. Uh, so by adding more housing for rental, it allows for more middle, middle, missing middle housing for people who want to live in the community where they work with great access to transit and local businesses. I think everyone is aware that traditional retail stores are changing because of the online retailers. And that's why local Inglewood businesses need their residents to support and continue to grow their businesses. You know, I would, I would rather much see the redevelopment of a car shop than the future loss of a business in Inglewood. And honestly, I think this project is an opportunity for Inglewood to lead by example, by improving our already developed areas. And honestly, I think this project is an opportunity for Inglewood to lead by example by improving our already developed areas. It is the job of the council and the planning commission to provide recommendations for zoning and development-related issues. And as representatives of the city, you're tasked with making very tough decisions in the best interest of the city's future. So I ask you tonight to please approve this redevelopment of the Oxford and Navajo project and uphold the intent of the zoning of the site so that Inglewood businesses can continue to grow in a sustainable manner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. My next person I see is Angie H. If you can come off mute. And I'll swear you in. Angie, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name, full name and address?
Angie Harpster, 4345 South Delaware Street.
Okay.
I was just, I'm here just listening and trying to get more of education on how how this is proceeding forward and everything. I guess most of my questions have been answered, so I don't really have anything else to say.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next person I have is Barb. Whoops, there you go. Barb, are you there?
I am.
Okay, so I will swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the, before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Okay, would you please state your name and address?
My name is Barb Chumley. I'm at 4409 South Fanox Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. First of all, I'd like to say that I know that there's a lot of residents that are having a lot of difficult time with this new build. First, I want to start with the park just adjacent to their Jason Park. There is a lot of usage of that park already. It is overrun. It is shut down because of the overuse. Um, and the dogs that are there, a lot of them come from the apartment complex that is already built. And the next one that's being built, they will go there too because of the fact that they DNA test all of their animals. And in order to not get a fine, they take their dogs over to the park. That is the reason why they're going to have closed residential parks at their building because they will DNA test their dogs and they will be able to ticket people who do not clean up after them. I, it's bad business to send all those people over to the park. It's overrun as it is. Um, as far as your traffic studies concerned, um, I would like to know if those were done prior to the new build and the amount of people that are going to be in that new build already. Not the, not this one, but the one that is already being built. The traffic over there is horrendous. That is how I travel to and from work every day and I see it firsthand. My mother and father were in a terrible accident at this intersection of Oxford and Navajo from somebody who just couldn't get over in time. And they're still dealing with medical difficulty six months later. This is a huge impact to the community to have this built. I would think that you would consider doing a residential block and actually putting in homes that people could take ownership in and buy and become residents of Inglewood rather than just renters of Inglewood. I think that there is a huge difference between the two of them. Every resident that I've spoken with, I would say it's 10 to one of people who approach this project. Yes, the businesses are all for it because that actually brings revenue to them is what they're hoping for. But I don't think that that's a fair shake. And Mike, I understand that you want to sell your property. You want to make as much out of it as you possibly can. But that's not what the Inglewood residents want. You know, we want something that is going to build our community and not drop people in for six months at a time. That's all I have for you guys. I hope that you understand where my point of view and all of my neighbors' point of view is at.
Thank you, Barb. The next, go ahead, sorry. The next person I see on my list is Bill. So Bill, if you want to unmute. Bill, are you there? Yeah, I see you. There you go.
Sorry about that. Not very technologically.
Yeah, okay. I just need to swear you in real quick. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
And would you please state your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Bill Rogers and along with Bob Meeson, we're both affiliated with Chamanos Pizza, 2950 South Broadway. You know, I've looked at the success of businesses on South Broadway, so it goes to success of Inglewood. Inglewood, it's not, it's not Denver. It's, it's so much better than that. It's a community within itself. And, you know, we can't maintain just status quo. We have to evolve and grow and engage and, and make this the the cool, vibrant community that it is. So I just hope that you can consider this and as a person, you know, first 10 years of my life, my family lived in apartments. So I think certainly you can have pride of ownership, living in apartments and a family there as well. But I just hope you can support this and thank you for your time.
And I'm sorry, Bill, thank you for that. Could you tell me your last name?
Rogers, R O G.
You did say that. Thank you so much for repeating it.
Yeah.
Okay, the next person I have on my list is Cecilia. Cecilia, there you go. Are you in the, okay, let me swear. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address?
Cecilia Yuliberry, 41 South La Panne, Inglewood, Colorado.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just basically say that I strongly oppose the building of the units behind my property. It's going to lower my property, my property value. It's going to cause a lot of noise, traffic, more people, more crime, more water usage. And if there's buildings and more people, I have children in the backyard. I'm concerned about the parking overflow, which doesn't seem feasible to me. And I was in the process of looking into solar, which I hear that there are shadowing. So I'm really concerned about this. Again, I truly oppose this. I'm a resident and I do not agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. The next person is Cheryl. I'm not going to get your last name right. I apologize. If you want to unmute. Cheryl, do you want to speak to the commission? Okay, Cindy Granger is the next person.
Hi, this is Cindy Granger and I'm losing my voice. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I need to swear you in first, Cindy. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, I swear.
Okay, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Cindy Granger, 1070 West Radcliffe Avenue. I oppose this because there is already so much traffic and so much parking already in my neighborhood. There's so much noise. There's so many more cars coming through my neighborhood. I live on one of the cul-de-sacs or there's only two cul-de-sacs here in Inglewood and I think it's right here by Jason Park and Richolo. I moved here so I could have quiet. And with the apartment building that is open now, we're going to have, I think, four times as much people. There's already parking all up and down Navajo and Quincy. And the way that they're going to have people go out of the apartment complex on Quincy going right. I'm wondering, do they have any way to stop them from going left? Because of course they're going to do that. And that intersection is horrible. I tried to never go that way, but sometimes you have to. And there are a lot of dogs from those apartments and maybe Inglewood needs to start doing DNA testing. But I do oppose it because I would think maybe two-story townhomes on the southern end and three-story apartments might be acceptable, but it's too dense and there is no plan for parking cars or traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Next on my list is Dana. If you want to unmute Dana. Okay, the next person is Daniel Reed.
Hi, can you hear me, Nancy?
I can. Let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you, sorry, do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much, Daniel Reed, 4200 Sappan Pan. We started a conversation a couple of minutes ago. Somebody said we've never had so many people here. Clearly, that means there's something different about this development from the other PUDs that have gone up in the past few years. I've gone to every other meeting. I've seen how those meetings have gone. There's something different about this. And I kind of want to take a pause really quick, not to talk about the impacts. Although there was a lot of conversation about the lack of photometric study, the faulty traffic study. We know that it's not up to date with current numbers. The impact on the park and the zero benefit back to neighbors, there's no businesses going in, there's no amenities coming in. That's actually not what I want to talk about because that's what neighbors are going to talk about. What I've been talking to commissioners about in come to is about the way that, and, and disengaged neighbors. We have had so many opportunities to bring our concerns forward and I kind of want to read the sum total of the analysis provided by Eric Sampson. Don't worry, everyone, it won't take my whole time. Here's the sum total analysis of neighbor feedback. The current proposal with minor edits was presented and staff noted some critical feedback as well as support for the project. I think we all know that that is a lazy and condescending analysis by staff. And it did not go unnoticed by the hundreds of neighbors that I've been speaking to over the past months. You saw on your packet today that we were able to gather roughly 50 signatures digitally and 50 signatures physically. We went around and talked to people. Barb mentioned earlier, it's about a 10 to one ratio of people who support and, and don't support the project. And I've never asked anybody to support or not support a project that isn't in their own best interest. And certainly there's a diversity of interests. But when I'm talking to individuals from across many, many different demographics, whether that's older individuals who've been here for 70-plus years, yes. Whether that's younger individuals who've just moved in, whether it's younger families, whether it's Latino individuals, white individuals, almost everyone comes to the same conclusion of why this development. And we haven't had a solid response from staff and we haven't had a solid response from the developer. We've asked time and time again, what is the benefit for neighbors? We have yet to hear in multiple meetings and multiple conversations how this benefits us. The walkability of the community is not likely to change. The density is likely to change, however, our livability and our quality of life. I really appreciate everyone's time and consideration. It's an important decision. You're the arbiters of community well-being and community development. I really just encourage you to think carefully about the evidence provided to you and whether you have the confidence to make a decision. Right now, I don't see how anybody can make a decision to recommend this to move forward. That's why I'm asking you to vote no at this time. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Daniel. David Frisbee.
Hello.
Give me one second, David. Okay, I'll swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
David Frisbee, 1050 West Stanford Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, everybody. And this has been an informative session, to be sure. And everything that I thought I wanted to talk about has changed after I listened to the developer and their beautiful presentation. And, you know, just to piggyback a little bit off what Daniel said, you know, this just doesn't make sense for the community and, and I really haven't heard how it does. I've heard different points that were made about how they were going to widen the streets and provide sidewalks and things like that. But to your credit, as the committee, I've heard quite a bit of pushback from all of you. Things that, that quite frankly, I hadn't heard and, and many of my neighbors who have discussed this haven't heard, such as traffic coming eastbound on Oxford on, or eastbound Oxford off of Santa Fe. The one thing that's really struck me about all this and, and the positive or the affirmative comments for this project that, that really just don't sit well with me is that, excuse me. The, the, the positive comments seem to come from people who don't, who aren't affected by this. There, there are people that are on Yale and Broadway. There are people on Nextdoor that live in Fort Logan. There are people in Littleton that talk about the housing crisis that we have here. They're talking about, you know, the transit-oriented developments that we need to have along the, the line. They're talking about how we need more density. And, and I'm sitting there thinking every time I hear these things, well, you're not in this neighborhood. You're not being affected by it. You're not being affected by the traffic. You're not being affected by the sunlight or lack thereof. You're not being affected by the walkability or lack thereof. And I think these are all really good questions that, again, people on this committee are brought up. And when they're brought up, you know, you get a lot of blank stares and, well, John, do you want to take this? Dave, do you want to take this? And there doesn't seem to be a real clear answer to it. And it seems to be that it's a, well, we'll just build it and then we'll do a C dot study later to figure out how we're going to, you know, have Santa Fe communicate with Oxford and the lights and things like that. And we'll deal with that later, right? Well, that doesn't work. I don't think that that's a legitimate path forward. And so I would just, in, in, in the interest of time.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. The next person I have is David Hardison. Okay, Mr. Hardison, are you there?
I am, but my husband, George Blacker, is actually going to be doing the speaking. He's my IT department. I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. I just need to swear you in and I need to change your name. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
And could you please state your name and address?
George William Blacker, 4255 South La Pan Street. I live directly in front of or behind, depending how you look at it, from where this construction is going to go on.
Okay, go ahead.
I have serious concerns as most people have expressed about traffic, obviously. And as better articulated by Daniel Reed and Mr. Frisbee, yeah, I never thought about that. What exactly is the benefit to our community by this development? Personally, I don't see any because you're not bringing any retail, nothing. I also have concerns about the sound barricade between my property and this proposed construction. Right now, they're, they want to build a seven-foot fence with brick columns and a cedar fence. That is not a noise barrier. I would like to see that if they do proceed with this construction, that we have something more of a permanent solid sound barrier between my property and theirs. And when they start their construction, if that can be the first thing to go up to prevent some of the noise from their construction from really causing life to be miserable. After that, the water pressure, I have been noticing with the construction, we have, I've lost water pressure. the water pressure, I have been noticing with the construction, we have, I've lost water pressure. So I don't know what the cities, how they address it, but with all the construction, it only seems like it's going to get worse. I think I got my three things on my list. I appreciate your time, although in my speaking with my also my fellow neighbors, I will definitely support when Mr. Reed has said about what he what he has heard. Thank you for your time and I hope you consider this before approving. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
John Corbett. Mr. Corbett, did you want to speak?
Uh, working on Jenny.
Going out.
I'm sorry?
I said I was trying to get unmuted.
Okay, good. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
State your name and address.
Donald Corbett. I live at four four zero nine South Banock Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, my biggest concern is, uh, I'm friends with a lot of the neighbors that live down in that part in that area. The traffic, the traffic study, I think, is bogus. I know, I know, I saw recently they were doing more traffic, more traffic study work on Quincy. I'm through that. I'm through that intersection all the time down there at Navajo and Oxford and it's terrible. And you guys want to add more cars into the mix. Also, another another big concern is going to be water supply and sewer in and out or sewer out. And how are you going to explain, how's how's the city going to explain to all of the residents why their water tastes so terrible because you guys aren't working, you guys, I don't think you guys are planning ahead on getting infrastructure built so that we can get another treatment facility or whatever we need to get done, done. That's just pretty much, pretty much my concerns are are the traffic and the water and the yeah, the noise that it's going to bring and that and to the like of that.
All right, thank you very much. The next person I have is Janice Brown. Did you wish to speak?
I put in fucking.
Okay, Janice, did you wish to speak? Okay. Uh, then Jennifer White.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Um, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jennifer White. I'm at ten ninety West Stanford Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
We moved and purchased our home in this area about two years ago. The most interesting thing I heard from a number of our neighbors was that they raised their families here and now their children are raising their own children in the same neighborhood. It quickly became apparent to me that this isn't just Inglewood, that it's a true community. Several months ago, I was one of those that received the notice of this proposal. Yet many of my surrounding neighbors did not, which I still question. I wrote the builder. I begged that they reconsider. It was returned with an email back with a picture from my driveway looking out explaining to me that my views would not be impacted. But it's not just about me, it's about what's right and wrong for this entire community. I was then told change is hard, but I'm a director in IT and change is my life. Change is important and is needed whether we're ready for it or not. But this is radical. Our homes are the largest investment we can make, especially nowadays. I have seen in the community, in the community meetings, the plans to line that entire street with apartments. Why does change and growth mean building high-rise apartments in the middle of a neighborhood surrounded by single-family homes? The further you go down, you will be building an apartment in my front yard. The cover of the fall Inglewood magazine states, "Inglewood, one of America's best small cities to start a small business." Why can't we start small businesses there? I am a part of this community and would love to be a part of its growth, but not in this way. Not by impacting my neighborhood in a radical, unthoughtful way. But I encourage this, I encourage growth and I would love to see something done in that area. I have talked to so many neighbors, whether they live behind Sam's Automotive or all the way down the street, people are truly actually ready for change. But encouraging retail duplexes, townhomes, breweries, anything other than high-rise apartments or other buildings towering over our homes, which will bring hundreds and over time thousands of more people packing that narrow street. We haven't even seen the impact of that street with traffic, sewer and other factors to consider for the apartments that are under construction as we speak. I believe that we are jumping to the conclusion to build these large apartments without being thoughtful for those that live here and how this will impact our community. This isn't Cap Hill or even Hampton or Broadway. This is a narrow industrial street surrounded by single-family ranch-style homes. The density alone on this street with what is being built is overwhelming. I would love to see a traffic study done after the Navajo complex is open to get a real understanding of traffic. A much deeper dive into parking utilities, water and sewer after that. I would also like to take a deeper dive into how the residents were notified of this proposal, as I have found so many in speaking with them that had no idea this was happening and they were not informed. And I would like to encourage more community meetings to hear from the community to get their questions answered. Leaving the last one, I left extremely angry as I sat there for over an hour listening to why this is right and justifying the concerns of residents with many takeaways instead of addressing the concerns that were brought up. And I have yet to see a follow-up meeting scheduled or a communication to address the concerns raised. In closing, I would respectfully ask for all of us to put ourselves in other shoes. I wouldn't want a high-rise in front or back of my yard towering over my home and I certainly wouldn't want that for anyone else. I think if we can work together, we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I see an Anne Fremuth. Did you wish to speak? Okay, we'll go to Jenny Hacker.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can. Let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I sure do. Thank you all.
Thank you. Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Jenny Hocker and I live at forty-one, forty-eight, forty-one, South Lapan Street, Inglewood.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, thank you all for letting me address you tonight. Um, I've learned so much as I've sat on this hearing for these couple of hours here. Um, and it really just helps to bring my belief even stronger. I am I am speaking tonight in great support of the proposed Embry Project at Oxford and Navajo. I moved to Inglewood from Denver and I'm so happy that I did. There are a lot of cool places to eat and drink and the light rail is very convenient for the times I need to get into Denver. But what we're building here is also a really cool, vibrant, young community adjacent to Denver. This isn't a suburban community, but an eclectic, an eclectic, vibrant community of young families moving in and people that work close by to the hospitals or any of the other small businesses along South Broadway in the Hampden Corridor. I hope you can see all the good things that are happening in Inglewood and how much all of these businesses want to have new upwardly mobile young professionals to be in the area to spend money in Inglewood. I hope you can please vote to keep Inglewood moving ahead and at build and growing as a community that is active and not stagnant. Please support Inglewood and this proposal with the Embry Oxford and Navajo Project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, the next person is Kathy, is it Hulse, H U L S E Kathy? Did you wish to speak? If you could unmute Kathy if you want to speak. Okay, the next person I have is Larry Olander. There's Larry. Can you hear me, Larry? Larry, can you hear me? Because we can't hear you, sorry. Larry, you might need to work on your mic. Let me come back to you. The next person I have is Martha. If you want, are you there, Martha?
I am.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in the this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Okay, if you could please state your name and address.
Martha Gregel, eleven sixty-six West Radcliffe Avenue.
Okay.
Okay, I am not sure if, uh, you were passed on the pictures that I had sent to the planning and zoning. On August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, um, I was walking my dog and I seen a lot of traffic going on. There was, um, cars trying to find parking at six fifty PM. And on Quincy, westbound and eastbound was full. I hope you did see that because this is only the Oxford apartments that were, um, opened. And these residents were trying to go home. The crew members that were south of that have gone home already uh, for the evening. So when you look at the apartments that are going to be built across from here as well, you are talking maybe over eighteen hundred people. And that's not counting the cars. Everybody's got one to two cars. And I drive through there, uh, to get onto Santa Fe and like Judy said, it is a nightmare, uh, going on to Navajo, onto Oxford. I don't care how many lights you put up there, it is, it's miserable, even with with the medical trucks coming in. So I just see this as it being a bad idea. The apartments on the south side of the Oxford apartments have not been completed. And once those people come in, where are they going to park? Uh, there's just going to be more parking all the way onto Quincy through Navajo. Um, they're going to have to put lights on Ox, I mean, on Quincy and Navajo as well. I think the challenge is going to be the lights. Um, you're going to have so many people in this two-block area, which is going to be very overpopulated. And I would just ask that you could take this into consideration of this little neighborhood and keep it the way it is or like they say, just, you know, build permanent homes. Um, as far as they were talking about is building a bridge to get to the light rail. What about the people who are on wheelchairs? How are they going to get up there if it's icy, if it's cold? That's something else to think about. To me, that just sounds like a bribe, um, to you guys to have this built and we'll give you four thousand eight hundred dollars to get this built. And I just don't see, I just don't see it. It's just way too much. And I've lived here more than thirty years. And I have seen the difference of just the Oxford apartments of people walking down my street, which I don't even know who they are anymore. Um, so I mean, they're nice people and you know, sure, those guys put some, you know, really pretty apartments up and everything, but they're not looking at the that that the traffic or the population that will be in a two-block area. So I I really opposed to this and I hope you all will consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Larry, see if we can get his mic working. There you go.
Hello.
There you are. We gotcha. Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address for the record?
Larry Olander, thirteen fourteen West Oxford Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm a co-owner and vice president of Sam's Automotive. You heard my brother-in-law earlier. To let you know this, we are residents and we are neighbors in this neighborhood. We've lived at that location ourselves for forty-three years. We base everything that we do on our neighbors. That's the way our business was run for seventy-six years in Inglewood. We were approached many times over the last ten fifteen years by companies who wanted to come in there. And we said no, because they weren't right for our neighbors. Because that's who we do care about. Our neighbors are our business. After the COVID, our business dropped off, our employees, uh, some retired, some moved away. And Mike and I decided maybe it was the time. And that's when we came across Emery. They fulfilled everything that we were looking for for our neighborhood. It had to be correct for everybody. It had to be nice. It had to be presentable. It had to work for the neighborhood. Because that's what we did and we we were standing in what our father, Sam, wanted done with that place after everything was said and done. And he wanted a place that would be nice for the neighborhood and would reflect our hard years of work there. And we feel that Embry has fulfilled that, not only in building the site, but also listening and talking to the neighbors and doing the things that they wanted done. They've more than changed their original plan. And that was all strictly for the neighbors, nobody else. We've been on the Inglewood Lions, the Sertoma Club, Chamber of Commerce. We've backed our schools, we're we're sports sponsors for Inglewood High. We've done all of that over the years because of the love for that city. And because we don't want to see that city die, that we need to bring in more residents. And this is one way of doing that and still making Inglewood beautiful. I strongly encourage the uh, planning commission to vote yes on this for our community because I believe it's the right thing to do for the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next we have Sarah L.
Good evening.
Hi, if I can swear you in real quick, do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I just want to thank everybody here.
Sarah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you hear me?
Uh, you're cutting in and out. Did you hear the oath that I administered?
I did.
Okay, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Um, my name is Sarah Lovey Wood. My address is one two two one West Radcliffe Avenue.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I want to start with you this evening. It has been a long evening and I know there have been lots of things throughout the year, but I see a lot of you still paying attention to the notes. Uh, great questions asked earlier, so thank you for that. Uh, moving forward, I just wanted to, uh, state a couple of points. Um, Embry stated that they will manage the property for twenty years in previous meetings. And looking at some of their past developments in Denver, um, the Lux at Mile, excuse me, Lux at Mile High in twenty twenty, they sold before even a certificate, certificate of occupancy was ever issued. The gateway picture that they showed in their initial presentation was both in twenty eighteen and sold in twenty twenty-one. So if they are planning on being here for twenty years, their past may show something different. Um, they mentioned the area of transition from a larger complex like Oxford Station. I feel like nobody can hear me. Everybody's leaning in. Uh, to something smaller like residential neighborhood. Uh, what they're offering is not a transition. Uh, if you want to see a transition, driving down Mississippi near Washington Park between Broadway and Logan, the transition of something large to something small for something residential. This does not support true green initiative. If they did, they would do, uh, green rooftop building or green rooftop options for members there to support green initiative. If this does move forward, I would ask that Embry, um, support, thank the attorney to represent the neighborhood in Inglewood to create an agreement and a construction agreement to protect the people of this neighborhood. To create an agreement and a construction agreement to protect the people of this neighborhood. In closing, I ask you to put on-term residents in this area and Inglewood community over people over profit. Ask yourselves, not how, but can do this project. Answer is not Inglewood. I appreciate your time and answer, you'd have no, or at least hold off voting on this until someone's part of the presentation this evening. Embry's resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Scott Johnson.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you swear affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Scott Johnson, and I am the general manager at Medical Dairies at 1325 West Oxford.
Okay, go ahead.
First, I thank everybody for their time. You know, we've been at our current site since 1960. For 62 years, we've been a community partner with Inglewood family. We currently employ about 265 folks at that site. We have 350 in Colorado. We produce about 50 million gallons of milk. And we service all of Colorado and some surrounding states. It is obviously, and you've, you've heard it a few times tonight. We are a major component to the traffic and some of the congestion that some of the other folks have mentioned. So that's obviously a concern of ours. I would say that the, the presentation that was put together tonight was, it's a beautiful property. I appreciate all of the questions and the concerns around the congestion. That's obviously where our concerns would be. And I would ask that, you know, as you continue to review this, that you make that a priority. As you move forward. You know, one thing that's been mentioned a lot tonight is, in through the presentation, I don't remember the number exactly, but it was about 1,400 points of contact. I will tell you that we have not had any dialogue with anyone in regards to this project. And that is a little alarming is, is us being a neighbor. That we have not been presented or been involved in any of the discussions up to basically recently, we had someone walk a notice over to our property, our fleet shop. So really, that was the, the point of contact for us. So I would just ask that you consider that. And it does feel like there needs to be some more work around the, the congestion and the planning piece. And I, like I said, I thank everybody for your time. I know the commission has a lot on their hands, right? It's a big decision. And we, we want the best for the community like everybody else does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Tammy Fisher. Tammy, if you want to unmute. Okay, the next person I have is Tanner Fennello. You'll need to unmute if you wish to speak. Okay. And then the next person I have is Will. Will, did you wish to speak? Okay, that is everyone, if I have missed anyone that has not spoken already, you can go ahead and raise your hand. I'm assuming if you didn't come off meet, you didn't wish to speak and you were just listening. Okay, Chair, I think we've gotten through all our public comments for this public hearing.
Okay, excuse me. So I think I need a motion to close the public hearing. Is that correct?
Vicky, I would probably need your help here. If you have any more questions for staff or
Oh, sure.
applicant, I think that has to be on the public record, but I'm gonna defer to our city attorney.
You know what, let's, well, let's do that anyway. Just to make sure it's completely transparent.
And that is correct.
Okay, good. Once you're done with your questions, then we can do the motion, so.
Okay, raise your hand if you want to be called upon for more questions.
Kate Townley. I have a question for staff regarding thoughts around parking minimums, especially in close proximity to transit. And any insight into kind of studies that have been done over at City Center and the parking minimums that were included in there and what that. At least the studies I have read that the, having a parking minimum that high at that site was detrimental to the site. It was not some, having the excess was not a, a positive thing. And I just didn't know if that was something that you'd be able to speak to in terms of interpretations of those studies and parking ratios in close proximity.
I don't have any information on City Center. We do have some parking ratios that we're discussing through the Code Next project. But since they're not codified, we have to stick to what we have as far as our minimums. In relationship even to transit or anywhere else throughout the city.
Colin.
I wanted to follow up on the discussions of the traffic study and what was taken into account is, you know, we all know that Nate, 800, 900 pages of that 1,200 page document was the traffic study and will not tend to go through all of that. Also, can it be clarified? What was accounted for as an existing condition was the Oxford Vista also included in addition to the Oxford Station? And what other future build out at the 2045 as we're talking about an area that's supposed to have how many more units per our development plans? Was that all part of that consideration for the overall traffic study?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer that first. Is that okay, Commissioner? Is that to the applicant?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah, sure. So I'll answer that and then we'll turn to Mike Kibbie. I just want to be sure because there were a number of comments. This was not in any way or form a faulty traffic study. Traffic studies, as probably everybody understands, we actually provide what we're proposing for a project and the city scopes the study, study. They tell us what to study, the intersections and the scope of that. So we worked very collaboratively with city staff to do that and complete it. When we talked about the, the COVID factor or the adjustment, many cities go through very detailed analysis of does there need to be a COVID adjustment, right? And they have built that in. So every city now deals with the COVID adjustment depending on when the time was. This one was determined that actually the numbers matched historic counts. So it only needed to be a 1% adjustment. So it's not faulty, right? So I just want to give that methodology of that. So we did go through that. So I just want to be sure, Commissioner, and say that this was absolutely a very thorough traffic study that we went through and looked at all the options.
Thank you for the clarification on the COVID adjustment, and that was answered previously, and I appreciate that and understand where that was coming from. My more bigger concern, bigger isn't the right, my current concern, my current question is related to what was considered the baseline condition. Was the Oxford Vista and the Oxford Station apartments a part of that? Or were those considered future? And then was that 2045 study, what does that account for in the surrounding area?
Great, Mike, if you can address that, the projects that are immediately to the west of this site.
Yeah, this is Mike Kibbie with HKS. Both of those apartment complexes, Oxford Station as well as we're calling it the Navajo Apartments, so one that's under construction right now. Both of those were taken into account. We got, obviously Oxford Station is constructed, so we did driveway counts that. Counted them on all of our study area intersections. As far as the new construction of the Navajo Apartments goes, the city provided us their traffic study so that we would know how much vehicular traffic they're generating during the AM, PM and daily time periods. And we included that in our base traffic condition as well. So they're all included.
Thank you for clarification that that wasn't included in, in your studies or baseline condition. Could you just touch on then real quick what that 2045 build out looked like? I have a feeling, again, that's gonna be related to information that's provided to you, but if you could clarify that note also.
Yes, fire to send your, your question. All of, all of, all of our traffic data that we have input in there. It is from the Navajo Apartments, which is being built, that can run out of their study. And in all of our base traffic conditions, we took our, the existing traffic conditions and then looked at what the Dr. Cog average annual growth rate forecasts are and applied those to those that existing traffic. So we can get our 2025 and 2045 long-term base conditions from those.
And so I guess where that relates to is any other development would need to account for any additional traffic associated with that at that point in time. So your study looks at what the existing condition is, what your site is the, what impact your site has, and then based on the growth rates that are nationally accepted and obviously locally accepted procedures is how you develop those future 2045. You don't actually have to consider other development that's going to happen in the area because that's, hasn't happened yet.
That's correct. We consider everything that we know is going to happen, like the Navajo Apartments. But, but other things like a redevelopment of a, of a, another commercial or residential renewal. We, that's how we, we use our Dr. Cog forecasts for traffic growth to forecast those.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I don't see any other hands. Chair Austin?
Okay.
Oh, Carl has a question now.
As far as the traffic studies, they, they do not take into effect the the apartments that are being built down towards Hampton down there. You got a 250 and then, and then there's about 200 other ones in the three other buildings down there. The Oaks Club and the other, other two locations. So you got all, the people that are going south could easily go down Windermere, try to get on Oxford, Santa Fe at Oxford there. That would be adding to the, the problem there on Oxford and Santa Fe. So that's something to be considered there, but I mean, it's in the future, so who knows what's gonna really happen.
The only thing I would add, Commissioner, just to clarify is when we do those traffic studies, we account for current volumes. You said, I believe that's the Five Field Project and the other ones there that you're mentioning. That those are in the future, but we do then do projections on how the background or surrounding traffic will grow. So sir, if that traffic does go westbound in the future, right on Oxford, we are accounting for that background traffic increase. So we are planning on that in all of the air that surrounds that would come by the site. So that's part of scoping those intersections. So you're right, we don't look specifically at that because that's pretty attenuated, right? But those trips that would come down Oxford and head westbound perhaps, right to Santa Fe, we would pick up some of those trips and are planning as such for those.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Brenda?
Yes, I was wondering if anybody knows the speed limit along Navajo Street in front of the proposed PUD? I was thinking it's 30 miles an hour through there. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anything further from the commissioners? Seeing none, now am I asking for a motion to close the public hearing, Nancy?
Again, is this the chair's prerogative, but typically we ask if staff has anything more or if the applicant has anything more. They have a chance to respond to any of the comments they heard, but again.
Let's do that. That's fine. No, no, let's, let's get everything out in the open. That's fine. So anybody on staff had any further questions?
No, I have no further questions.
So did we lose, did we lose some staff?
No, it just, it would be Brian. He would be, he's the main point of contact. If he had anything further.
And this is Brooke. I have no further questions or comments.
I don't have anything from utilities either.
Nothing here from Long Range Planning.
Sounds like everyone's still awake. That's good.
Are you ready for the applicant to provide any additional information before we close, Chair?
Yes, please. Marcus?
Great, I'd be happy to. Thank you, ma'am chair. I, I do want to acknowledge and thank for the public and all the public comments that were provided. I did, madam, just kind of make a list of things, so I'm sure a little bit of it'll be repetitive. But between Bonnie and I, we'll try to get through it. I also want to apologize to commissioners. We're not all in the same place as a team to answer your questions, so our pauses have nothing to do with not being prepared to answer. It's just trying to figure out who's answering. So I'm gonna jump in on a few and then Bonnie will go. I want to just clear up a couple of things on traffic. The right in, right out that's proposed on Oxford is being specifically designed and in coordination with the city to alleviate conflict points. It is actually being designed to exist or address existing traffic issues that have been well documented tonight about how you come in to turn right there on Navajo. So we're really trying to address that. Also, the gentleman from the dairy, there is a median that will be constructed and will not allow us to make left-hand turns. So I want to be very clear about that. On our plan set, there is a median that will not allow us to make left-hand turns. So everybody, that will be a true right in, right out that limits that. We think that's very important. The bridge will be designed by the city and funded by city money and other monies. It is completely ADA accessible. The bridge has to be, we have designed it, we have seen images of it. We are contributing very substantially to a bridge that will be ADA accessible. We consider and have had a team of about 30 consultants working on this project for a year and a half. We have looked at every utility study, every traffic study, every parking study. We did do a photometric study on this site as well. It is in the packet. We did a shadow study. We looked at all the photometric to understand that as well. So this is a very comprehensive plan and team that put before you. I want to be clear that one of the things, there was a lot of questions about our traffic. The traffic again is based on our numbers of trips that will be generated. And then what the city says the fixes are for those respective impacts. We are implementing every one of those impacts. And uniquely on this site, as you all saw from our presentation and the four plans, almost all of these have been called out over the course of nine years. They have said, when you improve this site, because this site will be redeveloped. It's pink that says this will be a rezoning. It says, when that happens, do these things. We are doing all of those things. We've actually gone to the city and said, are there additional off-site things that we need to improve? And we did not get additional off-site improvements to make. We certainly are open to that conversation, but we did not get additional things to improve. I want to be also very clear about the notice. The notice, as you probably all know, is 1,000 feet. I have the records of all of the neighbors that we mail and certify. The gentleman from the dairy and other folks, that's a Kansas City address. We sent it directly to them on four occasions. We also flyered all of these properties. So sometimes that's hard. It's the ownership that's listed. And a lot of times that's provided by the city and we provide those neighbors. So I'd love to sit down and continue to work with that. We actually thought of them very specifically and putting that median in place, so we are not further impacting their flow directly to Santa Fe. I do want to address maybe just a larger, broader concept, and I want to be so respectful of these neighbors. I know they passed a petition this last weekend. We were told by a number of folks that that was being passed in the last number of days. A lot of people talked about what is the benefit to the neighborhood? And so I just, I want to be respectful and say that one of the great challenges of this is people, you know, you don't want to see change, right? It's hard to see that change. But as we are drafted and planned, we've looked at four We've looked at four plans over the course of the last nine years that said this should be developed in this fashion. It actually says it should be more dense than we're proposing. The sites that are to the west of us are higher because they just moved forward. We heard the neighbors and stepped back. Many people call this a high rise. We are doing four story and three story, but it's not a high rise in any way. We are trying to be as mindful as possible to properly transition to those neighbors. So a-again, if there were specific things that we could do to implement better transitions, we would do that. I think as we talk about that, that transition to the third, the southern third of our site, that town home. It does not densify. It doesn't provide as much return, but it's the right thing to do from the neighborhood. It's absolutely the right transition point. I also want to say that we have incorporated, we know the water study, we are upsizing the water here. We have water drainage. We are improving the water drainage that's on the site. We will be improving all utility connections and conditions in the existing neighborhood. Every one of them. The city does a great job of requiring that, and we are complying with all of that as well. So I do want to be sure and say, the last thing that I just want to talk globally perhaps about the benefits of the neighborhood. Folks, this plan, these four plans that say this should be TOD, those are benefits of an entire city and a neighborhood. Our transit has to work, so we can change traffic flow, so we can change spillover. We need the TOD to work. We need Oxford Station to work. And for it to work, it has to have some density. And so we're implementing all those things that really respect the neighborhood, provide benefit to the neighborhood and the city. And twenty thirteen through twenty twenty one, all of those plans said this is what must be there. The last thing, and it's a hard one, is if we were only single family homes. We could not afford all the infrastructure improvements that we are making for the surrounding neighborhoods. We are making very substantial infrastructure improvements because of that density. It justifies the further investment. So we say that with full respect to really provide for the adjacent neighbors. So again, I just want to say they've been terrific neighbors. They've shaped every edge of our plan. We've tried to implement every suggestion that we've heard that really could be completed. So folks, that's a lot of broad comments, uh, Madam Chair. So I'll just let if it's okay with you, Bonnie, if there's any specific issues that you wanted to address from a planning standpoint.
As for usual, Marcus, I think you captured all the um, all items I was gonna hit just a little bit on the comprehensive plans. Um, like Marcus has talked today, I know we uh, talked to those in our presentation. Um, but just wanted to call out two items from the staff report. It talks about specifically the twenty seventeen Inglewood Forward, that it was adopted to guide private development. Community to invest and build in the city. So all this stuff happened before we were looking at this site for development. But the key thing of this is, um, one of the objectives in the comp plan is to capitalize on opportunities for redevelopment associated. With obsolete sand land uses in proximity to major transportation investments. Um, so just reiterating what Marcus just Marcus has said, the investments that were made in bringing light rail. To this part of town and creating those connections and the long term benefits that that has. That's truly the public benefit that exists with this project. Um, there's so many cities across the metro area. That would do anything to get a light rail stop. They're trying to figure out how they can build density for light rail to come to them at some point. And so Inglewood has this fantastic opportunity to um, capitalize on this major transport transportation. Investment that has made made in the city, and this is the opportunity to do that.
Great. So we would thank you again for listening, all the attention of the neighbors and the comments. Um, I do want to just also say in closing, people have been concerned about, is this a a build and flip? Uh, the reason Jimmy said what he did earlier about this being in an opportunity zone. The financing in an opportunity zone actually requires to hold you to hold it a minimum of ten years to get the financial benefit. So this actually encourages long term owners, and that's why we're saying there will be long term ownership here. So it's a very important thing that's actually because of the financing, so it will be long term home. So again, thank you all very much. We would respectfully request your support for this project.
Okay, Chair Austin.
I I just have one quick question. How how do we get or settle upon? Four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. That's an odd number.
Yeah, I I I believe, and and I'll certainly defer to staff. My understanding is it's actually a pretty good equation about. The number of people that we will generate, Chair, and how many will actually cross there, and they actually do an equation. Of what the cost is of the overall project and how much of that we bear. So if we're saying, I'll make up a number, if that's a three million dollar, we're providing six or a six of that traffic, then we should pay a six for that. So it was a specific request from the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other quick questions? Okay.
Kate?
Yes, thanks for mentioning that opportunity zone piece. So does that, but having that financing require? The developer to do additional amenities or um. Based on the medium income of the neighborhood or add additional things beyond what's in this um, zoning application?
So Commissioner, it's not tied necessarily to that. It's actually tied to the uh, existing demographics of the area. A lot of time, there there are state zones that determine where these opportunity zones are. And it's to drive investment into these areas. So there are tax breaks that are given if you hold it over ten years. So more to what Bonnie said, it's actually, they're trying to get investment and spur investment particularly around TOD opportunities. In areas that really need to see that. So or Commissioner, I don't think it goes to necessarily offsite improvements or any of that. It's more about bringing those investments in in the first place.
Colin?
Think Kate kind of alluded to this earlier, and it was kind of brought up with the stepping down of the density. There's almost a part of me that has a concern of whether there's not enough density in this particular place, as we know um, in city center. Um, the Alexan, you know, was the only real development there. It's a three story building. It has some challenges. With keeping enough people and enough activity. I know there's kind of across the street. Um, you know, with the Oxford, um, maybe that helps with this. Uh, I want to make sure that we're putting in. The right amount of density here and um, you know, I think. As you, as you mentioned, if you were stepping like, the lowest you're gonna go is that three to four story on that side. And so would you step up higher than on Navajo Street? That would be an option which would provide more stepping, but then obviously has some more impact there. So. Obviously, you've looked at your numbers, you've you've figured out what does work, uh, obviously with the opportunity zone financing, that is a federal. Uh, federal funding mechanism, so that's not something you would be able to really get out of. So you'd have to hold it for those ten years. So I think you've made. Those thought processes. Um, I just wanna, you know, just reiterate, I do think this is probably the right density then, if that's that's the number. And if anything, I would say it almost would need to go higher in some ways. Um, you know, I know that's. Should make some other challenges um, with traffic and and things like that, uh, that aren't using the light rail. But I do uh, do agree, we have this fantastic amenity. Um, that we're lucky to have and and really should utilize to the greatest extent possible. So I just appreciate the information provided.
Great.
Uh, I just want to remind commissioners that um, when we vote, you are allowed time to state the reasoning for your vote. So um. So I think I'm now looking for a motion to. Close the public hearing.
Right, Nancy?
We are correct. Do I hear such a motion?
I will move to close the hearing.
Thank you.
Second up.
Thank you, Noel. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, will you call the roll, please?
I will. Kate Townley?
Yes.
Colin Hagerty?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Kate Fuller? Uh, Noah Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin?
Yes.
Okay, next would be a motion, so then you can start discussing. A motion for the case.
Right. Do I hear such a motion? We're essentially moving the motion to the table, correct Nancy?
Yeah, I need somebody to make the motion to recommend or not recommend.
I will make the motion to approve um. P U D case number Z O N twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one. Uh, planning development at thirteen fourteen West Oxford Avenue um, with the conditions laid forth by city staff.
And if I could just clarify, uh. Colin, it's a motion to recommend approval to city council. I just want the public to be clear. The planning commission is not a decision making body on this. It will be city council. Are are you okay with that tweak?
Yes, recommend uh, approval to city council or recommendation of approval.
Thank you. I just want the public to be aware that this isn't the final resting spot. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Nancy, will you call the roll, please?
So this will be where you make your findings, just so you're, so uh, everyone's clear. So Kate Townley, how do you vote?
Um, can we have any discussion before findings, or do we have to go straight into our our vote?
Uh, you, uh, Chair. I think Chair asked for discussion and then moved on pretty quickly, so.
Go ahead, Kate.
And I guess I just asked that because I I I have my thoughts right now. Um, but I'd love to hear the the thoughts of other commissioners now that we um, are outside of the public hearing. Um. I think that um, the applicant did a really nice presentation. I also want to say that it was um, great to hear from all the community members. And there's obviously a lot of energized community members i- in that area. Um, my my thoughts on this uh. Would be that, you know, I think there's definitely that most of the elements for a P U D I I see um, fitting our our requirements. The things that I have some concerns about would be um, whether it substantially meets a lot of our goals, um, forward thinking goals. As well as like, does it exceed some of the um. How do we, we have it like our our criteria um, for for development? Um, and my thought, this is, this is a, is a catalytic site. Mike, is it Mike and Larry had a very, a prime location that is a big deal for the city of Inglewood. My concern is that the, how it's proposed now is that is that the highest and best use for that site for right now? Um, we we made a mistake, in my opinion, when city center was developed with really high parking ratios. We're doing it again. We're saying, and I understand the concerns of traffic in the community, but we're adding more cars, so we're adding more traffic. So we're not gonna solve the traffic and the parking problem by adding more cars to the s- the site than what I think are needed. So there's something, oh, and and then also we, you know, are in the process of looking at at housing. We need more affordable housing in in the community and, you know, we we don't have an ordinance on it right now, but that that's what's needed. And it's not needed at eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. It's needed at fifty to eighty percent AMI. And needed, in my opinion, at transit for for affordable housing. So I I definitely have some concerns. There are different concerns than what the community has. Um, but just some some things to to kick off, because there there may be negotiations or things that we can consider to alleviate some of those.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
Yeah, I I would like to step in a little bit here and um, sorry, that I think all of the things that Kate just said are are good things. And after she says them, I want to say, and so how do you vote? So can we, um, I don't know if we're gonna, are we gonna have a on long term discussion or?
I I guess we can, we can vote, but then we don't have an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves.
That's fine, that's fine. I just want to make sure we know we're doing. That's all. That's all. Judy?
Um, so I have very mixed feelings about this. It's a great um. That property, you know, obviously this would be vis visually a much. Better addition as a gateway to the um. To Inglewood. Um, there's some other challenges though there that will always um. Make it less desirable, because we're never gonna be able to to widen Oxford. Um. It's just not gonna happen. My, I have another concern about, we have been talking about that pedestrian bridge forever. And I don't care, every time we build something, it's gonna be more expensive and we're never gonna build it. Um, and you know, I, there needs to be some commitment from us as a city. That if we're gonna continue to add people to that area, that there be safe access to light rail. And um, I get really tired of it never happening. And that's not the fault of this particular um, development. However, we're adding people and we're not doing anything about. The pedestrian safety. Um. This does not help in walkability. It's it's difficult simply because. Wha-what would revitalize that area is some sort of retail, some sort that people have access to. Um, whether it's small coffee shops, I think one of the public made reference to something like that. Um, I would like to see that developed. I think that the people. Uh, that Emery and all of the the entire team did a fabulous job. Um, I think that their cooperation with the um, neighbors was. Above and beyond what we've seen in other um. P U Ds. But I also have a real strong uh, feeling, because I travel that. Area so often. Um, and I don't know that there's an answer, because I do, I do understand we're gonna have to put more people there. But I really wish we would get the infrastructure in to make it a safe place to add more people. And work with the neighborhood to pl- do a better job of planning the transition from single family. To dense um, density, because it's not a gradual change. It's from single family to boom. Um, high density. Uh, so uh, it's a very difficult. Overview for me. I I I'm not sure this is the perfect solution to what should be done there. Um, I unfortunately disagree. I understand. You can't force people out of their cars by taking away their parking. They will find a place to park. And if we reduce the parking ratios there, it will spill over into the neighbors, and I don't want to see that happen to um. The neighborhoods, because um, if you see what happens in the areas in Denver. It's just like cutthroat to try and get parking, because it's this illusion that if you take away parking, people won't have cars, and it doesn't work. Um, and it's certainly not gonna work in a place where people don't have anything to walk to. So you can't take away their parking when they can't walk anywhere. Um, they're not gonna hop on light rail to go. Where? To city center and then walk to Main Street Inglewood? It's, it's just not about, in my opinion, is not a valid. Consideration um, for this particular area unless we get places for people to go, restaurants and things like that. Um, so I'm I'm very torn at this point. Um. I would like to see this, something like this there, and I appreciate the townhomes and um. It's it's a tough one. This is probably the toughest one I've had. All the other ones were clear to me.
Colin?
And I. Echo what Kate and Judy are saying. I mean, this is, you know, a tough. Decision, not because I, we don't want to redevelop the site. I think we're all in agreement that this is a catalyst. Catalyst of a site for this area. I think the challenge is Inglewood, when it was developed, had industrial. Single family residential, and there wasn't any allowance for any transitionary areas. And and so we're trying to deal with doing the best that we can in those areas that are gonna be transitioning. I have a concern about not having any sort of commercial space in there, and they noted that it was allowed. And I guess my question that I have, and I'm not sure who I'm even asking the question to, but. If we're allowing, what we're allowing right now is the P U D to move forward. Allowing for this specific development as it is to move forward. Um, does that come, is that even need to come, or once that P U D is done, is that just negotiations with the city? And city staff at that point to figure out what needs to happen? And I don't know if it's a question for city staff or if um. Development team is allowed to to jump in at that.
Uh, we're gonna have to get Vicky to weigh in, because public hearing is closed, and that typically means that questions are done. So I'm gonna have.
Okay, if questions are done, then I'll just philosophically ask.
Vicky, am I incorrect in that?
You are correct in that, Nancy, and this would be.
You are correct in that, Nancy, and this would be a vote to to make the recommendation in council to whether approve or approve with conditions, the PUD application.
Okay, so we could add the.
Right, and to be clear, or to deny or modify, I didn't mean to make it one way or the other.
Yeah, and I guess, to clarify, I had asked the question earlier, and they said that the PUD did still allow for commercial usage, allowing for those coffee shops and things like that, so even as it went forward, it could be something that would be integrated at that point in time. Victoria, I guess I'm asking you that, if they, if the allowance is in there?
If the allowance is in there, that would be correct.
Okay. Okay.
So yeah, I'm just.
We would need to modify my motion to confirm that that allowance for commercial development as part of this PUD is in there.
Yes, and it would be, yes. To clarify that, and as part of the recommendations, whether approve or approve with conditions, deny or modify the PUD.
Okay, I will stop asking questions I'm not supposed to ask. I apologize. Thank you.
That's just fine.
You can ask city attorney questions all day long. Noel?
We have the conversation every time one of these comes up about parking, and I think what, at least as I see it, the determination is that, you know, these developers can't do anything about people parking on the street, so that's something the city does. And so we can, you know, talk about it, but, you know, from my experience, I live two blocks north of Swedish, and for those of you familiar with the area, the block just north of Swedish is all restricted permit parking. I think everywhere in the city can see the new building that Swedish is putting up, and as you can imagine, there are roughly four thousand people working on that who drive every day to park, to go work there. That permit restricted block, no parking problems at all. You know, it's just as full as it was, you know, a year ago, two years ago, three years ago. You know, it, however, my block, which is not permit restricted, does start having the spillover. So to me, it's, you know, just a very kind of obvious, you know, let's use that tool so that all this spillover doesn't just fall right into the single-family residential blocks that are, that are right nearby. But again, I don't, I don't see that's, you know, kind of anything to do with the PUD specifically, but rather falls to staff. And as part of that, I think there's potentially too much parking as well. You know, my, my concerns around parking are that it spills out and that it creates, that it creates traffic, but if, you know, if a building like this is going to put that many parking spaces in, you know, do we know that they're going to be used? Do we know from the other recent developments, you know, how much is being used? I know we know how much spills out into the neighborhoods just from, you know, walking around those, so. Yeah, this close to a light rail station, I'd love to see, you know, half as much parking, or, you know, parking, parking minimums that are, you know, conveniently similar to what we've been talking about at other times in other groups, so. Specifically to this one, I like all the electric vehicle charging is, is one thing that stood out to me. I would also love to see commercial here, but I don't really see that that's. You know, if you look at the different, the different plans, you know, that Inglewood has created, how do we, how do we make that, make that happen? I don't see us convincing on this, on this specific PUD, that it's going to go back to the drawing board, and that commercial is going to get added on the ground floor to it. So yes, permit parking would be great.
Brenda?
Okay, I'm going to say my spiel now, if you don't mind. You know, we've been talking a lot about parking in the Cudnet meetings that we've had. And there's kind of two types of parking. There's parking in front of storefronts, which is going to be one cut I know that they want to change. We have way too much space in front of Big Lots and Hobby Lobby. On the other hand, we do want to lessen all the parking, you know, maybe allocated to the residential sites, but we have to remember that while people can work within ten miles and take the light rail, one of the things a lot of people do in Colorado is they like to go to the mountains. So that's one of the things, is that everybody's going to have a car, and with density like that, there may be two people living in these units and both have a car. So I do have concerns about them parking out on the street. However, unlike the Alta Vista Apartments or the Cherry Hills, they won't be displacing people who live on Lupan Street. That's not likely to happen. One of the things that I don't think a lot of citizens realize is that we get sixty-three percent of our city revenue comes from sales and use taxes. Only eight percent comes from actual property taxes. So building up retail and commercial properties is something we have to do. But we can't, we, nobody wants to build or create a business here unless they have shoppers to begin with. We have a whole underused commercial corridor going right through town where Cinderella City used to be, other than the Walmart. Because those demographics changed years ago, when the suburbs got built out, and people left this town and left it with mostly retirees, so in our shopping base, and that's one of the reasons Cinderella City died. So city leaders a long time ago and staff developed these comprehensive plans to include mass transit, to bring shoppers back. But we need, we need some density. We need people, and we need shoppers to be right here. So I don't know if I'm really in favor of requiring any commercial, maybe a coffee shop, I think is what they allowed, but I don't want to see these, like, commercial islands like they have spread throughout Littleton. You can see them, and some of those are failing. So I'm, I'm probably going, I'm going to vote yes on sending this to city council for approval. I also think that the impact of Jackson Park can be minimized with requiring a city licensing of dogs. And just last night at the city council meeting, council member Jim Woodmore announced that he's going to be taking that again, taking that up again with Parks and Rec as part of the review of the off-leash privileges this January. You know, it would be great, you know, to have a brew pub in there, or, you know, something that we really, really like, but we're limited by what the market is, market wants, you know? We can't just say, oh, just make it a brew pub. This is what city planners set out to do. This is what they wanted to do with the property, and it's all towards increasing sales revenue, which that sales revenue gets us more police, better roads. And, you know, the alternative, if we don't make this an industrial property, I mean, rezone it from industrial to a PUD or to anything, is that they may decide that they just want to put a storage unit there, and they can do that without any street improvement, without any trees, without any new sidewalks or any of those things. They can turn around and do that tomorrow if we decided, well, we don't want to approve this PUD. Sounds kind of like a threat, but it is within their right to do that. To the citizen who spoke about solar panels, they did say that this, there's a thirty-foot setback from the rear of the properties. And funny thing, I was in one of the rear of those properties at a potluck just last Saturday. So I really wanted to make sure. There's lots of room from the end of the property in Lupan. There is then a driveway where you walk, and then another ten feet of grass, and then you have the units. So that, so there should not be, they will have solar access. And finally, the traffic problems are very concerning to me, too. They admit that this is, it's going to get bogged down, but they also said in the traffic study that they plan to mitigate this with using streetlight timing in coordination with CDOT. So I just urge city staff to follow up on that promise. You know, Navajo was not meant to be a shortcut to get out of having to go down Santa Fe, but that's really what most of us do, so we don't have to deal with Santa Fe. Maybe we need to lower the speed limit to twenty-five, so people are cautious through there. And I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thanks, Brenda. Carl?
The traffic timing of the lights there, I keep hearing, hearing that, but I don't really consider there is a problem with the traffic timing, because I'll come from Costco and I'll get a green light to cross Santa Fe. And shortly after I get across Santa Fe, the light turns green on Navajo there, so I, I'm I think the traffic timing on the lights is basically pretty well done as it is. I don't think there's going to be, I don't, like Judy said, there's really nothing you can do. So the, the bridge, the railroad bridge there is, you can't take out the pilings there and add a couple lanes to Oxford. That's nothing you can do there, so I'm I'm not sure what the answer is there, but I, if I vote for yes, I will do it with an amendment that something is done with that intersection, because that is very bad. That's going to be a mess, and somebody's going to get killed there. Because it's, it backs up, and it's, it's just, you can't put any more traffic on there. One of the things about putting retail in that area that you're going to have a lot of people there with no retail, but what they can do, they can get on the light rail and go to Littleton, or they can go down to town to Denver, or they can cross Santa Fe and go to the restaurants and stores over in across Santa Fe there. You got multiple restaurants over there, barber shops, Target, there's, there's a lot of stores over there. Inglewood doesn't get any money from them, but that's where they can go and buy stuff and eat and get coffee and whatnot. On the parking, I I don't know, they, they say they will not sell it within ten years, but that's one of the issues that parking is. Is if you don't have parking in an apartment building, it's not worth anything. You're not going to be able to put it on a market. You're not really going to be able to sell it for what it should be drawing. If there's no parking there, the people, people don't want it. They won't, they won't move there. And that's, hopefully, they will not sell us within ten years, but who knows? It's legally, you can do about anything you want, as long as you have good lawyers and know how to do it. The presentation, I'm really impressed with the presentation that Bonnie and Marcus have done, and they're very, they're very good at what they're doing, and they've done it before, and they know, they know how to do it. It's a good-looking apartment building, and townhomes are very nice, and they're not affordable, which is what Inglewood needs. Inglewood is not going to get affordable housing unless they target the market to do that. I don't know how, I don't know what else is involved in affordable housing, but we're not getting it, and we're not even getting close to it. The density down there is getting pretty high. I, I I can't see why it's not high enough. It's, it's pretty high, as far as I can see. It's, Inglewood's Inglewood's population is pretty much going up, but we're landlocked, so everything that's all population gain is going up. You're, you're going four or five stories high, and five, five stories is basically the limit, because you get above five stories and it costs too much to build. You have structural issues with high rises, so it costs too much, and they're not going to do it. Far as the city center goes, there is, around the city center, there is too much parking. And you go east two, three, three blocks, and you're in the downtown area, and there's not enough parking. So how do you, how do you solve that? You can't move parking around and take it from one place to the other. But you do need parking downtown. There is a lack of parking down there, and we need to get people down there and buy things. You know, it's, the stores are limited, and they're, they're, the parking is one of the factors. Not the only factor, but it's one of the factors why people don't go down there. Again, on this this development, it's, it's a good development. It looks like it's quality, it could be quality built. It looks like it will be. I would like to see more dog runs and dog areas where they can go, because we're going to have problems with, if this goes in, we're going to have problems in Jason Park. Jason Park last summer, or mostly in the winter, it was closed. But it was closed most of, probably a third of the year. That's one of the biggest parks in the city. And you're closing it down because of too much traffic down there, and you're going to add more traffic to it. That doesn't, that doesn't add up. But as far as this development goes, it looks like it's a good one. I do have a problem with the traffic, though. Navajo and Oxford and Santa Fe, that's going to be a real issue, and there's, there's going to be some problems with that. Nothing's done. I don't know what you do, but something needs to be done.
Oh, I'm sorry. Keep going, Carl, I'm sorry. I don't want to cut off any discussion. That was not the intent of my previous comment. But I do want to remind the commissioners that we have another public hearing left tonight to do, so. Excellent. Sure, you have two public hearings left. Okay, we have two public hearings left, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of where we are at almost eleven o'clock. So is there any further discussion amongst the commissioners? Okay, so. No, Kate's got a question or a comment.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out then if anyone's trying to make a friendly amendment to the motion or any changes they want to see or recommendations, or do we want to go forward with the motion that's on the.
And I believe it's Colin's motion, so why don't we start there? Colin, did you want to make? Or are you receptive to some friendly amendments?
I'm open to them. I'm okay keeping it, you know, with the recommendation as it is. Like, as I've kind of gone back and forth, so I'm good unless anyone has some additions that they'd like to see.
Speak now.
I would like to add something about the intersection at Navajo and Oxford there. What can be done? I don't know. But something needs to be done.
Carl, would you be okay with perhaps directing staff to monitor the conditions as these, because there's, you know, there's a, there's one, one of these apartment buildings has been built. One is in process of being built, and then if we, you know, if county council approves this one. So I'm not sure what we can put in today that would accommodate that, so perhaps we could have something about asking staff to monitor it and look at, you know, measures that. asking staff to monitor it and look at, you know, measures that they could undertake, public works could undertake to minimize problems between cars and pedestrians and that sort of thing.
That would be a good idea. Yeah, that would probably work.
Can somebody put that in the form of a
I move
Move to amend to add the condition of
I, I moved to amend to add the condition that the city, city staff review the conditions of the intersection of Oxford and Navajo and determine if additional upgrades are needed in response to this PUD.
I will second that.
Further discussion, any more amendments that we'd like to offer friendly?
May I ask, Judy's the one who seconded it. If we're just doing a friendly amendment, Judy, do you accept that amendment?
That was Brenda.
On the original motion that Colin
Oh, okay, sure.
We're doing friendly amendments rather than voting on amendments going back? Unless Colin wants to do two separate motions? Saying no. So do you accept that friendly amendment, Judy?
Yes, I second the friendly amendment.
Okay. Are we at the point where we're calling for the commissioners' vote on this PUD with their comments?
I don't see any other hands. Are we good? All right. So Kate Townley.
I'm very torn on, on this one and I am gonna vote no and I am very much wanting to see more housing and I do wanna see more, more density in the appropriate areas in Inglewood and I think this is an appropriate area for density. But I think the way it is, it's still auto oriented and across from, from the T, a T O or a transit stop. I think that in many ways, the, you know, the, the application does align with goals and things in our comprehensive plan. But I think there's other plans and policies that we have in place that this doesn't necessarily fit with in terms of really being pedestrian oriented, really trying to create more of a walkable space and, and really taking advantage of, of, of light rail as an amenity. This is, you know, one of the, it's the only developable site right now in that, in that area. And I think in terms of being innovative or exceeding our development standards and things like that, I, again, I think that exceeding a parking requirement in this sense is, is, is not, is not a good thing for this area, in my opinion. And I also think that in terms of innovation or considerations for other things that may need to, that could happen in this area, I just don't see that with, with this application. I, in my opinion, I, I think it's, I think it's close, but I think in terms of, yeah, trying to add amendments or things like that would just really change the too much of what they presented. So yeah, I'm no for tonight.
Thank you. Colin?
I will vote to approve the amendment and send, or approve recommendation of the PUD to council and for the reasons of, I, I think there was an attempt to make the higher density and, and do some of those things that Kate had mentioned, but with consideration of the neighborhood and consideration of what might be the best for this particular site, there was some balance that had to happen and with that came, I think, what some smart moves were made of having a transition of townhouses and then into those higher density. And so I would prefer to have this move forward than have the potential for it to stall out. And I like the idea of having a, what appears to be a very good development come through here, so I will vote for yes.
Thank you. Judy?
So this is a tough one for me. I actually really like the development in and of itself. I think that the developer did a great job of modifying the design to work with the neighbors. But there were, there's two things that I'm going to vote no. My, my reasons are twofold. One is the I want to, I want to respect the neighbors who are, are citizens and have to live with this development. And the other one is, I just think that for right now, unfortunately, that area cannot absorb any more people that are gonna be walking around. We don't have easy access to light rail and I think that's, if, if any blame falls, it falls on us as a city that we haven't done that necessary infrastructure to make access to that, especially that one where there's no parking. We never ever followed up to make ax, walkable access to that light rail station. And I think that that is going to be, it's certainly gonna be a challenge for me as long as I'm on planning and zoning to see that place add more people to it. So unfortunately, I, I'm voting no.
All right, Kate Fuller?
Um, so I just wanted to say what I, which, which way I was gonna vote outright. I'm gonna vote yes. I've had, I've gone back and forth throughout the whole session. It's a really difficult decision. I did really feel like I wouldn't, there'd be no way that I would approve this without the neighbors moving the needle with the developer and they put in so much time working with these companies to find a middle ground that would be good for Inglewood. I do, someone was mentioning that like, if you take away parking, you're not gonna stop people from having cars. I totally agree with that. I think in Colorado, we can try to, we can try to get people to use public transit, but at the end of the day, they will need that mountain connectivity. So maybe a lot of parking in this area doesn't necessarily lead to that much traffic. I also feel like because this parking is inside the building, that makes it better. I know like Cinderella City, you just drive through, it's empty, it looks dead. That's unattractive. I feel like that's why we're kind of resistant, resistant to being overparked. And so I know the future of transit over time and decades. And you know, by the time I'm very old, there may be no cars, but I think like right now and in the immediate 10, 20 years, it's just a necessary evil, especially where we live. And so the challenges are pretty clear here, the Jason Park overflow. But it also sounds like a lot of the issues with the neighborhood are not really on this PUD. I've heard a lot of complaints tonight about Oxford Station. I'm not really sure how we can help with that situation, but like maybe there needs to be more ownership from those other stakeholders in the neighborhood to really make this great. It sounds like you know, the milk company is ready to make this neighborhood awesome. And like, I do, I live walking distance to this light rail, but I live closer to the other one. And so I do find it pretty interesting when people say that like, I could throw a tennis ball from here to the light rail, but it's not walkable. So I mean, I guess just walkability is relative. If you have a lot of it, you know, it's just, that's how you're gonna, that's your perspective. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be faster. And so I'm just gonna write down or read out some of the things that I did really appreciate, appreciate about this PUD. Especially the pitch. I feel like a lot of times people come in here entitled, they kind of push their ideas on us, tell us, we need revenue, we need, we need money from property tax or whatever it is. But I feel like they, this was the most empathetic and thoughtful presentation that I've seen from a company. And so I just really appreciated that. And so I feel like the no's are gonna be just a timing thing, like a we said yes to the wrong people before, so we're gonna say no to the good guys. So that's just my perspective is that I wanna believe this is a good opportunity for Inglewood and I do think that with a partner that cares about the community, they're gonna also move the needle with the city and push for the bridge and push for the roads. And I know there's no guarantee or promise, but we have to hope for a better Inglewood. And I do truly think voting yes for this is the step in the right direction. So I wrote down the sustainability efforts, the intention and architecture I loved. And you know, maybe it's a marketing pitch, but I love the blending of the single family neighborhood with the industrial area nearby. And I just thought that was really great. They don't have to build something that's beautiful to walk by. I currently walk by that area and it's just, you know, it could be vibrant with a lot of people over there and you just kind of drop off and there's no one to pass, there's no one to talk to, there's no one to say like, your dog's cute. And I just feel like this neighborhood is missing that in that one area of this area. And I know it might, you know, it might not be perfect at first, but I just really care about the neighbors that came to speak, so I want you to know that I took that into a high consideration. Similar to what Noel said, I love that they're planning for 5% of EV, but they're ready to fully go 100% when the time is right. They have a plan and order. That's the type of partner that we want in Inglewood. I also thought that the case for just driving more traffic to Oxford Station, it's the sleepy light rail station in Inglewood. We are so lucky to have two. It's unheard of. I know I personally wish there was better connectivity from like this side to the east side. That's kind of missing, missing in Inglewood. But I mean, being at this light rail station and going up or down and over is the best you can do. So I'm voting yes. Sorry for the long answer.
Oh, that's good. Noel?
Of the PUD applications we've, we've seen, at least in my two and three quarters years, this has, I think, been the best in terms of the overall presentation, the community involvement. And, and little things like the EV chargers, you know, others had much lower percentages put in and, and prepared. I am, I am with Kate and that I'd like to see, you know, this be more about the transit station right there. You know, previously we went through a lot of conversation about the, the TOD, you know, what the radius was all by city center. And how we, you know, really wanted to, well, in my opinion, we wanted to move towards more transit oriented. If this were one mile east on South Broadway, I think this is exactly what we want to see. If this were a half a mile south also, but it being right where it is, I'm voting not to approve the recommendation. Cut the parking spots in half and I would enthusiastically go for it.
Okay, Carl?
I'm kinda like Noel. I, I've seen a lot of these PUDs and a lot of apartments building and actually I've, I've voted for quite a few of the apartments as Dartmouth is one that's just about finished, where the mortuary was on Old Hampton. That's getting, that's about halfway done. But there's, there's quite a few apartments that are going up that, that, that were in a good location. They were a good, a good build. And they just were, were good. And this one, I, I believe is a good apartment building, apartments and townhouses, townhouses. I, the, the problem I got is, how is it? Well, three things, I guess. The number of people that are gonna be bothered by it, that are gonna be affected. Hopefully, that's they, they can adjust to it and it's not really gonna be a problem where they have to move. Somebody said that some of the apartment the people in the apartments Oxford apartments, they're gonna leave when their lease is up because of the, the added density there. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but it could be. I just the second thing that I am concerned about is Jason Park. It's Jason Park is it's gonna be closed down permanently for the grass letting it grow if, if they don't do something. I don't know if we're gonna raise the, they, they really can't make it bigger. I don't know what they're gonna do, but Inglewood needs to do something there. And the if the apartment building could be, add more dog space there, that, that would probably help. But I'm gonna vote yes on it with the amendment that there are some, something is done to the the intersection there at Navajo and Oxford. I, I go through there not every day, but you know, two or three times a week. And I've almost been T-bone there myself and just going, going through the intersection and I've seen traffic backed up from the light at Navajo there out onto Santa Fe. And you can't do that. That, that's just not, you can't have traffic backed up onto a highway like that. That's, that's not somebody's gonna get killed there. It's not, hopefully, that's not one of us. So that's that's a problem and it needs to be looked at and needs to be solved and to do the apartments, I think it needs to be looked at. But I'm gonna vote yes with the amendment.
Thank you, Carl. Chair Austin?
Thank you all for your thoughtful consideration and comments. This is been a really interesting and fascinating meeting and I think we are all a little bit torn. There's things we like about this development or proposed development. Things we don't like, but I have to, and in fact, I went over this, this afternoon and drove around so that I had a better perspective on the whole area that we're talking about here. And I come back to, I wanna do what's best for the neighborhood. And I have problems with the shadows that this development might cast on the, on the houses to the east. And the shadow, you know, on the street Navajo. But that's, that's a fact and that, that can, you know, that's just, that's a thing. The, the property could be developed up to 100 feet with some other use. And they, they, if they wanted to do residential, they could put the parking on the bottom, like the first two or three floors and then go up from there. So the people who live there could have mountain views, but that's not what this development's doing. It's doing something different and I think they're trying to respond to the, the neighborhood. This, this property's gonna get developed some way, shape or form. And I think that it is appropriate for the transition from industrial to residential. I think it's much better than other uses that could go in there. And I don't have a crystal ball about what's gonna happen in the future. I do like things like the EV Flex. They've got lots of EV in there and they also have Flex to do more. And I, but I have concerns about the traffic study, but I'm gonna vote yes on the proposal to recommend city council approve it.
Thank you. Motion passes. Hold on, let me count. It's getting late. One, two, three, four, five. To one, two, five to three. So motion passes five to three.
Okay.
Brenda, you've got your hands up?
Can I take a human being break, please? It's been a long time. Just five minutes?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think we'd all like that.
I think so too.
Is there anything that we need to do to close up that last thing or we're good? Right?
On this particular case, no. The motion passed five, three.
Okay, so five minute break, 11:22.
Yep.
So Nancy, do you have what you need to come up with the language?
For
for this recommendation that we just made?
Yes, I do. And if you don't mind, I'm with Brenda. I need to take a bite.
Okay, all right.
So Michelle?
Yes.
So technically, I voted yes before the call to vote yes actually came. Because she didn't call me the second time around. I said yes during the discussion. I wasn't called again to vote yes, is that gonna be an issue?
Well, you know what, let's wait till Nancy's back. And, um, Nancy and Victoria can answer that question for us. Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay.
So we basically have nothing last month and then three tonight.
Okay, Chair, I, I'm back.
Um, while you were, um, gone Nancy, Brenda brought up, she thought that she voted yes in the discussion and not in the actual voting.
Oh. My apologies. Okay, I apologize. Brenda, how do you vote?
Well, yes.
Okay.
But I just want to make sure that that was technically.
Okay, I apologize, you're right.
Okay. I didn't. Right, I know. I wanted a chance to thank all the attendees though that came tonight and, um, and for speaking up, because I've never seen such civil engagement though, that's really nice, truly refreshing and I hope it doesn't discourage people in the future if it doesn't go the way they want it to go.
There's, there's still thirty-nine participants on our call right now.
Okay, are we ready to move to the next case?
Yes, please.
I, I'd also like to thank everybody for showing up and, uh, it is not over. It is just going to the city council and they will, uh, make the final decision on it. So we're, we were the first step, it's not the final step.
Correct.
Chair Austin?
Okay, so, um, we are on public hearing. Case S U B twenty twenty-two zero zero nine, major subdivision thirteen fourteen West Oxford Avenue. I need a motion to open the public hearing, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, Kate has a question first.
I raised my hand to make a motion to open public hearing for S U B twenty-two dash, um, zero zero nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay.
Nancy, can you call the vote?
Kate Soler?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Judy? Judy?
Jeanette?
You're muted Judy.
My face bar wasn't working, yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Kate Soler?
Yes, yes.
Noel?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Carl?
Uh, yes.
I've got too many people, I gotta mute them, hold on, there we go, and Brenda.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
I don't think I voted, but that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're on the other sheet. Chair Austin?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're all good. Okay, so is there a staff presentation? Is that what we do next?
Yes.
Yes, so this is the second part of that project. This is the major subdivision, uh, S U B twenty twenty-two dash zero zero nine for three lots, uh, thirteen fourteen West Oxford Avenue, thirteen fifteen West Ox, West Quincy Avenue, thirteen twenty-five West Quincy Avenue. Here we have, uh, uh, drawing of the, the proposed subdivision combining all three lots. And this second sheet shows kind of a blow up of the right of way dedications, which is why um, this subdivision is coming to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff agreement's approval of the subdivision in conjunction with the Embry Oxford and Navo PUD proposal, uh, which you just heard, and staff's available for any questions.
Nancy, go ahead and call, people will have their hands up, please.
Yeah, sorry, I hit the wrong button. Judy?
I just need somebody to explain to me, why, why does this have to happen? What's the, what's the purpose? Does it have to happen in order for them to develop? I don't understand.
Yes, the subdivision has to be approved, because they have to combine all the lots to put all of those units on one large lot. And the reason it's coming to you is because the right of way dedications require that a subdivision comes forward before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council.
Okay, thank you.
Colin?
And just to make sure abundantly clear, they've dedicated the appropriate amount of right of way per, for the uh, transition on Oxford, uh, for that acceleration lane and then anything else along Navajo that they would, the city would want to see. I, I know there's kind of like a little nub of coming down on Navajo, is there any additional right of way that the city would like to reserve at this point in time? Brian, you're muted.
Sorry, I'd have to defer that question to Mr. Jennings' bill.
The, um, plat shows what we need to build the public improvements. That's, there's been a lot of research done on that uh, to make sure we have sufficient right of way to build the additional lane on Oxford and the improvements on Navajo. So to answer your question, yes, that's what this is for.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair?
Uh, yes, so, so that I'm clear, we're combining these all basically into one parcel so that we, you don't have to have cross Eastmans and all that sort of thing to develop the parcel. Is that sort of a shortcut answer to this?
I think the only reason we are seeing it is because of the right of way dedication.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands.
Okay.
I will move to approve the case.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Commissioners, we are happy to, uh, address any questions that you have. I know in slide fifty-three at the very end of my presentation, we said just why this is a major subdivision. So you are correct, it's those two items, we have to do two things that meet the goals of the proposed PUD. We had to combine the three lots into one, so place the property under one ownership. It's actually three separate ownerships today, so to move forward. And then as everyone said, to dedicate the right of way that is necessary for those improvements. So that is simply what's contained in this major subdivision and why we had to go through the process. So we believe it's completely compliant with the PUD and everything that was discussed earlier, but we're certainly available to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, I don't see any hands, so Chair? So, we can do the motion? Oh, we, so sorry, I need to go back to the public, I apologize. So I am gonna ask my public that's still online, if you wish to talk about this, the major subdivision public hearing, I would ask you to raise your hand, um, if you wish to address the commission about the major subdivision. Mr. Reed?
Hi, good evening. Wow, we're almost into the good morning stage.
I'm gonna have to swear you in, it's a different case.
Yep, of course, go for it.
No problem. Do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Absolutely, I will.
Okay, let me, uh, state your name again and your address again for the, uh, record and I'll get your time started.
Mm-hmm, yep, Dan forty-two hundred Sappal Pan. Um, I'm just gonna continue the comments because this is a continuation of the PUD voting process. Um, I think I'm really, you know, I, I, I just want to address that I've come to these meetings specifically because I've been directed by my city council person to come to these meetings, to provide my input, to provide my feedback. Um, in fact, there's been a great discussion that we've had with the city attorney about how we can provide our feedback and we've been told many things. In fact, some people on this city, uh, on this commission said that we should be reaching out to city council. It turns out that that's not true. Although city staff told us, all the commissioners told us, although um, other city council people told us that we should be reaching out to our city council person, that turned out not to be the case. And then we learned that the developer is really kind of working with us and kind of creating these moments for us to provide feedback. And I just want to address, I, I, I really think that the comments that Marcus and the partner group have put together around their level of feedback to the community has been an outrageous lie and that should be on the, on the, on the verge of perjury, given that he was sworn in. The level of commitment that they have gone to, to suppress resident voice has been unparalleled in anything I've seen. And I don't know Marcus, why you're showing up on my screen, I don't know if that was intentional or not, but good to see you again. We've had many instances where resident voice has been significantly suppressed both by the city and by Marcus and his group. In one instance, he said, we reached out to the residents of La Pan Street. That is untrue, they selectively reached out to individuals on La Pan Street. I did not receive one of these walkthrough invitations and many other individuals on La Pan Street did not receive that invitation. So what he said is simply not true. I also want to address that I emailed Brian Isham saying, I don't like the way that, and that's our planning manager, of course, I don't like the way that public comment is going right now. And I just want you to know that we're gonna work outside the boundaries of the city process because we're so disappointed by how it's going and how the feedback is being analyzed and received and adjusted by the city department. And once again, I'll clarify, all of the feedback, all of the effort that we put together, hundreds of hours, hundreds of neighbors, this is what they had to say about all of the neighbor feedback. The current proposal was presented and staff noted some critical feedback as well as support from the project. That is such a disservice to the community. And so when you talk about going through our neighborhood and, and city commissioner or planning commissioners, when you talk about thinking about our neighborhood, I would just encourage you to think that there are hundreds of activated individuals who want to be here, who want to give their voice. The city process doesn't allow for it and nor does the developer certainly. And I just want you to hear that loud and clear, why I come here a little bit hot in some of these meetings is because I hear from underrepresented communities, there's a lot of elderly individuals in our community who can't cross the digital divide. This meeting was not.
Mr. Reed, you've reached your three minutes.
Well, thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you. Ms., uh, I have Sarah L. Sarah, okay, I need to swear you in again.
Yes.
Do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Would you please state your name and address again for the record for this case?
Sarah Leatherwood, one two two one West Radcliffe Avenue.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Can you hear me this time? Cause I was told.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I will try again, um. I want to thank everyone for still being up this late, it's been a long day for everybody, um. I guess a concern that I have is there were so many concerns from you all about this pod and yet you, you passed it. So with those concerns in mind, please keep, keeping the neighbors in mind, um. Lots have given Embry props for what they do and they said they're gonna manage this property for twenty years. Uh, they have a history of not doing so in Denver. Uh, the Luxon Mile High in twenty twenty, they sold before the certificate of occupancy was ever issued. Gateway, which was in their presentation, uh, they sold within three years. So I just want you to be concerned about like what they say they're gonna do and what they're gonna do. I also concerned that this meeting is now going almost into midnight and probably a lot of people that would have liked to have been heard are not able to be here this evening. So I question whether like everybody's being heard on this, um. I do ask if you move forward with supporting this pod that, um, Embry, uh, would be asked to provide an attorney to represent the neighborhood residents, uh, at their cost, so we can create a good neighborhood agreement and a construction agreement to protect the people in this neighborhood. Because people live here and, um, I just, I'm asking you to put the long-term residents of this area um, and Inglewood as a community, the people that live here over the profit that it could potentially bring in. I ask you to ask yourselves, not how, but who does this project benefit? And the answer is not Inglewood. Um, again, I thank you for staying up late and paying attention, it's been a long night for everyone. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Corbett?
Hello.
Hello, let me swear you in again. Uh, do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
All right, if you'd please state your name and address for the record again?
It was Don Corbett, living at four four zero nine South Banock Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um, my, my whole thoughts in this is, is this, this project is not being done for the people, this project is being done for those who are benefiting from it. Um, not real comfortable with the fact of that you called the, one of the property owners to speak and didn't answer and went back to him, but you didn't go back, tried to go back to anybody else. Um, as far as I'm concerned, you guys are running this kind of dirty. And, uh, it's not really very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you so much. Chair, that's, uh, all I see for public, oh, Mr., hold on a second, David Frisbee? You have to unmute Mr. Frisbee.
Sorry.
There you go. All right, let me swear you in again. Do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you'll tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Please state your name and, uh, address again for the record.
David Frisbee, ten fifty West Stanford Drive.
David Frisbee, ten fifty West Stanford Drive.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to echo, you know, some of the things that, that Daniel and Sarah and the last gentleman said. I, I don't really understand how there's public feedback, yet we have Marcus continually showing up to, to be able to, to give his his point of view without any kind of rebuttal. So to that, I, I, I feel like that there's really not a community. We're really not set up to, to have community feedback here. And, and I think that's problematic, in addition to everything that everybody else has already said. But, yeah, I, this is, this has been a to me, a, a, a real problematic or a lot of issues with how this has been presented. So that's, that's how, I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer White.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. Uh, let me, hold on just one second. Uh, let me swear you in. Do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, uh, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer White. I'm at ten ninety West Stanford Drive.
Okay.
I'm, I'm struggling with with finding my words at the moment as, as I echo everyone else's comments. When, when we, when we approve things with exceptions and we, we have so many concerns and there's unanswered questions. And I've been here since seven o'clock and prepared my statements earlier and been very thoughtful. And I echo what you have all said, or many of you have said regarding the, the thoughtfulness behind some of the things. You know, lowering the building, lowering the units, listening to some neighbors, but I agree that they are selective. When I'm walking my neighborhood and my next door neighbor isn't getting a notification and I am, or I got the first notification and not another, but my neighbor got the other. There's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of confusion. And I, I'm really struggling to find peace with, with moving forward with this, with so many answered questions and concerns and exceptions. I think that we should work together, and I agree that is a beautiful property. But there are some concessions that they can continue to make and we can work together as a community to get there. I'm not against this proposal necessarily, but there are some things that we need to, we really need to focus on with traffic and the community feedback. That petition, it, it took little of nothing to get that many people to sign it. And, and it was powerful how many people were, were anxious to, to see that change. But this change is so radical for this, this, this community. And the comment about calling these high rises, I'd like you to stand in these small ranch-style homes and look up at a four-story building and tell me that that doesn't feel like a high rise to you, because it certainly does, because it's fifty feet from your backyard. And it, it gives me chills thinking about that. And so I, I just wanted to share that, and I appreciate your time. I know we're all exhausted, and I know this is difficult decisions to make, but I just think we have to be thoughtful about all these unanswered things and concerns that we, we don't have answers to yet, and it's okay. But we can't continue to push forward with, with all these unanswered things. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chair Austin.
Is there any rebuttal from staff or any further questions from the commissioners? Okay, I see none. Are we to the point that we need to close the public hearing first? And then we ask for a motion to.
Correct.
Forward, okay. So I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, second. Thank you.
Sorry, didn't get the second.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on that? See none. Nancy, can you call for the vote?
Brenda?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And Chair.
Could I vote no? No, I'm just kidding. Yes. I'm getting a little kooky here. Sorry about that.
Okay, now it's your motion to recommend.
Yes, so I need a motion to recommend favorably recommend this to city council or whatever motion you'd like.
I'll move to recommend case S U B twenty twenty-two zero zero nine major subdivision for thirteen fourteen West Oxford Avenue for recommendation for approval through city council.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Noel. Is there any further discussion? See none. Nancy, would you like to call for the vote, please?
Sure, Kate Townley.
I'm in alignment with my vote on the P D. I'm going to vote no on this as well. Um, just in the for the same reasons as before. Can I go with that?
Sure.
Can't talk anymore.
Uh, Colin?
I will vote in favor of it as it provides the right of way required for the development. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Colin. Are you cut out? I didn't hear you.
I apologize. I vote for approval because it provides the right of way required. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I apologize, Judy.
Um, I'm going to stay in line with my original vote.
Kate Fuller?
I'm staying in line with my original vote, voting yes.
Okay, Noel?
Um, I think this is incidental to the previous, so uh, be a vote no.
Okay. Carl?
Uh, yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Motion passes five three. Did I call in everybody this time?
We're all getting a little punchy.
So.
Okay.
Our next.
So I.
I need to bring in all of our other folks when you're ready.
Okay, so we are on to the public hearing of case U S E twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight a conditional use permit for forty-six seventy-five South Windermere Street.
Yes, and I would, um, there she comes. I was just looking for, for everybody. Okay. Can you give me a few minutes to bring in the, this applicant's? Thank you. I appreciate everyone's patience. I know.
You've been doing. God bless you, Nancy. You're doing a, you're doing a great job.
Email. Okay. Oops.
Just for my own information, Nancy, are the people that you're bringing in, are they, are they additional people from the public? Or is it primarily from?
No, these, so we have a different applicant team.
Okay.
From, from the P D and the major subject is a different case. This is a conditional use.
Sure.
Case, and that's, I'm trying. So Pete, Pete Weber and Julie Hoffman, I have you as part of the Bridge House team. You're going to need to say, uh, accept being promoted to panelist. And then, um, Heidi, if you let me know if everybody's in that needs to be in the meeting, if you see everybody.
I'm taking a look here.
Yes.
Okay, so Julie Hoffman's not with you. I thought she was.
Yeah, she is, but she might have dropped off. She's not a presenter today.
Okay, she's, she's still as an attendee, not actively being promoted as panelist. So, okay, Chair, I'm ready to do the motion.
Okay, so we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Correct. Yes, please.
Do I hear such a motion?
I make a motion to open the public hearing on case U S E twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight four four six seven five South Windermere.
You second? I'll second it. How about that? Okay.
Okay, Brenda?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Carl?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Judy Brown?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
And Chair Austin.
Yes. No, did Kate Fuller, or did Kate Townley vote twice? I'm not sure what happened.
No, I said Kate Fuller. So, all right, for the record, Kate Fuller.
Yes.
All right, guys.
Okay, so, um, I am, is there a staff presentation or is there only an applicant app presentation?
Brian? You have a staff presentation.
Great, thank you.
In light of the time this evening, I'll try to be pretty brief. Um, this is a case for a conditional use. It's used twenty twenty-two dash zero three eight for forty-six seventy-five South Windermere Street for Bridge House. Um, procedure for conditional use, the planning and zoning commission is the decision-making body for conditional use applications. A commission conducts a public hearing and makes written findings, either approving, conditionally approving, or denying the application and any appeals to the commission decision on conditional use applications to her by city council. So here we have the subject site. It's currently zoned I one line industrial. It's approximately zero point five zero six acres. Current use, it's currently vacant to my understanding, but there has been some, I believe, some auto service uses there previously. Um, and the primary use will be on the red square, just to the west of Windermere Street. And then additional overflow parking is in the additional rectangle at the intersection of Windermere and Thomas Avenue. So this case is for a trader business school, which is allowed by right, um, in I one district. However, when there is the addition of a dormitory, that kicks it over into a conditional use permit approval. It makes the conditional use permit approval require. Um, so the project description, Bridge House, it has a ready-to-work use program or a ready-to-work program, um, which is a work-first, housing-first model combined with transitional employment and a social enterprise. Um, for this development, it would service approximately fifty clients. Uh, they consider the dormitory incidental to the primary trade school use, but it does require the conditional permit, uh, conditional use permit approval. Um, and staff is currently working with the developer on an alternative parking plan that would be approved administratively. So we do have a few, um, this is their site plan for both, both parcels. Um, they are proposing to do some improvements to the parking lot um, at the corner of West Thomas and South Windermere, as well as providing thirteen parking spaces, one on-site and twelve off-site at the remote parking location, um, additional bike parking facilities, an additional crosswalk and ADA compliant ramp to be installed, uh, to get pedestrians from the west side of Windermere to the east side. And then, uh, closing off some existing curb cuts along Windermere and moving those back along West Thomas Avenue. So here we have the review criteria for conditional use applications. Again, it's also in your staff reports. And then again, continued criteria. Staff recommends that we, that the commission approve the conditional use permit case with the following conditions. The application or applicants shall obtain all permits or required licenses prior to commencing operations. Applicants shall comply with all other applicable federal, state, and local codes. Any outside smoking area must meet minimum requirements for Colorado Clean Air Act. Approval of the conditional use permit does not constitute formal approval of applicant's conceptual site plan or floor plan. Formal approval of the site or building improvement shall be based on plans and documents required for building or other associated permits. And the city manager designated shall review the conditional use permit on an annual basis for compliance with all terms of approval and the conditional use permit. And with that, close out my presentation and staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands at this time.
Yeah, are there any questions from any of the commissioners?
Yep, Carl.
Uh, the, the, there's a parking lot across the street that's being modified for, for that. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's at the southeast corner of Thomas and Windermere.
Okay, uh, one of the questions I have is, uh, for uh, dormitory, the fire regulations, what, uh, is it going to be inspected by the fire marshal? And, uh, sprinkler system and exits and fire hydrants, whatever.
I couldn't comment. Sorry, Carl, I couldn't comment to what all the requirements are specifically. Um, but they will have to submit building permits that will be reviewed by our, our city staff, the building department, as well as the fire marshal office. Um, but generally, you know, our inspections are done both with the fire marshal and our building inspectors.
I'm, I'm not familiar with this group. Is this a nationwide thing or is it a, a local thing or what?
I, I don't want to steal any of, any of their thunder, but I know they have some facilities in Boulder and Aurora. Um, but I'll, I'll let them talk more about what they do and what their program is.
Okay.
Can, can we try to, um, stay on track and, at least I think this is what the tracker trying to do here, is to ask questions of staff right now. And then I'm going to ask questions of the applicant after they make their applicant presentation.
Brenda?
Yeah, my question's kind of in regards, kind of along the same line as Carl there. So then occupancy limits will then be based on building code. But I wonder why they couldn't just submit for variance? Since this is going to, is this going to stay industrial or I, I guess we're going to change the zoning just for this building to be? I don't know what.
It's not necessarily changing the zoning. It's adding a conditional use. So you're adding the one additional use of the dormitory to the allowed uses through this vote. Um, the, the trade school is allowed by right. But it's when the dormitory is attached to the trade school that our code requires us to come before this body to request that, that specific use approval or conditional approval of that one use.
Any further questions of staff? Okay, um, it looks like it's time for the applicant presentation and I'll let whoever needs to speak, just go ahead and speak, please.
Actually, can we go back? I forgot to swear stuff in.
Of course.
If I could swear Brian in on this, I apologize.
It's okay.
Do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you told the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Okay, great. Now, is it Heidi who's going to do the presentation?
Um, Wid will do the first portion of the presentation. I'll, I'll share my screen and, and manage slides and then he'll pass it to me as well.
Okay, if we could have everybody who on the Bridge House team that might possibly be presenting or answering questions come on camera and off mute. I'm going to swear you all in at the same time. Because then I won't forget. All right, do you swear firm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the planning and zoning commission?
I do.
Yes.
Great. So if you're speaking, if you just state your name when you speak, that'd be great. Go ahead. Great. So if you're speaking, if you just say your name when you speak, that'd be great. Go ahead.
And, and I would ask that everybody who's not speaking mute themselves, please.
Yes, thank you for that, Chair.
All right, my name is Wid Metford. I'm the VP of Programs for the Bridge House and the Ready-to-Work Program. I've been at the program for about eight years, along with our Executive Director or CEO Melissa Green. We'll talk to you about the Bridge House and what we do to um help people um get out of experiencing homelessness. One person at a time. So Heidi, go to the next stage, next slide. Yeah, so the Bridge House, it, it, it started many years ago. We have a video on our website. You guys can take a look at. It started out doing basic needs and about twelve years ago, our, our CEO at the time decided. To um give people that were experiencing homelessness jobs in the city of Boulder. So she went to the city council and said, hey. We'd like to work for free for six months. She raised the money privately. And so the city let us work for six months for free. And during that time, the people that experience homelessness earned the right. You get a city contract. And so we've built those contracts now to where we have. Multiple contracts in Boulder and the city of Aurora and soon to be in Inglewood. So what we do is we um, we have a ready-to-work program, which we're talking about tonight. That's where people come and live for up to a year. Give some of that detail, next, next slide. You have the community table kitchen, which is a full-on commercial grade kitchen that we have. And then the third thing is our basic needs, but. The nuts and bolts of ready-to-work really comes down to what we call the three-legged stool. First leg of the stool is work. The second leg of the stool is housing. The third leg of the stool is the support services that go with them. We provide living wage um opportunities for people to come into our program. They come in, they make minimum wage, starting off up to twenty-nine hours per week. One of our social enterprises. The social enterprises are usually through city and state contracts where we go out and do. Landscaping, also have a commercial-grade kitchen that we cook food out of. So anyone that's in the program. You're working for, for city contracts and other, other private entities that we work with. So the work is twenty-nine hours per week. They pay a minimum wage. They save that money. Um, they get to um put a third of their money into savings. A third goes to their rent, which is a housing component, which is the next most important thing. People experiencing homelessness, well, the job seems to be the most curative part of our program. The housing piece is critical to the success. We get them off the street for a year. We give them the treatment that they need. We provide safe. Stable housing with wifi and all the food included. They pay their room and board for. And um it's really, really a model program that we have forty-four beds in Boulder and fifty in Aurora. And soon to be sixty, sixty-eight here in, in, uh, in Inglewood. So the support part of the program is very important as well because most people experiencing homelessness have mental health issues. Subs abuse issues, criminogenic needs, need to be dealt with in a, in a compassionate manner. So we go out of our way to get, get licensed people to work, people that are certified to do the work in the building. They provide evidence-based practices for people and they meet with their case managers weekly to go over their plan, try to be successful. So that's really the three-legged stool, work, housing, and support services. Next slide, Heidi. Yeah, so the ready-to-work employment, you know, it's rapid traditional work in a social enterprise. And, and a stepping stone to mainstream work. So what happens is they come, they work for us for one of our social enterprise contracts. They get paid minimum wage for twenty-nine hours per week. And then after that month seven, they jump into a uh, a job training program where they go and get the outside job. From that point on, they get the outside job. They're making eighteen, twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour. They're able to afford living wage. Um, apartments in their, in their communities where they're, where they're coming out of. So what happens is the homeless person that was previously a drag on the community is now a, a taxpaying member of society. And doing well in the community. So they build a resume, references to be into seeing mainstream employment at seven months. Heidi, next slide. Ready-to-work housing, it's a, it's community living for ninety-four adults that we have on Boulder and Aurora. It's five meals a day. It's onsite laundry. Peter access, outdoor recreation, we have a library. Twenty-four-seven access and support. That means we've got staff people there, twenty-four-seven monitoring the building. Room and board is a third of their income per month. Sobriety is required. We drug test and then breathalyze people. On a regular basis, we provide transportation with eco-passes to all the people that are in our program. And it's good proximity to services and employment sites. And again, it's twenty-four-seven staffing to make sure that everyone's acting right and that we have good supervision. Next slide, Heidi. Ready-to-work support, this is the evidence-based practice I was talking about earlier. Our clinicians work with, with stuff that. The treatment component's really, really important to help people experiencing homelessness, because we give them. Give them the tools and the skills to stay off drugs, no call, get their lives back and up and get into. The treatment that they need to deal with trauma and other issues that have brought them into the current place where they're at. We offer addiction sobriety support, one-on-one case management. There's group meetings, there's career counseling, there's financial management. We have a mentoring program. And the unique thing about our programs, we follow them for one year post-graduation. So one of the great numbers that we put out there is three out of four people in our program. Both locations successfully graduate from the program. That means they're housed and jobbed. And eighty, eighty-five percent of that seventy-five are still housed and jobbed one year after the program is completed. Next slide, Heidi. Yeah, so the two thousand twenty-one ready-to-work accomplishments. Capacity in Boulder was forty-four, where Aurora is fifty for ninety-four total graduates. We had eighty-five graduates in twenty-twenty-one. Success rate was seventy-eight percent. In Boulder, sixty-nine percent in Aurora for a total of seventy-three percent. A lot of labor hours that were done there. Those are guys out working, getting paid. Social enterprise revenue, these are the monies that we get from our community partners to help make our program. Nights of housing, this is another big one for people experiencing homelessness. Goes to forty-five thousand nights off the street for people to reformally access and shelters, jail beds, and lots of other things. Next slide.
Wid, if I could uh go back to that last slide and just make sure I understand what that slide represents. RTWB is Boulder and RTWA is Aurora. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Next slide. So the community impact, so immediate is the housing exits from the streets and shelters. They come into our program. They're assessed and within a short period of time, they're accepted in. And once they're in the program, then, then they're there for, for up to a year. The labor force, local municipalities and businesses, a lot of local, um, you know. Parks and rec departments have a hard time filling some of those um, those seasonal positions. So then jobs go unfilled on. In parks and lots of open space projects. So our guys are able to fill that need. Through, um, through the contracts that we get through, through the cities and the counties and the state. The trainees contribute to taxpayers. They're, they're getting paid money. It goes on their, their I nine. We hire them as our employees. We pay the workman's comp. We pay for their, or their, uh, for their sick time. We also. The reason we keep about twenty-nine hours per week, it allows our Medicaid benefit to still be in place so that you need medical. Or mental health treatment, that, that's, that's available for them, for them as well. Long-term return on investment, obviously forty-five thousand dollar annual community savings per graduate. That, that gets off the streets. Each grad offers the economy, possibly thirty-six thousand dollars annually. Through taxes, rent, retail spending in the community. So next slide, Heidi. It's just some stories from some of our folks that have graduated. I'm not gonna read them. We could take a minute to read some of those. They're pretty inspiring. Um, and they're really, the work that we do is really guided by, by the success of our clients. We get up every day, go to work. Believing that people can experience the life-changing, you know, trip out of, path out of homelessness if they, if they're committed to doing it. A lot of people think, well, they're not committed. Well, people that come into our program are committed. Cause from day one, they're given, they're given a job, they're given a place to stay. And we engage with them actively all during the day. We have a statement that there's no, and there's no conversation. That's not intentional. We intentionally have conversations all through the day with our clients. So the last page, Heidi. So this is our, our contact, our phone numbers. If you have any questions about the program. If you have any questions now, I'd be, love to answer them for you before Heidi jumps into her, uh, her presentation.
Judy?
Um, so how are people referred to your program?
They come through the mental health centers. They come through, um, through the other homeless services that are homeless service programs in the area. Connected to local groups that, um, they're involved here locally, change the trend is a big one that we're involved with. And the, the treatment courts, local treatment courts, we have contracts with, um, the city of Boulder, hoping to get the same thing in, in. In Aurora where the, the treatment courts buy beds to get people into our program immediately that are good fits for our program. So. Law enforcement supports us, the mental health center supports us, and also the homeless service community supports us. And, and one of the cool things that we see. Really, a fair amount of the time is when families are reunited, you get a young mom that comes in. Lost custody of her kids, comes into the program, she begins having the kids as a visitor at the program. And off they go and they're, they get reunited. And then those are some of our most, most, uh, most valuable. Valuable stories that we tell from time to time.
So is this a coed dormitory?
Yes, it is. It's a coed dormitory. We have a smaller number of women. Usually reflects the, the homeless community. Um, that we, that we, that we serve. So Melissa, I think is forty-eight, is it, um? Is it twelve females and thirty-two guys? Is that right, Melissa?
Ten females.
Ten female, yeah, ten females and, um, and the rest will be the guys. So, um. Yeah, it's a coed facility. We don't have any trouble with it. We just have firm boundaries and we hold to a high standard of conduct.
Um, and then one last question. I'll let the other, um, others. So, um. How does the, so my concern is, so you have, um, a, a really great success rate. So congratulations for that. And, um, I, you know, am an advocate for this kind of support. Um, but I wanna know what happens if somebody is unable to complete the program. Um, so I actually don't live far from this area, so right up the hill. And, and we even have one home that I'm pretty sure is a group. Sort of like a sober house or something, but, um. You know, what happens if somebody isn't successful? Um, I mean, I just don't, don't wanna think that they're just going to. Um. Keep, I, I just don't want there to be people wandering around the streets that are, you know. You back to using drugs or have failed the program. It's just a fact that not everybody is successful. And, um, how do you manage those people and make sure that they're just not out in the cold again?
Well, what we do is we, most of the time when someone, when someone flames out of the program. It's because of drug use. Typically, that's, that seems to be the biggest, the biggest one. And when that's the case, we refer them to a, to a higher level of care. There's Fort Lion they can go to. Some of these other treatment centers, ninety, hundred, twenty-day, six-month programs, we send them to so they can get, get back on their feet. Then we always tell them. Go get some treatment, come back to us when you're ready. So if someone does flame out, we usually give them a referral. To another program that, that can help them, get them stabilized and we bring them back in. No one is ever really. Completely removed from the program, really keep the door open for them. Unless if someone sells drugs on the facility, they're immediately terminated. Um, so there's things like that that we, we just can't have. But for the most part, anyone that, that does struggle. We get them to the next level of care and we give them chances. We don't believe that addiction is a, is a, is a moral failing. We believe it's a medical condition. It's something that like if a diabetic forgets to take their insulin, the blood sugar goes up, right? And so what happens is we, we try to, um, look at it as a medical condition, treat the addiction. Using lots of evidence-based practices. We use MAT, which is medication. This is a treatment. It's a great idea to help people on the path to recovery. So, yeah, we just, we give them multiple chances. And until we're done with them, then we, then we move them on somewhere else.
Carl?
Uh, congratulations on your, uh. Graduation rate, that's, uh, that seems really high. It's higher than a lot of our high schools.
Yeah, yeah, sometimes that's true.
Is the, uh, is there a qualification that you have to do to, to get in there? Is it? People that, uh, desire. You know, the. They say they want to change their life or whatever. Is, is there something that, uh, qualifies people to get in?
Well, I think, I think the biggest one is that they gotta be able to work full-time after, after they complete our program. So. We're not gonna take somebody in that's on SSI or SSDI, cause there's other options for them. But someone that's coming in. That, that, that can work, which is through addiction circumstances, sometimes criminogenic needs. They, they find themselves homeless on the street. So if they wanna come in, they're willing to work. And they can work forty hours when they, when they graduate, then we, then we take pretty much anybody. We do, we do not take people that are, um. That are unable to work because it doesn't, it doesn't fit our model. So they gotta be able to work full-time forty hours when they leave our, leave our program. That's really the main. The main determining factor.
Have, have you, uh, tried to work with Inglewood as like Parks Department, uh? For a part-time person, uh, you know, just doing whatever?
Yes, yes, we have. We were in contact with, with the Parks and Rec Department. Where in fact, I think we have a meeting coming up here in the next month or so with them. Melissa, I don't know if you know the exact time of that, but. Um, Melissa, our CEO's on there as well. She can show him whenever she wants. But, yeah, we, we, we definitely partner with the local. Local Parks and Rec in the cities because they, they have a hard time filling some of those seasonal. Seasonal positions or the other jobs that, that they just can't, they just can't fill them because they're either, they don't pay enough. Or people aren't willing to, sometimes go out and do the hard work that our guys do. Our, you see our guys at, at, at Fort Logan, they. You know, they, they, they hunt a lot of, of gravel and dug out some, some grass that needed to be removed and they worked hard. Those guys really, they really work hard, our guys. And so, I mean, yeah, they're definitely candidates. And we have a lot of people that have been hired by. By the city of Boulder and by the city of Aurora in their parks and rec. If you want some referrals, we can give you, give you some of those people to talk to if you're interested. But we've had a number of people hired in those, in those agencies.
All right, good, good.
Uh, if I can jump in, I'm Melissa Green, CEO of Bridge House. Um, thank you so much for your time tonight. We really appreciate. The chance to, um, share our program with you all. Um, then the most important thing to emphasize about our program is that we are a work program. We focus on. Um, teaching folks how to get back to work, whether that is totally a new job skill. Um, we do have a culinary, um, social enterprise as well. So we do help them get a sort of safe certificate so that they can go out and work in a kitchen. Um, in the back of the house as a manager, so they can earn more money and be able to self-sustain and, and hold on to their housing. Um, but Wid is absolutely right. We work very closely with the cities, with the county. We just signed a contract with the city of Sheridan. Um, to take care of their bus stops and do some trash removal. Um, we are in talks with Littleton and Inglewood to, um. Hire our crews there to do various different landscaping jobs. Um, you may have seen us around Fort Logan. We are out there wearing green shirts and brown pants. That would be our crews. Um, and we, you know, majority of our outdoor crew is working with, um, either different city, county. Or other government agencies.
Colin?
I wanna thank you all for a, taking so long to get this presentation started. Obviously, we had a lot of things going on. I appreciate. You waiting around and, and doing this. And obviously, what you're actually doing here, it's, um, pretty awesome to see. The question I have is, is there actually a, a classroom or other like learning part of it besides the kitchen? Associated with this or would this be just dormitory only?
Nope, we have different, um, different kinds of groups and classes that are incorporated into the program. Um, we also have an employment course that they start and they go through with, um, one of our case managers is specific to employment. Um, so that is our employment specialist. So we teach them how to interview, how to dress, um, how to write a resume. Um, all of the different pieces that go into trying to find a job. We also have some, um. Some of our folks that come in and they need help getting their GED. Um, so we help them with that. We help them if they need help with reading or computer skills. Um, really anything that that individual comes into our program needing, we customize their portion of the program to make sure they. Um, solidify the skills they need to find healthy employment.
Kate? Townley, sorry, Kate Townley?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, site selection and transportation. Um, I think it's great that you're using eco-passes, uh, to help people. Be able to get around. Did, how did you do your assessment to determine that this was, had enough transportation access in this particular? Location for your, um, for your clients?
That's a great question. Um, so we are very selective, um, when we choose a building to put our sites in. Um, so Boulder, there is an RTD, um, station directly across the street. Same thing for Aurora site. Um, and this location not only has, um, the light rail right behind us by, I believe it's almost two blocks. Um, but there's a good bus system that runs up and down, um, the main streets there. So we. Highly utilize public transit, um, mostly because we don't really want, we, um. When folks come in and start going through our program, we classify them as trainees. Um, we don't want our trainees spending money on cars, insurance. Um, we don't want our trainees spending money on cars, insurance and gas. We really want them focused on um, finding the best job for them, so that they can move forward in housing and finding a car comes later. Um, we do get creative if we want to take them out hiking or um, going to a Rockies game or something of that sort. We, we do have vans, obviously, that transport our crews back and forth. Um, to work and we will also use that if there's an emergency, um, doctor's appointment or dentist appointment or something of that nature.
Chair, I'm not seeing any other hands at this time. Okay.
I guess I, I can move forward with the next portion of the presentation.
Thank you very much.
So my name is Heidi Crespey, I'm with Coburn Architecture. And we've worked on a couple of projects now with Bridge House. Um, I personally worked on their project in Aurora, which was remodel of a three-story office building. Into a similar ready-to-work program. And we love doing this work. Just gonna give a little bit of a very general overview of what we're proposing in, in the context of this area. Um, so you can see, this is a basic kind of three-D model of our building across the street. Is the kind of a representation, a very simple representation of the parking area that we'll be renovating, there will be, uh, have a. Laser pointer here, there will be entry into that parking lot on the north side there. And there's a turnaround spot on the back end as well. And then the crosswalk goes across the street here, people will come down and come into the building this way. This is also a very general overview of a plan. On the lower left-hand corner, you're gonna see, for the most part, our dormitory sleeping areas, and I'll come to the. Actual, uh, larger plan in the next slide. But just giving an idea of the proximity of the parking and the building itself, I also want to point out that. A big part of this, uh, the existing building has um, several parking spots. On the east side of the building that we're going to be removing, we're only keeping one handicap parking spot and a turnaround space. On the southeast corner. And otherwise, we're going to make a large improvement to the street-side entry of the building. These are our basic floor plans, on the right-hand side is our level-one floor plan, and on the left-hand side, it's level-two, so. About a quarter the size and sits on top of the northwest corner of the building. You have kind of four to six people. In a sleeping room for dormitory living. We've paid a lot of attention to the proximity of offices and people who are. Staff, um, being able to oversee what's happening throughout the building and being in contact with everybody and available to everybody. Whenever needed. We've got a large kind of dining area, conference room for meeting, lounge areas throughout. Meeting spaces and private offices for kind of one-on-one meetings and skills training. This is the existing building as it looks on the side of the street. From the southeast corner. And this is. An in-progress rendering of what we're looking at putting in there. We have a pretty substantial outdoor kind of lounge area with some picnic tables and benches in there for people to hang out, a shade structure. Some screening to give a little bit of protection from wind and traffic. Of course, we'll provide the, the required, at, at least the required minimum of, of landscaping out front as well. Um, surrounding the whole outdoor area will also be um, a kind of a low planter area that. That we've been talking with Bridge House about them managing as um, kind of a community garden. For their residents, which has worked at other buildings that they've had. Just another view here of the front, existing, this sign will be going away, all these parking spots going away. And a substantial facelift to the front of the building. And this is a little bit more of a comparison from the front side. I believe this is my last slide, so um, one more thing I'd like to say is uh. We're putting a lot of attention into, you know, the access and the function and the interface. Between the people in the building and the public outside. Um, we want to make this feel as kind of like a home as possible, as much as a home as possible. For the clients that, that live there for a year of their life. And want to have a happy, you know, face to the public as well. Um, we are looking into potentially having community-based murals on the front side of the building as well for. Some sort of feeling of interface and community involvement and colorful happiness. All in all, we're going for more, uh, kind of an uplifting feeling in this building. I believe that is all I have, yep, that was my last slide.
Colin?
Uh, thank you again for this information, that honestly, the site looks great. The question I have is on the parking. Area, there's an existing curb cut, but it looks like we're doing a required turnaround parking spot, is that actually? Um, the desired from the city's perspective, is that just a requirement because it's too close to the intersection?
Believe it's a requirement, because it's a dead-end parking lot and we have more than four parking spaces in there. And so that's part of the um, parking requirements.
Would, will that mean that the curb cut will go away then, and you won't be able to utilize that existing?
Yeah, let me go back to this plan here, so.
Yeah.
The curb cut on the west side will be going away. And the curb, there will be a curb cut added at the northeast side.
Okay, and I, I'm assuming that was in conjunction with the city, what they requested that you provide for this facility?
Well, the way, we were able to make it work this way to get more parking spaces, we got twelve parking spaces. Where if we left the curb cut on the other side, we actually would only get eleven.
Uh, this is, this is Bill Jennings talking with engineering. We had to move that curb cut over on the Thomas Street, because the existing one was too close to the intersection.
That one too.
Safe condition, so moving it down here to the, to the east, clean that up. Also, on the, if you look at the aerials of the building as it is right now, they had all this. Uh, pull-in parking, we don't allow that on the streets anymore, because. Uh, one is on the smaller stalls, the vehicles would overhang the sidewalk. But the other part, we don't pull it in and pull it out on that high a volume of road now. So this, this gave us an opportunity, we left a handicap spot there, obviously, so that. Someone could easily get into the, the facility, so um, we think it's a really. A win-win, because it does clean up things and make it a much safer environment for pedestrians.
Thanks, Bill.
Uh, Kate Townley?
Thanks, this might also be for Bill as well, but the um, the new crosswalk, that's the. Windermere kind of comes around as you're going uh, south and there's a curve in the street just. Beyond that part of the site, and um, has that been evaluated in terms of like safety or anything? Or sightline for cars coming around that corner and then having a crosswalk?
It has, in fact, I brought up the fact, should we have a flashing beacon there? And we went and studied it, uh, the traffic, both the consultant and our traffic engineer studied it and found out that we didn't need it. Based on the road widths and the, and the, the traffic volumes for right now. So it has been studied.
Judy? Um, is there gonna be a commercial kitchen in the facility?
There is a kitchen that is fit to serve the residents there, but I believe it is not going to be used for production of. Um, as, as a training kitchen for serving others, is that correct with?
Yeah, that, that's correct, we, we may, we may do some, some meal prep for, for like an event or something down there, but it's mainly gonna be for. For the people in the house.
Oh, what was the commercial kitchen you were referring to for training?
That's, that's the one that we have up in Boulder, that's a large commercial, it's, it's a regular. You know, um, condo, office condo suite that we have that, that one of our donors gave us back when we opened up the Bridge House.
Okay, so at this site, it's just going to be um, classroom training?
So this, this kitchen will also have culinary training, so at, at our Aurora site. It's a very similar setup, where we have a rather large kitchen. Um, that they cook for all of the residents that are living in the building or anybody that's visiting. Um, but we do have an executive chef that runs that kitchen, so they do have all of the training. Um, that they would have if they were in our commercial kitchen, and then we do take the team that is um. That they choose to be in that culinary um, skill set and in working in that social enterprise, we do bring them up. And into Boulder, so that they can work catering events. Actually work out of that catering kitchen where they cook at a larger proportion, so that they get those skills down, again, because we want to get. Um, get them serve-safe certified, they do have to have some time in, in that commercial kitchen.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand what, what the training was that was happening here. So it, but the majority of the workers are gonna be doing the outside community work, is that correct?
That's correct, and to give you an idea of some of the trainings that we have, um, we work with um, the city and the county. Contracts that we have to actually get our trainees certified in different like type of landscaping, so. Um, running a chipper, um, running different larger tools, learning how to decipher, you know, what kind of. Um, what kind of greenery can stay, what should be pulled out, why it should be pulled out, how to safely. Um, take out different kinds of plants that grow in areas that they're not supposed to be in. Um, obviously, that's huge in a lot of different areas, they have a lot of different. Um, you know, plants growing that shouldn't be there, that they, they destroy kind of the, the more natural plants that should be around. Um, so we do have a lot of training opportunities. Um, tied to not only the social enterprises, but then we also make sure that we're training what that trainee. Um, is interested in, um, so we will pull in different kinds of either tutors or trainers. Um, to help our trainees land that perfect job.
So who is the main oversight for trade schools in, is it the state? I mean, who do you get, who do you get um, registered with to run a trade school?
We actually do not have to be registered for a trade school, because we're not um, classified as a trade school. Um, we do job training, but we do so um, working with homeless individuals, so we fall into a different bucket.
Okay, so this is a question for staff, if this isn't a trade school, then how is that a, a use, uh, use by right? I'm con, I guess I'm confused.
Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. Um, you know.
Oh, you were napping, trust me.
No, we, we spent a lot of time working with them to try to come up with the appro, most appropriate land use that we have to choose from. Sometimes that's a difficult thing with city staff, as we have a very limited amount of land uses to choose from. To try to help fit people's business models into our code. And so this started, this conversation started back uh, before I started here with Wade and Will. Um, months and months and months ago, to try to find the most appropriate land use. And given their, you know, their, their business model and their program, this was the, this was the land use that we felt most appropriate with. Now, whether that means they have to go on to meet additional state requirements or federal requirements, that's not always uh, part of our. Our purview, as far as we're doing our research. Um, but again, this was the most appropriate land use that we could find, um, out of what we have. And then the additional uh, conditional use, having to come before this body for the dormitory, dormitory seemed the most appropriate.
Chair Austin?
Well, first of all, I think that um, my initial impression is that you have a tremendous program. Um, what is the timetable for this? I don't want to. Get launched into long discussions, but what is the timetable for getting this uh, up and operational, and where does your funding come?
Um, both great questions, we hope to be operational by the end of twenty twenty-three. Um, obviously, the renovation to the building will be um, on the inside extensive, so we want to make sure we do that right. There will be um, sprinkler systems involved, there will be um, all of the safety mechanisms that need to be in place. So that our trainees are safe while they're sleeping in the building. Um, we do take safety at a very um, high level. I was a firefighter for nine years before jumping into this line of work, so. Very careful about how we plan our buildings and what we actually put in and how we, how we actually um. Structure the dormitory, sleeping where, you know, our trainees mostly sit. Um, for different activities, if you look at this floor plan that Heidi has up, um, where you see the round tables there. Um, that is a kitchen area, we are gonna have some walls that come down, so that we can have a larger space for when we get together. Um, our houses operate very much like your home or my home would. Where, you know, no matter where you take your visitors to, to go and start to chat, everybody ends up in the kitchen at some point. Um, so we do a lot of our activities based in that space. Um, our funding comes from um, our revenue that we earn in our social enterprise and then fundraising through. Um, donors, um, families, foundations, um, as well as government support.
Carl?
Uh, that's a substantial change to the building, uh, how, how long are you planning on being there? Or is there any timeframe on that?
Well, we hope to be there forever, as long as there's homeless, they're needing services, we will be operating our programs.
Who, who is the uh, who, how, how many staff do you have and, and how are they selected?
Wade, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, yeah, staff, staff are selected through um. Through, depending on the position they're applying for, we have house managers, which are pretty much people that work in the, work in the building, monitor people, they do U As, they. Engage with clients, that's kind of an entry-level position, house manager positions, we have probably six of those. Scheduled for the twenty-four-seven facility, and then we have five dedicated case managers that. That work um, in the building, two behavioral health case managers, these are people that are, that are CAC certified or. C P F S is that Certified Parent Family Specialist, through the state of Colorado, that work with our, work with our trainees. There's two of those, and we also have an after-care case manager that works with the clients one year post-graduation. We have an employment specialist, which helps people get those, those good paying jobs when they graduate our program. We have a housing specialist, which helps deal with the interns when they first come in and also gets people housed. On the back end when they leave, because it, it really is no good to house somebody for a year, then they wind it back on the streets, our staff are. Specifically trained and targeted and interview processes to fill those, the specific positions, so we're looking forward to uh. Hiring some people from the Inglewood community to work in the building, and also bringing over some people from our other buildings that. That want to kind of seed the program with experience and expertise that we can bring. So it's, it's, yeah, it's two hundred fifty-two hours of um, of twenty-four-hour million management that occurs. And then there's, there's two hundred hours of, of case management that's done every week in those buildings, so. It's, it's, it's a pretty impressive um, work, that we have a full-time um, development department that goes out and raises the money for us. And our admin folks are involved in it as well.
Thank you.
Chair, I don't see any other uh, hands. Okay, um. Is there any public testimony we need to take? We're already done with that. No, we are not done with it for this case, is there anyone still online that wishes to speak? Uh, on this particular case, if you would, please raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, um, uh, I guess I'll ask commissioners, are you ready to close the public hearing? Or is there a further discussion that needs to happen amongst us?
I'll move to close the public hearing, uh, for USC 2022-038.
Thank you. Second?
Well, second thought.
Thank you. May I ask the applicant to take the, um, slideshow down so I can see my commissioners? Thank you so much. That helps me when I'm speaking. So I can know whose voice I think I'm hearing. Okay. Are we ready to vote, everyone? Yes. Okay. Kate Townley?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Noel Atkins?
Yes.
Carl Adams?
Yes.
Brenda Hubka?
Yes.
And Chair Austin? Yes. Thank you. So now I think I'm at the place where we need a motion to we, this is, we're the final arbiter of this. On this one, you are correct. Yes. So we need a motion to approve or disapprove the, uh, applicants, um, approve the can't even find
To approve.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm listening to approve the conditional use, um, USC 2022-38, I think, uh, as, uh, as written.
Thank you for bailing me out, Kate. I'm starting to get goofy.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Was it Kate Fuller who seconded? Yes.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All right. Nancy, I think we're ready to vote. Sounds good. And this is the time for, is this the time also that people say why they're doing this, why they're voting? Or is that not appropriate in a conditional use? You've stumped me at 12:45 AM. I Never mind. Let's just call the vote. And if you have comments, do it. I don't, I don't, I don't know. Sorry. That's okay.
Can I ask a question? Um, Kate, on your record or your, um, motion for approval, are you approving with the staff recommendations as well or, okay?
Sorry, yes, with the staff recommendations as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's call for the vote, Nancy. Brenda?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Kate Fuller?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Colin?
Yes.
Kate Townley?
Yes.
And Chair Austin? Well, as a, uh, member of the Salvation Army Advisory Council for the City and Cent, for the Centennial Office, um, this is near and dear to my heart. I'm sure that you folks are familiar with Harbor Lights, the Salvation Army, as well as Crossroads. So, um, uh, yes, I vote yes. All right, motion passes eight, zero. Okay. We're just moving down this agenda. We're at staff's choice now. If anybody's still awake, let's is
I, I have nothing.
I have nothing. Okay, attorney's choices. Victoria, are you still here? Yeah, you are.
Yeah, I, I am still here. Um, so I, I was gonna have nothing at this time, but this is for the conditional uses. This is one of the, um, matters that findings are required. Um, but, but, um, since you, you know, obviously you approved this, um, I think we can just confirm with all of you, um, that, yeah, you are, um, your, your votes were consistent with the findings required per code.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
May I add with our, would the commissioners be agreeable to, uh, if I pull findings out of this city staff report? Any objection? Raise your hand, please. Any objection? Raise your hand, please. Okay, do you have an objection? You always have the prerogative to change in amend those when they come forward for approval. But thank you, Vicky. I should have deferred to you. I apologize.
No, I, I'm sorry. I was trying to find it myself and I think I was a little slower. So I, I'm sorry too. Um, but with that, that's all I have right now.
Okay. Commissioner's choice. Anybody want to raise their hand and chime in? Okay. Uh,
I'll say then. I'm sorry, Judy, where are you going? I, I realize it's super late and I don't want to make it go any longer. I just, uh, wanted, well, a thank you to, um, the Bridge House applicants. And I, I was super excited to, to see something like that come in. And thank you for staying up till one o'clock in the morning with us. Um, and then I also just wanted to, uh, mention just in observations with our, um, hearing tonight, just then the, I heard the desire for additional kind of proactive planning, whereas I think some of our PUDs are reactionary or they, because it's, you're reacting to something that's being proposed. And, um, if there is any opportunity to do some additional planning within that, um, area, um, maybe, maybe not, but I just wanted to say that it seems like it would be warranted.
Noel?
Um, I am in no way, um, saying that I, I understand how this works currently, um, but would like to learn more about how our community engagement goes. Many people bring it up, yet there was also a counterpoint brought up about why, you know, why things work the way they do, why they don't work. So I would just be very curious to hear how, uh, you know, at a future time to hear how that has performed.
Good point, Noel, because we did hear from Mr. Johnson, who was the medical guy right across the street. And, you know, I think your point is well-taken. We can look at addressing that in the future. Colin?
Uh, yeah, my only, uh, thought is we've got the opportunity with UDC to implement some of this stuff as in terms of, um, sustainable, uh, things in housing, affordable housing and, and all those items also. So just, you know, keep those in mind as we're moving forward, but that's all. Thank you.
Okay, my only comment is that, um, we do have a homelessness problem here in Inglewood and a pleasure to see this coming forward. And I appreciate all your hard work at Bridge House. Uh, without, uh, any objection, I will declare the